Thank you. We'd like to call a meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of September 24th. The Sciop Township Board of Trustees will call the roll and then please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hathaway.
President.
Palmer.
Present.
Flintoft, present. Brizo. Absent. Carrie.
Present.
Noel.
Present.
Riser.
Present.
We have Quorum.
Okay, please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I believe that to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under your own liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is adoption of the agenda. I know one change, which is a request to move H7, H8, and H9 from the consent agenda to new business. And I would propose to put them ahead of L5, which is an item where we intend, the board intends to go into closed session. Are there any other changes proposed on the agenda?
Will, I would, I would propose, given the full agenda and how many presenters we have tonight, the fact that I know there's some outstanding information we're looking for, that we of course have the public hearing tonight, but table L1, the crossroads final PUD site plans ordinance amendment.
Well, I don't support that. So.
If I could add to that, I just spoke with our township attorney and asked her if she had reviewed the shared driveway easement that is referenced in the planning report. And she has not reviewed the document. That's significant.
Well, it's easily dealt with by modifying the motion to approve to have the easement subject to attorney approval. So I don't really think it's significant.
Could we take the, Will, do you want to take your first motion and go through it and then take the second motion?
Well, I guess we can. All right. So the first change to the agenda proposed is to move H7, H8, and H9 to new business ahead of L5.
With the motion by Hathaway. Support.
My concern is that we have a presenter, I assume he's in high school with his parents, father here. And are they going to be, we're going to hear from them, and I'm talking about Brandon Roulette, Dan Peralt, but.
Think you hear from them up top.
So we won't, they won't need to stick around for the end?
They wouldn't have to. They could if they chose, but they would not have to.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
All right.
So, so we have that motion to modify the agenda. We have support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right. So we've moved H7, H8, and H9 to new business.
A motion to remove L1.
I'll support.
I do not support this change to the agenda.
You are going to send that.
Yes.
I request a roll call vote.
All right.
Tonight, per our rules of order, we're starting with Brizo. Now Carrie. Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
No.
Hathaway?
No.
Palmer?
No.
Flintoft, yes? Motion fails to remove L1 from the proposed agenda.
Are there any other changes to the agenda?
We still don't have an adopted agenda.
You're right, correct. Are there any other changes proposed to the agenda? Is someone prepared to move the agenda as changed?
So.
Moved by Palmer, support by Hathaway. All those in favor say aye.
I request a roll call vote.
All right.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel? No. Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoft, no. Agenda adopted as amended, order two.
All right, let's proceed. We have, the next item is communications to the Board of Trustees. Are there any comments? All right, now we have introductions and recognitions. And this evening, we have a presentation by Brandon Roulette and Dan Peralt. I don't know if I'm pronouncing those names correctly. Are they present? The, please come forward to the table. Ready for them to do a presentation.
Um, yeah, I think Christie's.
They don't have it. Share the screen in there. Uh, I do need permission to share the screen. I do know how to do it.
Brandon, I'm promoting your panel.
I don't know how you guys want to handle this. Murphy, did you want to introduce them or are they going to introduce themselves?
That'd probably be best. So this is Brandon Roulette. He is a prospective Eagle Scout, current Boy Scout, who is proposing to do his Eagle Scout project here at Township Paul Park, implementing a natural play space. And with him is Dan Peralt, and he has been advising Brandon on the structures themselves and implementing the structures as Brandon has designed it.
I'm Brandon. And to the left of me is Dan.
Please proceed.
The basic description of the project is there's a pathway leading up to the open area and you're met with three areas. The right will be the log play area where you'll can run along and step on the logs and jump on them. To the left will be a climbing area. I see in the picture, it's kind of a horizontal climbing wall that you can climb on, made of rope and wood. And then at the very back will be a sand pit. To get more detail, the pathway leading up to the area will be a feet wide and thirty feet long. The entire nature park is, I'm missing that part, is about fourteen hundred square feet. The pathway in the play area is twelve and fifty square feet, and that's going to be covered with engineered wood fiber, which is a fancy wood chip value that is ADA compliant. And that will go twelve feet on the ground when it's compacted.
Twelve inches.
Twelve inches, twelve inches, yeah. The sand pit is roughly a hundred sixty square feet, and that will be dug down six inches and will be raised about twelve inches above ground. The climbing structure is from, is called Net Climb. It's from a natural playgrounds company based in New Hampshire. This is a visual of the park. It's just outside where we are, leading the pathway to the left is the Net Climb structure, and to the right is the stepping area, and then the back is the sand pit. And it's, in the center is a pine tree that we want to keep there. That is the exact Net Climb structure that we'll be using, and you can see 3D images and maps of the play area. Here you can see what will be covered by the engineered wood fiber and the sands, with the back part of being sand pit and the walkway and everything else being engineered wood fiber. Finances of everything is the engineered wood fiber is roughly two, two thousand three hundred. The sand is a thousand. The engineered wood fiber is being put in by professionals from Superior Ground Cover Incorporated. They are based in, I think, Lansing. The sand is being bought from a place in Brighton called GDP Brighton. And that includes shipping and everything. The custom net is, like I said, coming from a place in New Hampshire. It is about twelve, sixteen hundred without shipping and the rest is shipping. We're getting the excavation done by MRC, and that includes, they're also installing the exterior of the sand pit, which will be covering this with log trees and some folders. And that takes a majority of the budget. And the log area and other amenities are roughly three hundred and fifty dollars. And that includes screws and timber that we'll use to connect them. Another slide detailing where everything will go. Installation, everything is, we're going to excavate twelve inches where everything EWF is put in, six inches, six inches where the sand pit will be. The Net Climb structure will be built per instructions given by the manufacturers, which you should all have gotten the handout, detailing the instructions. And the log play area will be installed per instructions right here. Surrounding the logs, you will have a area of barrier lumber, which will keep it all compacted. And using screws, you'll connect all the wood together, and so it'll stay firm in place. You don't have to dig anymore, and you don't have to waste any extra wood. You don't have anything else. Everything has an order to it. First, we have logs that PPP already has. We're not buying anything new. We plan to cut them, and then we're going to debark them and sand them. You have to sand them in a way where the top is at an angle of forty-five degrees, so no one can get in or anything. And then MRC will come in, excavate everything and put the exterior on the sand pit using their machinery and expertise. We'll construct the log play area and then place it, and then we'll buy them. The Net Climb structure should have been shipped from New Hampshire. We'll build it and we'll dig the pots for it and place it in. And then the EWF will go in, I said, Superior Ground Cover, as they will do it themselves with machines they bring out. And then sand will be delivered, and I will delegate that with workdays that I have in house. For maintenance of everything, the engineered wood fiber does have to get maintained every year, and you have to replace the surface level. You don't have to do a majority bulk of it. You will have to buy ten cubic yards of it at eighteen hundred, and that includes shipping and everything. And also it being installed again. The sandbox does have to be maintained a bit more. You have to rake it and inspect it daily, so nothing gets in it. Nothing bag goes on, no animals are hiding away in there. And then you also have to do a top level of getting new sand every year. The Net Climb structure in the log play area don't have to be maintained as much. Just kind of have to check for debris. You have to replace the Net Climb structure every eight years according to the manufacturer, and the log play area should be good for twenty years. Everything meets ADA compliance, all ASDM standards according to all rules. And when I have my workdays, I'll follow BSA rules that I have and anything else. Any questions?
Pretty good presentation. Thank you. Are there questions from members of the board?
I just had a question. Thank you for all of your work on this, first of all. I had a question about, I know some more traditional play sets require certain inspection and maintenance. Does, are there any regulations overseeing something like this that we need to be aware of? To anyone, yes.
So, in general, there is maintenance associated with the park itself, such as, like Brandon said, inspecting the sand on, not even necessarily weekly basis, but as needed. And in terms of the net structure itself, the way you maintain those is to have regular inspections to check for any wear and tear. So once wear and tear begins, that's when you know you have to replace it, which can take anywhere between, you know, eight years is probably the maximum lifespan that you get out of it. But if it's being heavily used, it could decrease how, the longevity of the, of the structure itself. But those are all things that are also able to be replaced.
Let's tell them why is the, the climbing structure?
Uh, it's six by six, and it's six feet high. So you'll have a climbing surface of six feet long sideways and six feet high going up.
And in terms of the safety of a, a structure like that, because of the type of wood fiber and the engineered wood fiber and the depth that it's at, that's good for a fall of ten feet?
Ten feet, yeah.
Twelve feet, twelve feet. So even still that size, that height structure falls below the height of, that would be recommended for the depth of the fiber on the ground.
The fiber is that similar or the same as schools use?
Yeah, yeah, it's engineered wood fiber. It's industry standard. Ninety, ninety-five percent of playgrounds use it across the country.
I know this is something that the Parks, Preserves, and Pathways Committee has been working on for quite some time. It's, it's great to have the presentation and to have it coming close to fruition.
Yeah, thank you for all your work. Appreciate it.
I have a question about timing. When did you want to start? How long will it be? How long will it take to install?
Timing wise, I can get started on cutting the logs and everything as soon as I get approved by this. The shipping of the Net Climb structure is a bit out of our hands. They said six to eight weeks. That would take about two months to get, in that time, we can get the excavation done, and we can build the log play area and the.
If approved by the floor, do you anticipate a late twenty-four start or, or an early twenty-five start? Do you have?
Late twenty-four start. I anticipate it being done by twenty-five.
And the logs are walnut logs that we called from a, from a parking lot project, correct?
Yeah.
And how big around are those logs?
They're about fourteen inches in diameter.
And are you going to cut those with a chainsaw or a bow saw or like, like, how does, you know?
I.
Like, we have our, we have our attorney here, so I don't.
She, maybe she could cut them.
You know, no, no, she's like.
I got an A, I got an A in chainsaw maintenance.
And you're a wine yard center in township, but.
Yeah, I have a, a trained professional that is within my Boy Scout troop that knows how to use a chainsaw, and I plan on coming out and using one. And follow all safety standards that have come with it.
Thank you very much for coming and presenting this evening. Now proceed with public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. We begin with those who are present in the meeting hall. Then we turn to those who are participating remotely. Ask that you direct your comments to the board and not to one another. And trustee Riser, will you serve as our timekeeper? And we ask everyone to please be respectful of the three-minute time limit. Is there anyone who would like to speak during public comment? Please come forward.
What first? Do you want to get more time? All right, I'm going to start my timer now. Are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, great. My name is Lee Howlander, president, Friends of the Sciobarn, located at the northwest corner. I've spoken to the board several times before. So, as you know, our organization has taken care of the barn for twenty-plus years, and we think it looks great, and we want to keep it looking that way and be an icon for the township. As you well know, the barn roof is deteriorating. We lose shingles on a regular basis. We're getting a lot of water inside. It's, it's deteriorating every day, so we're very concerned about that. There's, there's rotted areas of the floor, et cetera. So something needs to be done ASAP. To that end, just want to put this out here. The Friends of the Barn are willing to pay for the roof in exchange for a longer-term lease. Just putting that out there. I know there's, there's interest in, in listing the Sciobarn, but if something doesn't pan out with that, that offer stands from our organization, organization. So we would be interested ultimately if the, if the barn did get listed, and we would request, you know, consideration due to our past history of keeping the barn up and maintained. You know, in our mind, in our opinion, it shouldn't be about profit maximization. It should be about continuing to keep the barn in its present well-maintained condition. You know, as you know, the barn was donated, and we've done the maintenance for the past twenty years. So it's not like there's a investment by the, by the township in that barn. If it were transferred or purchased to our organization, we would immediately replace the roof. We would continue to maintain the property as we have done for twenty years, and we would continue to use it in the current manner that it's being used, which is primarily for storage and basically keeping it neat. So there's not going to be a lot of activity or, you know, junk piled outside of it or anything. We will have a neat and and slightly appearance. And then finally, if it did come under our control, we would be willing to, to donate the land at the end of the barn's useful life. That would be something we would do. So I know there's going to be a lot of constraints on, on the potential sale of that property, because it is part of the green belt. So, yes, we are interested, and yes, we would continue to maintain it in its current status. So I'll stick around through that agenda item. If there's any questions, I can answer from now, or if anything comes up later, I can.
I just want to confirm that you already shared all of that with Chris Chang too.
That's great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment? Please come forward. Are no other people present in the hall who would like to speak during public comment? Oh, please come on up.
Yeah.
I, I don't, Paula Gloverston, a longtime resident. I'm actually, because I watched, I don't usually watch the PC live. I'll watch it later. And public service comment, Sciop has, has their own app, and you should put it on your phone. Everybody in the public, and you can see all the public hearings. You can watch the videos. You don't have to necessarily go with Sciop Community News, even though that's quite easy. So that's one thing. But I watched the ad hoc. And one of my things over the last thirty years has been the manager issue. And that was kind of been discussed because different times when I had, whether it was a traffic or some issue in Sciop, I felt, and especially in the last four years for a while there, we couldn't get information. And when Bryce Kell, I could name different people, but I just have not been, I don't want to see that as a political. I'd rather almost have no one doing it. And I realize we, we're growing. We need someone. But that, I don't want it where it's become like one or two people on the board are directing, and they're cutting out other township board members from doing their duty, whether it be the clerk or the treasurer or whomever. As a person in the public, we want to know what's going on in our community. So that's just, I kind of saw the discussion, and that's just my input on that. And then I watched the PC live because I wanted to see all about our solar, and I realized the state is directing some of it. But I've had issues when I can, when we have bonus densities or the tree fund, let's just level every tree and take the money. So conditional uses need to really, and as far as zoning. And I didn't make this comment last night because it looked like everybody was tired. But I agreed with Ms. Moore, which I often do, because I watch all the PC meetings, about the hundred-foot zoning setback. Chairwoman Colberg said something about, well, we can, they can do the variance, and it's nothing set in stone yet. I don't believe on that whole policy. But I personally don't want somebody to have very close to fifty feet from my house with tents around it. Putting up a solar, you know, I'd rather see them put it on the roof or, you know, especially on smaller lots. So that's just my thing about these variances, and none of us want to get attorneys and, or go to the zoning and because of some conditional use variance. And, and that's, that's the only thing I've seen in Sciop. All these, we have zoning, and then things are, you know, very wishy-washy, depending on who's on the board, how it's dealt with. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Seeing none, why don't we turn to those who are participating remotely?
Please raise your Zoom hand if you'd like to speak. First up is Rob Pattinson, followed by Pam Boyd. Hi, Rob.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Sciop Township President. First of all, thank you, Kristi Aiken, for stepping up and helping the township during this stressful time of losing one manager and stepping into the shoes of interim manager. We really appreciate you doing that. From one Eagle Scout to a, a, a potential new Eagle Scout, an Eagle Scout candidate, Brandon should be very proud of himself. There is a lot more engineering and project management associated with this Eagle project and oversight than I had to do forty-some years ago. And he has handled this project extremely well. He should be very proud of himself. A few weeks ago, this board was informed that Priority Waste has added a three-point-one percent charge to our bills for auto pay. Supervisor Hathaway, you are generally the representative to Priority Waste. Has anything been done on that subject?
I believe there was some discussion of it, Rob. I don't, I don't recall the details, but I think it was ruled, they were determined that it was not, it didn't fall into the category of a cost increase under the contract agreement. Am I correct?
Yeah, there isn't anything in the agreement that addresses a service fee for auto pay. So it wouldn't technically be
That is unfortunate. Thank you for letting us know. Treasurer Palmer, several weeks ago, you were informed that for the vulnerability study, your deputy treasurer refused to help in that process. Have you taken any steps to fix that problem in your department?
I talked with the auditors at that time, went over the information they needed that was done back then.
I'm not speaking about the audit. I'm speaking about the manor custodian vulnerability study that they could not get the information they needed from the deputy treasurer to complete their vulnerability study.
That I have not talked about because I haven't completely read their final presentation or their recommendation.
Please have something prepared for the next board meeting to let us know what's being done to complete that report. Will we have treasurer and supervisor reports tonight?
I haven't, I have not prepared a written report, Rob.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, trustee Brizo is once again missing. He clearly refuses to attend. He refuses to resign. I asked this board, formally asked this board, to remove him as trustee because he refuses to, to attend to his duties, and he refuses to resign. Please do something to put that in place.
Rob, I, I can tell you that trustee Brizo indicated he does plan to be here this evening. He is running late because he's got a business call, but he does plan to be in attendance later in this meeting.
My formal request stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Next up is Pam Boyd, followed by David Reed. Hi, Pam.
Good evening. Pam Boyd, a Sciop resident, Sciop Community Newsletter, Sciop Government watchdog. Brandon Roulette has been working with the PPP for many, many months. I hope the board can approve his efforts tonight. I feel his design would be a good introduction to residents to see what kind of usage the playscape might, might bring, giving this board or the future board an idea of. what they might be willing to approve going forward. My main concern, though, is making sure that there is a plan in place to maintain the playscape, play space as in who and what and where and when someone is going to be taking care of it. Kristi, oh my gosh, it's a joy to see you at the board table in your temporary expanded duties as office coordinator. Thank you so much and it's just so good to have you there. It's, it saddens me to find out yesterday that Sean McCormick, our code enforcement officer, has given his notice to leave his position. He has has done such a fabulous job. He was a much-needed person, perfect person for this position, and I would like to know why he's resigning. Finally, I too am concerned about trustee Brzeo having a business call. When you make a commitment to be on this board, your, your calendar should be absolutely cleared and you should make this the highest priority. He took over the position of a previous trustee who missed half of her her time on this board, which infuriated residents. And so I, I do not give trustee Brzeo a pass, but just because he has to make a business appointment. It could have been rescheduled to another time. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is David Reed, followed by Jonathan Greenberg. Hi, David.
Hi, David Reed, SIO Township. First of all, Brendan, or excuse me, Brandon, the prospective Eagle Scout. Thank you for your effort in this project. I think it'll, I think it'll be used a lot by the children of SIO. But I would suggest, if you ever do this again, that you might want to include in your, in your PowerPoint, an overview of where your project actually sits within the parcel. It seems, it, it, I, I get the impression it's a fairly small footprint, but it would be nice to see where within the project or within the parcel it sits. But again, thank you for your effort. And then regarding the barn, I, I, I'm wondering where, why we think it's necessary to sell this. As I understand it, that barn or that parcel, and this was long before I got involved with the township, which had to be at least twenty-five years ago. That parcel was donated to the township and and preserved in perpetuity, which includes the barn. And it seems to me that to sell it would be a travesty. We have a parks, preserves and pathways. That barn sits on a preserve. And I'm, I'm flabbergasted. Why can't we use the PPP funds to fix the roof? There's, it should be a non, a non-question. That should have been done months ago. I don't understand the inaction on that and I don't understand the logic behind selling an asset because it needs some work. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up is Jonathan Greenberg.
Hi, y'all. Hey, Kristy, thanks a lot for taking over and and pulling the, pulling the oars full-time. There's many people who appreciate it and I just wanted to let you know that. Secondly, Mr. Brzeo hasn't been in a meeting since the end of July. I would like to also double-click on that request to have him removed from the board. It's, it's just, it's sad. It's not something that this board should put up with. It's not respectful of the residents and I wonder if he had won his seat back as a trustee, if his attendance would be different. Finally, if anybody knows, what's her name, Merde, could you ask her to remove her street signs? They're everywhere still. I see like two of them every freaking day. She needs to come get her signs. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan. I see no other interested public. We have twenty-one people in attendance.
Thank you. That brings us to approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the regular meeting of September tenth. Are there any corrections to the draft minutes? Seeing none, is someone prepared to move approval of the minutes that are announced?
I move their approval.
Moved by riser, support. Support by Quinta. All those in favor of approval of the minutes as presented, say aye, aye. All right, minutes are approved. That brings us to the consent agenda. Is someone prepared to move approval of the consent agenda?
I would move the content agenda as amended.
All right, moved by riser, support by.
I support.
All right, I, Brzeo. Please call the roll.
Sure. Brzeo?
Yes.
Perry? Noel? Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer? Yes. Flintop? Yes. Consent agenda adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. That brings us to reports. We have regular reports and I know just received just this afternoon a regular report on planning commission meeting. Are there any comments or questions?
Reports generally?
Yes. Before we turn to a specific report.
Sure, just a couple of updates and I'll have more written reports more written materials related to the audit and the list of policies addressed at our next meeting, but our audit got filed. So thank you to everybody and to Raymond for their great job on the audit. We've already gotten a request, as expected, for the corrective action plan for the findings. And we'll be working on that and bringing that to the board, along with a list of policies to address out of the meaner work. On the elections front, I want to thank everybody. We worked all weekend and we have five thousand seven hundred and ten ballots in the mail right now. You should, if you've signed up for an absentee ballot, you should be receiving it by October first. If you don't, please come into Township Hall. Anybody can receive an absentee ballot and I'll provide more updates. Also wanted to give a quick update. We had a little ad hoc committee, been working well, brought back interim manager recommendations to the board last time, which we adopted. And we had a check-in meeting yesterday to kind of see how communication was going with everything. Things seem to be going pretty smoothly. We did talk a little bit about the need to have a little more in involvement, kind of clear involvement of Kathy as our, does need for kind of planning and zoning in terms of making sure that items are ready before they come to the board table. So I don't know if you want to speak a little bit to that, if there's been any kind of progress since yesterday on that or?
Well, so Laura and I met today, talked it through. And there really wasn't problem, but I wanted to be sure that the chains of decision-making were clear with everything. And that was, you know, why we spoke. And it was fun. Yeah, a good conversation. It was funny.
So for, for kind of subsequent board meetings, you know, for the kind of big items, we'll kind of have the planning team go over them and have Kathy take a look and kind of make sure things are kind of all ready to go.
I had a brief update.
Please proceed.
On Gellman. I got an email last week that, from Bill Stapleton, that Washington County who is remaining in the case, as we discussed before. Gellman has appealed the ruling of Judge Connors. And the Court of Appeals has granted Gellman's application for leave. So the case is going to proceed to the Court of Appeals. We expected this. SIO is not a party any longer in the case, so we'll just get occasional updates from others, but this was expected.
Is there an opportunity for SIO to sort of partner in any way, collaborate in any way with the county as they? I would assume they would participate.
We can have dialogue with Bill Stapleton and he can talk to their attorney.
I'm wondering if there's opportunities for us to sort of support their, their, whatever they're doing.
What do you, what do you mean exactly?
I don't know. You're the attorney. I mean, like amicus kind of, you know, if there's like.
Their issues were different from our issues and one of one of the, remember, all of the interveners were asked to file a complaint if they wanted to remain in the case.
Right.
City of Ann Arbor did not, SIO did not. The county decided to remain in the case citing primarily public health, safety and welfare issues in their complaint. It was a different complaint from what they had initially filed and that's one of the issues in this appeal. But it's not our issue. That's what I'm saying. I don't think it's our issue.
I just, I, perhaps I misunderstood. At the time, I thought when we were choosing the township not to remain as a intervener, that we were looking to potential opportunities to be somehow supportive of the county.
We could have dialogue with Bill Stapleton and express that, see what he thinks about it, but that isn't something that's been clearly discussed.
Okay. Are there any other?
And I have one more. Today, we had a meeting regarding the Trailwoods development to discuss the email that came in from Erin Cohen and the Trailwoods HOA regarding work that allegedly had not been completed. David Stolman joined for part of the meeting. And he's going to look at exactly what work was completely documented, get back to us, get back to others. It's a process that has started. There will be another meeting. Keeping the board informed, since the whole board received the email from Erin Cohen.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments, oral additions to the written reports?
I just want to take the opportunity to note, we've got a written report, code enforcement report from Sean. I just want to acknowledge Sean has done an absolutely awesome job over the last year and he's not just been a great code enforcement officer, but he's been our first code enforcement officer. So he's also quickly built the program and I think things are in good shape for the next person to come in.
Actually, we did receive an email today from Dexter wanting to know how we processed our online forms.
Oh, great.
Because they're considering doing the same thing. And they really liked the concept. And so I emailed them back and happy Sean and.
Great.
Told them that you did a fantastic job.
I mean, is there enough fans? They're not working for.
I'm talking about online forums.
Online forums, but do they have a, a, an enforcer person today?
They do.
Do they use them full-time?
I didn't ask that. It was them asking us how we, how well our online forums worked.
No, I understand, but I wonder if we don't have one, if Sean's gone, could we possibly leverage?
I thought that, but I'm still waiting to see what Aurora decides to do and how she wants to move. But we did discuss things today, but.
Just like it.
I thought so too. So I'm waiting, I'm waiting for Sean to reply and I'm going to just kind of let out for a minute and
Easy button.
Take the time and.
Other questions or comments? All right, let's then turn to our report on the Washington Regional Resource Management Authority. We have with us our representative to the authority, Tom Boss. And we have a written report from Tom and some additional materials that were sent out just today or yesterday.
Hi, Tom.
Hi, Jessica. Thanks, Will. I, as you know, I, I'm the, what they call delegate of SIO Township to Washington Regional Resource Management Authority, which initially started out as you know, devoted to recycling and how to increase recycling and all that stuff, but it's morphed into, over the years, now into most of the energy being directed to a regional trash hauling, recycling effort on behalf of at least four of the members of Warm Up. Now, given you, you know, little reports from time to time, I'm emphasizing though now that there's, there's going to have be decisions that you folks are going to have to make fairly quickly. And along that line, there's been contracts prepared by the Warm Attorney, Bob Davis, who's also the author of the CFL contract.
We know Bob.
And he is doing all of the contract preparation for Warm Up. And it's, I, I just distributed yesterday to the board the most recent contracts that Bob's prepared. So I'm not pretending that everyone has to become an expert at reading this stuff. And I should note Ms. Ms. Noel, Mr. Perry, who's the alternate to me, and Ms. Fink met rather extensively to talk about the contracts. And I, I, I've talked to several of you about this, you know, over the last few weeks. And just so everyone knows, there are four members of Warm Up who are going to be coming up next year in September, needing new trash hauling agreements. Including Celine, Ipsalani, Ipsalani Township and oh, oh, uh, uh, Pittsfield Township. And they're they are very they're forging ahead with, with this regional contract. With the regional contract comes some pluses and some minuses. Obviously, the, the on the surface level, if you have more people in a contract, the price of the services should go down. And that may or may not be true in the long run, but it was attempted last year by Warm Up and we did get bids in and priority, of course, coincidentally was the chosen bidder on this original regional contract attempt, which did not go through because of reasons that I can only report to secondhand. I'd rather not, but it's it's starting up again and they're forging ahead. They've got to have something in place and by September of next year, which isn't an awful lot of time. And some of the material I have forwarded to everyone includes the timeline that Warm Up has established for itself to get this done. And it's moving pretty quickly. And we're, I, 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 I was just told just the other day, as I forwarded the email to you, that we're, now we're supposed to have any suggestions for changes to this big contract for the next Warm Up meeting in, in October. So there's no way I can do this. That, that's a big contract and I'm not pretending that even Ms. Fink would do it because of the size involved. And yeah, I had actually made a a motion at one point, which eventually didn't, didn't occur for a variety of reasons, to have it sent out to one of the large firms and have it go through. But I have a funny feeling that's not going to happen.
You mean the contract?
The contract.
Warm Up who retained Bob? Warm Up retained Bob Davis?
Yes.
And who else does he represent? In this, any of the other jurisdictions?
Um, I, I don't think so. I think he's just warm up. I don't think he represents any of the individual jurisdictions. And we forwarded on, we meeting Ms. Fink, Ms. Perry and I, along with Ms. Noel. We forwarded a bunch of changes over to Warm Up. Or to Mr. Davis and Warm Up at the time of the last meeting. And Mr. Davis indicated that the, the, he would make the changes. Discussed, including some emails that were, was sent by Ms. Fink and myself. And the Warm Up Board approved the contract based upon the promise of Mr. Davis to make the changes. I voted against that. I wanted to see it and we have it now. I haven't even had a chance to look at it. And. It's, I'm hoping somebody else does. Because I think it's too important and remember, this is a potential 20-year contract. Right now, it's structured as an initial 10-year and then a renewable 10-year. And it's, that's a big deal and there's a lot of money involved. And there's a lot of risk involved too. So I think this deserves more attention than. Has been given so far. And that means everyone concerned, including you folks. I'm also, I approached the, the topic before to several of you. Uh, but I'm, I'm the longest-serving delegate for many of these people. I was there on the first meeting. And over time, they've all changed. But I'm, I'm not an elected official. And I think that it is important for SIO to be represented in Warm Up by an elected official. I believe strongly in that because. I, I don't wanna say I've worn out my welcome there, but I'm, I'm at the moment a voice of, of. Trying to get it slowed down a little bit more and it, and it isn't working. I think it would. An elected official of SIO would be more, more effective than I. Hate to say it, but it's true. Besides, it's been doing it too long. Maybe it's time for somebody else. There are other things involved in Warm Up just beyond trash and recycling. That's looming and we were told at the last meeting, as I indicated in my report. That the Arbor Hills landfill where our trash goes has. An expected life of only four years. So that's another big issue that is also right, right here in front of us. Cause you're not gonna be able to get a landfill in a short period of time. So there's, there's some pretty big things going on right now. I will ask you, when you're considering this whole thing, to consider. The risk of having a big, big regional hauler. And how that will affect SIO Township over the next, how many years? We've already seen the, the problems that have occurred when GFL. Assigned the contract over to Priority. Remember Priority actually was chosen by Warm Up as the preferred contractor. They're about to be signed up. So we, ironically, we would have been in with that, had we gone that route. The question becomes, do you folks want a big regional contractor to do all this stuff? With the risk that that contractor is gonna have to be around for a minimum of 10 years operating well? Or do you want a different system? The options are fairly obvious. The, the other option is to have SIO pay for. The hauling of trash and recycling and yard waste. Like a lot of the other jurisdictions who are Warm Up members already do. In fact, I think all of them do it that way. But that comes with some additional problems, including the cost, the administration. And the problems that are involved with that. Another option is basically what we have right now. Which is the residents are paying for the services on their own. And you folks are gonna have to make that decision considering all this stuff. There's a lot that goes into it too, because. Choosing, for example, if we wanted to continue on the system we have now. First of all, Priority has the right to extend the contract upon notice given next February. And if they do, then that continues it on for an additional five years, the way things are going right now. And assuming that's the case, then the choices are obviously. Probably very limited and I'll, I'll defer to Ms. Fink if everything, but. The other possibility that could occur and it's gonna be fairly quickly. Is that the contract does not get renewed. Remember, the choice is not ours, it's priorities. So they, they may not renew and we would have, oh, you know, nine months. Or so to get somebody else in here on our own system. So that's another contract, another RFP. Or you could go, in that case, go along with the Warm Up regional contract, so. That's a decision you guys are paid the, the big bucks to me. And there's a lot involved. It's not as, even as simple as I'm laying it out for you right now.
So one, even though you're not an elected, you certainly have the support of this board. And you're, you're an attorney, you bet on this Warm Up, or you do, you do a stellar job. In distilling it and talking to us, you and I spoke over the phone on this, so. I, I'm sure the others join me in thanking you for your service to the township on this, so.
Appreciate that.
And I really mean it, so, so.
I appreciate it. And I'm not trying to cut you off, but. I appreciate, thanks for the kind words, but. Let's get beyond that. We really, we really gonna have to get into some pretty big decisions.
I'm gonna ask some questions too. But, so what are the, you know, this market evolves and like a company this and like. I'll bet you a dollar that whatever company they go with isn't gonna be around in 10 years, it's gonna have been bought out by somebody. But so what, what are the players that are likely to be bidding on this regional contract?
You're asking me to speculate on something I really don't know all the, enough to really speculate on.
There's gotta be somebody big enough with enough resources to service all of that market.
In talking or with some, some people associated with Warm Up and a little outside. There are still a couple of what, which you can call and they really, it, it's not really appropriate. But we can think of them as the old mom and pops. And I think anybody who's been here in SIO Township long enough has been with one of the mom and pops at some point. There are a couple of those still left.
Big enough to do a job of that magnitude?
Of SIO or the regional?
The region.
Oh, no, 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 the players there would be.
The, the big ones, the big trucks we see.
If I was gonna guess, I'd say Waste Management, I'd say Priority. I'd say Rizzo.
Rizzo, didn't they become?
Miss, Rizzo made a bid on the regional Warm Up contract last year. They're one of the bidders. They're, I can't remember whether it's four, four bidders, five bidders, I can't remember, but they were one of them.
So, and we need to track it closely and I appreciate you doing that because that could foretell what we're likely to be dealing with. When we try to next year.
Oh, yeah.
You get Priority says, thanks, we know thanks, we'd rather do something like this model?
Well, that's the simplistic way of doing it, but remember John, and there, there. There also is the possibility that Priority would say, well, we don't wanna do it at that price. But we'll do it at a different price. And then you get into. Well, okay, then you have to go to another contract and.
And it could look pretty close to this.
What we're paying now or?
Terms that Davis is working out for the region.
Uh, well, he's not working out the actual numbers.
No, I'm talking the terms, the one that we have. With the, with the, with the fees and the this and then.
Yeah, maybe.
All right, I, I've asked a lot, I'll yield.
Just, just a couple of general concepts, you know, you've only done lots of contracts. Uh, is, it's, it's even okay to have a 10-year contract when the contract is in your favor. The problem is we have a 10-year contract, not in our favor, right? That's the problem. So, so that, that's how I see it. It's just, there's no punishment, right? There's no.
A contract of, of hauling waste and doing recycling yard waste, and I've thought about it quite a bit. It's, it's easy to say you'd want it in your favor. But if you want a job done right, you wanna make with a hauler. You're gonna have to be fair to both sides.
Well, every good contract, I would say, when both parties leave a little bit angry, you've probably got a good contract.
Or maybe just a little bit pleased, but, and I'd rather go with a little bit pleased and a little bit angry, but either way. But you, you really should have something that the hauler understands, agrees with. And is willing to work with you as a, you know, a partner. Because if you're constantly at war with the hauler, then it's not doing anybody any, any good. It's costing money.
I think that stands with any contract, right? I mean, you always wanna try and be a partnership. But there should be some kind of carrot and stick and I guess it'd be up to the next board to decide, is it worth to pay a little bit more money? And have a little more le, uh, leverage in the contract versus getting the, the cheaper deal and having less leverage.
Yeah, yes.
Warm Up, does SIO need to belong to Warm Up?
That's a good question. The, the original purpose of Warm Up was to promote recycling and, and Warm Up has really done that to some scale. And it's still doing it. There, there's gonna be another audit to find out some data on. Stuff that's being recycled or things that shouldn't be in a recycle, you know, contamination, all that stuff. And it's being done by some, by a group that did it last time, a very good group of people and they'll give you good data. But. Since this effort of regional contracts consuming more and more of the time and effort of Warm Up. And we're not, right now, we're not a part of. We're a potential player in it, coming up soon, possibly. The question that has occurred to me as well, do we really need to be in SIO? The dues right now are 5,000 bucks a year and that's, that's okay, you know. I, I'm not sure we really get $5,000. It's hard to really say that, but. Certainly $5,000 of municipality or township is a relatively small amount for something that's trying to do this. But to answer your question, do we really have to be a member of Warm Up if really it's a regional contract consuming? Time, effort and money, because the attorney fees are still being shared by everyone. Although supposedly in the future that will change and the. Municipalities who sign up for the regional contract will be bearing the responsibility of that. But then again, I, you know, who knows? So the question is, do we need to be a member of Warm Up? I'm not so sure, but that's up to you folks.
So, SIO, as a member. When our contract is finished, let's say. Let's say next year, but the priority says, oh, we're gonna raise the rates and we say, you know, go, no. Then we'll have to, potentially, but in, when our contract is finished in 10 years, are we bound to the regional contract within Warm Up?
No.
No, okay, wanna make sure. And in regarding.
Not until you sign up for the, that contract we, we talked about. Mariah and I and Kathy and Mark talked about.
Just to clarify, there's the Warm Up membership and then there's this member contract, two separate.
Right, that, that's what I'm asking is if, since we are a member of Warm Up, does that bind us to this? No, you have to sign the, you have to sign the member contract separately, separately, okay, yeah. And one other question, this 10, potential 20-year contract at the 10-year mark. If you know this, it may not be in there yet, is it up to the contractor to say, hey, we wanna go 10 more years?
The way it's written right now, and of course it's subject to negotiation with whoever that is chosen. Right now, it's written up for Warm Up to be the holder of the right to decide whether to continue on. So. But there's a lot, there's a lot going on and you mentioned Jillian that, you know. Priority says, no, we want more money. That may not be a bad choice to make, depends. Because the alternative is. I don't know, you join Warm Up, you try to get your own contract with other hauler, that's a real possibility too. And to even go further, and I don't wanna take up the whole time of the meeting, but I, part of, part of my coming here was to. Hopefully leave you with the idea that this needs to be paid attention to it and it's a big deal. And I guess that's the most important thing. But remember, the choices that we have may be limited. We may not be able to have a lot of choice of who. The pricing though may be okay because. Not to really go way in depth, but let's say Warm Up does get a regional contract. Well, and if we don't wanna join the Warm Up regional contract, can, can we not use that pricing? In our favor with a separate contract with the hauler? Saying, hey, otherwise we go to them or do you wanna go with us? You know, there's, there's a lot of things. There, there's a lot of balls in the air that you have to jump.
One thing I wanted to ask for Maya, if there's anything she wanted to add to what Tom said.
Well, I did, I did wanna clarify that difference between Warm Up membership and being part of this contract. Because it is confusing and we're kind of using the same terms. But then I guess the, the other thing I'd like to say is, yes, it's a long contract, but I really wanna crack at it. Because it, I already see a number of provisions that have been carried over from this GFL contract. That we are dealing with right now that. We now know in practice are difficult to, to deal with, so. I, I'll, I'll get my hands on it and then if you still need to send it somewhere else, you can send it somewhere.
And just to clarify one other thing while we're on the subject, before I leave. Mr. Reiser mentioned that I'm an attorney. I am an attorney. In fact, I just paid my dues again for next year. I don't know why. But I'm not, I really am not giving legal advice on this. I hope you guys understand that. That, that's why, that's why this thing is here, and, and we met with her, and uh, we forwarded, I forwarded up onto you the, the latest revisions of the contracts involved.
Well, I do have another, one other thing, Tom. Um, it was my understanding that under the authority agreement, so the, the membership agreement where members say, yes, we want the authority to go out and get a contract for us, that it might not be just one hauler. It might be one hauler for the eastern communities and one hauler for the western. Did, did you understand that also?
Um, uh, no.
Okay.
I kinda, the way it was going, i- i- it's pretty clear to me unless they've changed things, which can happen.
Yeah.
Uh, is it's gonna be one hauler.
It might be something that we want to clarify because I think it goes to trustee Reiser's question about how can one hauler provide all of this service?
That's, that's a good question. Well, it's the, the question that I think a lot of municipalities already have with priority. Once priority took over from GFL, and if you look on a map, how big a contract that is, it's so significantly big, and the capital backing that has to be there for priority is, is substantial to say the least, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, say thank you, Tom, and this is a, a really big issue that we need to spend more time on. Um, and I hear what you're saying, that they're going to be making some, trying to get the changes to the contract over the next month or so, so they say.
We, we've been told that the latest email, so everyone knows, saying, bring any changes you have to the next, uh, WARMA meeting.
Okay.
So we have like, what, two weeks, three weeks?
Right.
To do, to do this.
Yeah.
And I, I, I can't do it. It, it, it's.
Well, I don't think the township can do it either, really.
But, but I do think we, like, as a township, both the outgoing board members and incoming board members, like, we, I think it would benefit everybody if we, um, scheduled like a study session on this because, um, for our current contract and all of its problems, the underlying ordinance. I mean, there's been, you know, division on this issue since, you know, four years ago about this time of year when we had a majority outgoing, um, and voted in this contract. Um, I think we need to understand the SIO contract, WARMA, and the proposed regional contract. I'm hearing Tom about appointing a board rep. And, and also, I think we need to assign a staff person who's responsible. I know that this, the code enforcement officers started kind of falling on his plate. Of course, with Mariah, of course, with the supervisor who, for the ordinance, is responsible for our contract. But I think that it would help if we could maybe, I'd be willing to, you know, call for a special meeting if others would be, um, to simply be a working session to discuss waste hauling contracts, both our current one and what's being proposed regionally, and the pros and cons of participating in the regional contract.
I think that's a good idea.
Well, and, and it is a good idea, but Jessica, also keep in mind, things are moving very quickly with WARMA.
Absolutely. So I think in the meantime, um, then I think we need to designate somebody or somebodies to provide that input with you on behalf of SIO. So I don't know if you and Mark want to continue with that, you know, for this, I guess you're talking about the next thirty days or so?
Um, you had said you might be interested.
Yeah.
Being a board rep.
I, I definitely am. I just can't commit to it in the next thirty days till after the election, yeah.
Well, my, my understanding, um, and I do want to move us along, I've, so, a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank you and Mark, who's not with you here tonight, but the two of you have been very helpful to me.
There's a good reason why Mark could not come tonight, and I could tell you privately, but I'm not going to say I'm here.
Okay.
It's embarrassing.
All right, we don't need to go into that.
That's the only part we really.
Yeah. In any case, in any case, I want to thank, I want to thank you quickly and briefly, but, uh, from my heart, for all of your, both of you, all of your help and advice over the past four years, but, um, I also, I understand the appointments, if I remember correctly, uh, they roll over in January, is that right?
Uh,
That's when we did them in the past. But in, in any way, they're coming up soon, so there's sort of a natural time to think, for the township to think about uh, making a change if that's what the township chooses to do and you choose to do, uh, but.
Don't, don't worry about me.
Yeah, I, 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 I just wanted to sort of put a marker in that thought because you proposed it. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say is, um, in the conversations I've had with you and others about this, my understanding is that being a member of WARMA and choosing to participate in this regional, uh, agreement, if it comes together, if, um, they're sort of essential, it isn't essential to be a member of WARMA at the point at which the contract is created in order to join it at a later date.
No, supposedly it'll be set up to allow any of the WARMA members and possibly outside WARMA to join into the regional contract.
So, and so it's, it's, it's not, uh, the, the fact that this contract is moving quickly in WARMA and, and it's coming together, I mean, yes, we may want to try and have some input into it to help avoid having and perpetuate problems that we are already experiencing with the GFL now priority contract. But even if we don't choose to participate in, at the beginning of this, we could join later.
We can join, but if we haven't made the, any amendments which we may want to make to the regional contract that they're putting together now, and it goes into effect amongst the four gr- groups who will be starting it, I don't know how to change it if.
There's a window, there's a window for impacting the agreement at this point in time, it's closing rapidly.
So I, I do want to suggest again the idea of a working session. We could make it a little more focused on the proposed regional waste hauling contract. And I, I would propose we could get it scheduled, you know, before October eleventh. I mean, within the next two weeks if we held a meeting, if that would be helpful of the current board, incoming board members, that would be a time that would work for Mariah and other key people.
Well, if, if, I, 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 not to argue with the idea of the working session, but if the goal, uh, is to uh, put together input for this agreement, what's the most efficient way, I'm looking at you, township attorney, what's the most efficient way to sort of bring that input together and organize it so that we can, um, convey it, um, in a way that still participates in that agreement?
Isn't, can I just say one thing? Isn't the goal broader than just deal with the agreement? I mean, it, we need some education, there's some more.
I know, there's, they're overall.
Discuss.
Yes.
We need to deliberate. I mean, this is an issue we haven't even discussed.
But what I'm trying to get at is there's a, a very short window or a very tight window, I guess, uh, for input into this agreement.
Okay.
And the, I don't argue at all about the, the larger goals of, of, you know, education and sort of figuring out as a community what we want to do, but in terms of impacting that agreement, we've got a pretty tight window.
So, and I think, I think when I think back to Bob Davis and the various iterations of our contract he gave to us that Kathy and I eventually voted against because it was, had so many problems. Like, I mean, what I would do is kind of go back through those and kind of, because there were a few key areas that we thought were going to be problems, we can look at that, but we can also look at our experience of what has been problems, which I know you're very familiar with, you know, the areas where we've gotten some of the complaints.
Yeah, I think the most efficient thing would be to dig into that contract and, and I can do that before the work session. So that I have my recommendations, that then we can talk about why those recommendations are related to the issues that we've been having, other gaps that we see. Because, yes, the, the, we don't have to decide now if we're going to be part of that member contract, but it does sound like this is our best opportunity to affect in the, the contract itself.
Yeah.
And, and I, you know, um, Bob was very open to those suggestions that we made the last time, so.
Yeah, I haven't seen whether, whether they're, what, what the changes are.
Take on and.
Think so?
Yeah.
What's, what's the, what's the hard deadline for, for input? Do we know?
I think it'll be voted on next WARMA meeting.
Do you know what the date of that meeting was?
Third, third Monday?
Yeah, so, so my motion would be that we'd schedule a special meeting as a work session, um, by October eleventh. So that'd be within the next couple of weeks. Mariah, is that, would that work for you?
Yep.
Thank you for that.
So we'll work on finding a date that works for the most people as possi- that we possibly can include them.
That's what I would suggest, yeah. And Christie, could we leave the set, the kind of surveying of people's schedules and setting the date and time for you?
I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
I'll leave you with one other thought, so you can think about it. Remember that if this regional contract goes through, and if, if SIO wants to join that and is, has the opportunity to, which are two separate questions. Um, it will change the basic idea of how trash and recycling yard waste is done in SIO, completely different. The administration will be with WARMA. How's, how would, how that will, and it's supposedly.
They have to structure.
They'd have to build it.
That's a good question.
This is like deja vu.
They want to talk about two people handling the administration.
Let's not, let's not go down that path because we could talk all night about that.
Pro- procedurally, though, I would, I would ask, um, for, for a vote on the call for the meeting, just so we can legally call it. I'd make the motion.
So, motion by Flintoff, support by Noel, all those in favor say aye, or others opposed. All right, so we have a plan for how we're going to proceed. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thanks so much, Tom.
And I'm sorry this took up so much time, but it's a big issue.
Thank you so much.
This matters to people.
Yes.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. Well, that brings us to the summary of the public hearing. Yes, to the public hearing on the Crossroads Final Site Plan, PUD F S E number two, three, zero, one, six, slash, Z O A, number two, four, dash, zero, five. Um, and for the public hearing, I think what we'd like to do is, um, do, do it in this order. We'll have a, a, a summary presentation by Carlisle Wardman, our, uh, planning consultant. Um, any additional comments from, um, O H M, from, uh, Matt Parks, um, whoever else is with him this evening, um, from, on engineering matters, and then a brief presentation by the developer. And then, um, we'll open it up to public comment, um, uh, we'll open the public hearing formally. Public comment, uh, during the public hearing is, um, up to five minutes per, uh, speaker. And then, um, when we get to the action item later in the agenda, we will have the board deliberation and potential questions from the board. So with that, um, is, uh, Laura ready to speak?
Five minutes, Laura.
Only five minutes? You promise? Good evening, everybody. So this is for the final PUD site plan, uh, the Crossroads Development. As a planned unit development, this is a rezoning of property, and so that's why we are holding a public hearing this evening, um, to finalize that rezoning. Uh, as you're all probably familiar with this project, um, it is located at the southwest corner of Liberty and Wagner Roads. Um, it was originally I One Limited Industrial. It is now proposed to be PUD planned unit development, um, to allow for, uh, two hundred and twelve units, uh, multifamily units ranging in size from five hundred and twenty-five square feet to one thousand nineteen square feet. It includes five garden court buildings with sixteen apartments per building, two podium buildings containing a total of a hundred and twenty apartments, and twelve one-bedroom carriage house apartments. The Planning Commission recommended preliminary PUD approval with conditions on August eighth, twenty twenty-two. The Township Board of Trustees then approved the preliminary PUD, PUD plan with conditions on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. More recently, the Planning Commission recommended final PUD approval with conditions, with the conditions primarily associated with air quality at their June tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Uh, since that time, um, we've done additional, we received additional air quality information from the Eagle Air Quality Division and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Neither agency is, has proposed any specific steps or actions to be taken at this time regarding, um, additional air quality, uh, steps. Um, I just want to note a couple, there are a lot of attachments, um, in your packet. Uh, the community benefits are outlined as part of the development agreement. These are the same community benefits that were proposed during the PUD. Um, actually, there are a couple that, they're the same, plus the addition of, um, some additional sustainability elements that the board and the planning commission brought up as part of preliminary and final PUD deliberation. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, um, what I'd like to do is actually proceed and, and, and if O H M has anything they would like to add, um, and then move to the developer presentation, but if you would stay, Laura, for, uh, when we get to the action item, that would be great. Is there someone from O H M?
Yep, Matt is joining. Thanks, Matt.
Hey, everybody. You hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Laura captioned everything great. Um, the only thing I have to add, um, our two letters are dated way back in May, end of May, May thirtieth, um, two, two key things there. Um, there's, there's our detailed engineering number three, which outlines the amount of RU's, um, they're requesting, and then a second memory and, um, dated May thirtieth, uh, same date, outlines how the RU calculations were calculated. Typically, you know, each unit or each home is an RU, but in this case, there's, um, several apartments condos that are, are smaller, uh, six hundred square foot. Um, those are discounted a little bit based on our standard table that we use with Table A. Um, also, with this not being single family, there was an existing drainage district. We referenced it in our comment number two in our letter. Um, with multifamily or, or before, when this was commercial, the applicant started through that process with the water resources to abandon an existing drainage district. We agree with that. There is a stormwater maintenance agreement, um, that was provided for review, um, which will basically take place, uh, over, over top of that drainage district. The only time we usually recommend drainage districts are for single-family residential. Um, and we've gone through that process with the water resources before, but water resources actually isn't looking to add any drainage districts for non, uh, single-family residential, uh, multifamily or commercial, which is previously was before, um, uh, would just do a normal, uh, stormwater agreement. So just kind of to draw your attention, an RU usage, when this was previously submitted as a commercial use or office use, um, the board previously did approve thirty-eight RU's. So this will require a hundred and seventy-seven, so tonight, as part of the motion, if this is acted upon, you'd be approving an additional one hundred and thirty-nine RU's, so. Any questions? I'd be happy to stay on like Laura and answer as discussion commences.
Thanks, Matt.
Well, when do you want us to ask questions of our engineering plan?
Well, I was thinking we would do that during, when we got to the action items, just so we can move quickly through the present, the remaining presentation in the public hearing. Um, if the developer would like to now come forward, uh, it's your opportunity to make a presentation, uh, a brief presentation, and then we'll turn to public comment, I mean, uh, the public hearing.
Well, thank you. Well, we, we'll be very brief. We've been through this. You know the project pretty well. Uh, we have, who's here, Joe Manders, Washington engineer, Shannon Gibrandle in site design. David here from, from the, the, um, Vanderklaas Architects. And if you would, Kurt Gisling from, the environmental attorney from Warner North Cross, he's to address these issues that were brought up about the, uh, Cadillac gas hog plant. Um, they, they're here to answer your questions, so, so we'll keep this very brief. Um, we've been reviewed a number of times. You, you'd all know. Um we've been reviewed a number of times. You you all know the project well. It's well-designed, well-thought-out. We've addressed all the issues that were requested of us by both the Planning Commission and the board. And uh I think with that, I'm just gonna let Joe take it.
Sure, thanks. Um well, actually, Laura and Matt did a great job. They kind of hit quite a few of my points here. Um a couple other things, um one item that Matt brought up this evening is the Washington County Water Resource Commission abandonment of the drain. All that paperwork has been filed with the county. Uh we're just waiting for their confirmation and approval of that. Uh but everything that we need to do is complete. We understand it's just a matter of getting the paperwork through um to finalize that. Washington County Road Commission uh has approved the project. Permit will be issued once the contractor selected. Um and Syle Township Fire Department has approved the project in April twenty-ninth. Um and we're in the process right now of getting our Eagle permits with um the state uh for our sanitary sewer permit and our water main permit extensions. Uh one of those permits uh for the water main extension has already been issued by Eagle. Uh we expect the other one within a few weeks. Um next part I had here, Laura already went through um our past history of being before you and the planning commission and our approvals. Um getting down to the general goals of the project um that we've received input from planning commission and the board. Uh looking for a, you know, high-density project for the township, so I think, you know, a lot of land. Um also get that connection to sewer and water, so we have to do onsite systems. Um project has a very large floating space, green space. Uh we get into that just a little more here. Uh we're also doing a one hundred percent stormwater infiltration onsite. So we're able to take all our rainwater, infiltrate that into the ground through several different systems, rain gardens, filtration beds. Keep that water recharging. Um as noted, the the development agreement outlines a lot of detail into the public benefits. Just a quick overview for you is pathway connections, both the east and north from the project. Um pedestrian crossings with signals and and lights at the intersection of Wagner and Liberty. So people safely cross at those locations. Uh bus stops at that location as well. We're working with the township to provide access to their future water storage. Location that's basically behind our property and both cash donations to the township, uh fire and utilities. Um and as uh Dan noted, Kurt's here with Warner North Cross to address the issues Cadillac plant. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Could you speak up?
Okay, which part did you miss? I don't want to start over.
The last couple minutes you just said I want.
Okay, so public benefits, as we um outlined in the P U D development agreement. Um pathway connections, east and west. Um pedestrian crossings at Liberty and Wagner, safe crossings with signals and worked with the road commission to get those set up. Bus stops for people to get connectivity through town, downtown. Uh water storage pathway um for the township utilities to get to the future water tower, where you're there. And then cash donations to township utilities and fire departments. So um.
These are the same public benefits that were approved in the preliminary approval process which you, which you went through. And they're part of the development agreement, which is now completed, is in your file. And we think it addresses quite a bit of everything that that you need, that we can do. So.
Well, we have questions.
Yeah, I'll wait to, yeah, because I, yeah, I don't think.
Was it more, Joe?
Well, let's see, I have a mic. Um list here. Uh Kurt, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, one of the things that came up at the last one was to look at the Cadillac asphalt plant and see if what, if there was a problem. Well, you know, it's, it's hard to resolve a problem that doesn't exist, but we did our best. And I'd like Kurt here to address this issue. He's a environmental attorney, but he could, he could represent, who he is.
Yeah, so my name is Kurt Kissling. I'm an environmental attorney and for better or worse, I've chosen to focus on air. Um I'm on the clean air, I'm the chair of the Clean Air Committee for the Environmental Law Section of State Bar of Michigan. Have been for over ten years. I'm a member of the state's air advisory council. I also work with governments like SEMCOG, uh Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, their Southeast Michigan Ozone Study. It's renamed the Southeast Michigan Air Quality Study, so I have a fair amount of familiarity with with air quality. Uh been working there for, in that, in that area for twenty years. There are not a lot of people that focus on that, but I don't want to regurgitate the memo that's in the file. Echo Dan's sentiments, I don't think there's a problem that requires solution. Um I think, you know, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them later, but I'll, I'll just make a couple of points that maybe aren't as obvious to people that don't swim in these waters. You know, Cadillac asphalt is heavily regulated at the federal and state level, and at the state level, it's regulated by Eagle. In their air quality division, there's oversight from the State Department of uh Health Human Services, as well as in the Wayne, uh Washington County Health Department. So there are layers and layers of regulation here. And I will tell you that Michigan regulates stricter than federal. So if you have a federal standard, uh federal set of standards for air quality, Michigan goes above and beyond that. It's the strictest in the region. You're gonna have to go to Massachusetts or California or, you know, state of Washington defines a state that regulates more strictly than the state of Michigan. So what we're talking about is a regulatory environment that is very strict in terms of its regulation of stationary sources, like asphalt plants. Um even though it's a minor one, you know, asphalt plants do have a certain stigma associated with them, but this plant has what looks like a pretty immaculate record. Um one odor complaint the last ten years. Um even in Michigan, that's not very common. But in twenty fourteen, there was an odor complaint. We found nothing since then, either with the state uh with with Eagle, with the State Department of of Health, or with the County Department of Health. Uh I think the fact that all the inspections have come out saying compliance or substantial compliance, um again, over a ten-year period. There hasn't been a single violation notice issued. All things point toward this being one of the better-run asphalt plants, probably in the whole state. Um I'll also tell you that asphalt plants don't make it unless they work well with their neighbors. They can't afford to have neighbors that are polarized against them, so you generally find them to be more responsive to complaints. Uh so I don't know what people's, you know, individual uh uh histories are or or experiences are with them. But if you walk up and and talk to them, they will listen and they will try and do something about it if there's something they can. I guess, you know, again, you guys can ask whatever questions you have. I'm happy to provide context. Uh but uh, you know, I think the, the key takeaway here is that there's no problem to solve here. And what I would do is echo one of the quotes that was in Laura's uh June, July twenty-five, uh two thousand twenty-four memo. Uh she was quoting the air inspector for uh air quality division at Eagle. And he said, with the absence of complaints and lack of any identified substantial compliance issues, A Q D, Air Quality Division, isn't proposing any additional steps on our side. They concluded the same thing that we did. There really isn't a problem here that needs to be solved. But again, uh please, happy to answer questions now or later.
And I'll cut off any other members of the panel, if you, if you have things that you want to add for your presentation, but then I want to move on to the public hearing.
When are we gonna ask questions?
But when, when we get to the.
So we'll have.
Sharon has some.
All seven people back up?
Yeah, well, um.
Okay.
I'll, five people.
One, I, I'm sorry. I can count with Matt and Laura too.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry. So, um is there a queue that we'd like in?
I just wanted to provide a little bit of context on, in the evolution of this project over time. And uh I had the privilege of serving on the city of Ann Arbor Planning Commission for eight years. I was their chair. Um I stepped down last year, and one of the things I started noticing, probably about four years ago, is, you know, we used to get a lot of the kind of not my backyard, the NIMBY thing, right? We started getting what they're calling YIMBY, the yes in my backyard, people who were housing activists that were looking for more density, looking for more housing, and they were really at the vanguard of defining this housing crisis. Which is something that if you, unless you live under a rock, you know that this is going on in our, in our country right now. The national presidential candidates are talking about it, the governor is talking about it, and as you all know, we make these decisions at the local level, not at the national or the state level. So um I think we all probably know someone who's affected by this. It's making prices go up. Um it's whether it's a grown child or somebody who wants to downsize. Supply is at the root of this. There are a lot of other things too, but supply is part of the picture with this. This project has evolved from uh like an office project to a, to a residential project. And that residential project, um did a market analysis in the beginning, are midway through. And we changed up a bunch of the units so that there were more smaller units, because that is where the demand is. Young professionals are having a really hard time finding a place to live right now. So part of what I want to bring to this discussion is not just the people who are here. And that's important, obviously, you all are representing them, but it's also the people that want to be here and that aren't going to be calling it. And I'd just like to set the tone with that a little bit, as you all deliberate on this, to think about where you want to be within this larger context of the housing crisis that is going on. Thanks.
That's it.
Okay, that's it? That's for the?
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon.
So um I'd like to open officially the public hearing at eight forty-five. Um and at this time, if um you are present here and you would like to speak on this project, on this proposal, um this is your moment. Um and each speaker has up to five minutes to speak. Um and again, please direct comments to the uh the board of trustees. Um is there anyone present who would like to speak during the public hearing? If there's no one present who would like to speak.
Or whether they're just trying to hear.
Okay.
It's good, because I've got to go somewhere else. All I can tell you, I mean, industrial, I used to play a lot of tennis. And Liberty Sports Complex is over there, but also there's a tennis court of the city. It's on the other side. And I didn't have asthma or anything like that. But when that asphalt company is churning out, you smell it heavily. You can smell it in Liberty. If you were trying to do physical exertion outside, we would plan if we're gonna either go to the city court or uh to practice or go on Liberty that we didn't have that asphalt smell. And uh because it literally, it could burn, I felt it burning my lungs. So that was my own personal experience. And I guess I just wouldn't live in that area, but we have a hot shorting and whatever. I wouldn't want to live there trying to breathe that. Now, where I live currently, we've had to deal with the road construction. That when Toll Brothers had uh railways, the roads going in there. I have video and I went over to the um because I came over here and talked to the current manager at that time, I think it was Bryce Kelly. Not my problem, mine was usually the, the issues. So I went over there to the air environmental uh next door, because my, I had a neighbor whose kid had asthma. Who was just really having difficulty, let alone it c- covering people's cars. I mean, they're still doing construction. Um and don't think I'm just picking on that issue, because I follow the city, believe it or not. And uh I look at the brown field in uh West Washington and um the implosion they're gonna do over there and people didn't even, I saw it on, I saw it on city council. But I saw some people worried about keeping their window open and that. I guess, uh I didn't, I, I didn't follow this particular site. I, I didn't think it was gonna come up this soon um to be approved, but I also go, I always have questions about these community benefits I'm always hearing. I don't, I don't see where that, but I have a lot of questions about a lot of things, because we never hit the D D A ever. You go to the uh uh Ann Arbor D D A, they have a whole spiel there and they're capped at one percent. They say that is unsustainable. I'm just saying, I have questions about different community benefits and uh no matter who's doing it. And that, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
There anyone else who would like to speak during public, uh during the public hearing?
Um Judy Monk, um resident at Syle. I had um observations. Um one is, uh there was reference to high-density housing. Uh but I never heard the word affordable housing. Um so it seems that they're proceeding with wanting to increase a supply. But I did not hear at all uh the attribute about it being affordable. Um and um so, so that's one. Um two, it seems to be an island. So if you're looking to create community, um it would be a community of itself, because there is not really other residential or other activity around it. Um I understand that they want to put in crosswalks. Great, but it's still an island in itself. And um so that's a- another thing, and you can build a community building. They have a community building. And and we can walk a sidewalk around it, that's fine, but it really doesn't connect to Syle. Or it doesn't connect really to Ann Arbor. Um so that was my second thing. Um and my third one is, um the drawings or specs I saw were either three stories or four stories high in the tower buildings. And you look at that property, there is nothing in the area that is anywhere near that height. Um there aren't even silos in that area that would blend in. So I think it's an out-of-place development to place um three to four-story high. And I am surprised that the fire um did write that they support um their ability to handle that kind of development, because I don't think we have equipment at this point to address that height building. So those were my observations and comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Uh good evening. Kathleen Brandt, Syle resident. I wa- I did read the um the discussion back from the uh regulating agencies of, about the tests that were performed by the developer. And they clearly state that the developer did not test for VOCs, volatile organic compounds or particulate matter. And they clearly stated that those would be the issues affecting a people that would live in, in that close proximity. So to say there is no problem, uh I believe the agencies said they couldn't weigh in on that, because these tests were not done. So that it, once this is built in these, I don't know how many hundred people move in, then the problem may uh represent itself. And then secondly, there was a comment that this facility has a pristine record um related to complaints. And we also heard that uh the only way that this facility is monitored is via complaints. So there is not regular monitoring of this facility, is my understanding. And so the complaint process, um I would expect that most people are not aware of the formal complaint process. So that would lead to the absence of complaints if there's no awareness. And further, uh Mark Smith, the owner of um the property north of that six hundred uh South Wagner, has stated. South Wagner, has stated in planning commission meetings that there are odors from that plant. It has been recognized. He runs clean rooms. And that is a problem. So the problem exists. The problem has not been reported. What happens to the problem when and if this facility, these buildings are created and the population increases? Then the problem can be represented. Third, I asked this question repeatedly and never got an answer. On the drawings, it shows a dog park that is over an infiltration bed. I have asked the question repeatedly, is that a problem to have dog waste over in infiltration bed? I believe it is. That question was never answered by the applicant or anyone from the planning commission. I don't know that it was asked. I personally asked it during the preliminary approval. And I believe I asked it for formal. And it's never been answered, and I think it should be. Thank you.
Good evening. Renee Klubek, SIO resident. I was asked by two people this evening when I came here, why are you here? I guess they're concerned what I might say. I said I'm here to learn, and I was truly. But I need to speak to this issue. I'm glad I was here for this public hearing. My husband and I own 10 acres on just off of Knight Road. And if I was to walk in, I realize we're not commercially zoned. But if I was to walk in tomorrow and file a permit and has to put five small homes on my property to accommodate the housing crisis for my personal family. I think I would have a hard time getting that passed. People surrounding me in my neighborhood, my community, in the wellness of the area. We can't even get the garbage to work right on that road, let alone other things that are responsibility of the township. So I have grave concern and I am shocked to learn tonight. And I apologize, I have not been aware of this before. That on eight acres, you can accommodate 212 units. If I am incorrect, please tell me now. With that said, when we talk about high density and community, as were responded previously by other people. I truly think that the people that have been brought to SIO Township are people who want to be a part of a community. They don't want to be isolated. I am sorry, I know there's a housing crisis. I have family that's in the middle of that. But I am shocked at that corner to understand. I don't know how I missed it. I'm a homeowner and I don't know how I didn't read about this. I've got every issue of SIO news and every person I've been to in the last year to these meetings. So I personally want to say that corner is the only possible safe zone traffic wise right now. Zeb Road is a hot mess. We have schools over there. We have gravel pits in that area and now we're going to add 212 units. So I just want to personally tell you, I'm shocked, I'm disappointed. And I will take it upon myself in the future to do better, to know more and read more. But just keep in mind, when I come with my 10 acres and say, I want this. You can explain to me why I, as a personal resident of SIO Township for almost 30 years, my husband's property, that will get turned down. Just think about that when you're saying, okay, to 212, and what are you going to do with their trash? Good thing to be thinking of right now. Thank you. Thank you, Renee.
Hi, I'm Jim Chaconis. I live at 78 East Steinbach Road, Chelsea, Michigan. I grew up on Wagner Road, was a business, 334 South Wagner. We never had an asphalt smell. We never had a problem with that. I belong to Liberty Racquet Club and therefore, since they started, I have never smelled asphalt. I don't know what she's talking about. I played tennis outside. I run that area when I ran for years. So, you know, since 1970, I have known that area. With pollution, living else. I also had talked to Mark Smith about the corner piece. He never brought out the asphalt land that's for sale. They were selling it, the flex space on the corner. So Mark and I have talked about that stuff. He doesn't, he never talked about asphalt smells. I've worked with him. I know just about every neighbor around there, parts of plants and stuff. There's never been a smell problem there, from Liberty Racquet Club to 334 South Wagner.
Do you have a relationship to this property?
Yeah, I've worked for a lot of properties. I do commercial real estate.
Okay, for this, for this parcel as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Ryan Yeaple, 1070 Summerfield Gun Circle. I am on the planning commission. For those that don't know, I was the sole dissenting vote against this final QD approval. It was approved six to one. My concern, overall, the idea of the project, I'm very supportive of. I think there does need to be more housing in our community. I do think that we need to offer additional housing options, preferably other than rental real estate. We can't dictate to developers or landlords what they do. Be great to see multiple options, but you know, we've got what we're presented with. The thing that was most important to me and why I voted no against this particular project. I've seen what the applicant's attorney's prepared. I've seen all the information that's been presented by the applicant. We already have one environmental problem in this township, one very large environmental problem that happens to be very close by to this sub项parcel. I'm not saying that there is an environmental problem. I realize that the applicant, based on all the testing they have done to date, which I certain has cost them some significant sum of money. As his attorney is also very expensive. I get all of that. I just don't want this to be a repeat of environmental issues that we've had from other things in our past. It's not a one-to-one comparison by any means. There's a whole lot of differences for certain. But we can do the due diligence now to make sure this is safe. And we consider, so ultimately, I urge you to table it. Get the additional testing for the VOCs and the other things that were called out by Carlisle-Wartman and the other professionals. And then review all the material in full. Thanks, everybody.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during the public hearing? Let's turn to those who are participating remotely.
If you're interested in speaking, please raise your Zoom hand. Rob Pattinson. Hi, Rob.
Rob Pattinson, SIO Township resident. Originally, this project was proposed as a commercial project. And in that area, that made perfect sense. After the pandemic, office space was a glut. Open office space was a glut in Ann Arbor, so they changed it to a residential. I've known Mark Smith for over 30 years as a scientist and as a businessman. When he says that there was an odor issue occasionally at his property, I believe him and I trust him because he knows what he's talking about. Putting a residential unit across the street from an asphalt plant seems an extremely bad idea. As Renee Klubek said, in an area where this is the sole residential unit in that vicinity. In the in the report from Laura Kreps, Mike Kovalochik from Eagle says, quote, "As I think I previously indicated, the air monitoring conducted by the consultant did little to nothing to demonstrate any air quality impacts to the proposed subdivision. With the absence of complaints and lack of any identified substantial compliance issues, AQD isn't proposing any additional steps on our side. We will respond per our procedures to any complaints received and take whatever necessary actions that are required to resolve as needed." In other words, that is a post-project response. And you are a pre-project consideration. Post-project, just too late. People are already living there and they will have issues. And the only resolution will be to move. And this is not affordable housing. These are expensive apartments that will do nothing to lower the cost of living in SIO Township. I, I don't think this is a good idea. I think as a commercial space, that property makes sense. As residential, it doesn't make any sense at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else interested in speaking? Jonathan Greenberg. Jonathan?
Hi, y'all. Couple of things. First of all, I have witnessed the, in the building of Trailwoods, Carlisle-Wartman approving 320-some homes on a parcel that could have supported a maximum of 260-some homes. So they do break the rules for developers or look around them for don't necessarily adhere to the standard. So I would take a peek at that as as Trailwoods is kind of testimony to. That area is not really all that ideal for for folks, just from the sense that it's an island and also from the sense that the location. And I'll also oppose it just for that reason alone. Too many people have had too many health issues in this township and this is just setting us up for potentially one more. And finally, I didn't get her name earlier, but to the woman who said, I have 10 acres. If I tried to come and put five homes on it, you would tell me no. I can tell her that's true because that was my experience with Doug Luhan many years ago. He very clearly told me that if I didn't work with a developer, I would never develop my land in SIO Township. Those words were spoken to me and I know I've brought those up at the meetings before. But that is the company, your no bid company that has been giving you advice for 30 years. Hopefully, you guys see through this and put it off at the very least so it can be decided by the new board. This clearly needs more study in that I'm not sure we can really trust our consultants to provide us. When someone comes back and says, hey, yeah, no, we can't fix a problem that doesn't exist. Yeah, they, they don't want to see the problem. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jonathan. David Reed. Hi.
Hi, David Reed. I just want to say I concur with both Rob and John on their comments regarding this project. I think it's the wrong project for this, for this parcel. As Renee said, this will create an island and I don't think, I don't think it's the proper place for this. So I would ask you to consider these comments very seriously when you're talking about this project. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any other interested public? Well?
All right. In that case, we will close the public hearing at nine oh six. And we'll take up the questions and the answers and deliberation when we get to the item under new business. But that brings us to unfinished business. The listing in the SIO barn located in the northwest corner of Wagner and SIO Church Road. I believe we have here this evening both Chris Cheng and Patrick McCauley. Is Patrick on remotely?
Yes.
Yes, I believe Mr. McCauley is. Okay. To answer any questions from Reinhardt Realtors, so. Yeah, this, I will say that I did meet with Mr. Hollander. I think sometime this summer, we did review and inspected the barn. It definitely needs roof. It's got a hole. It is doing additional damage. We were looking at bids at that time. Those bids kind of fell through. At that time, you know, I explained that situation to our former township manager, Joyce Parker. But during that time, we also had found that there may be other residents, or at least a local resident, that was interested in the barn also for their use. So we took the next step to bring this forward to the board to see if this is something that you would like to do, like we did with, I believe, was the wild freight property that was out there on Liberty. To see if it's something that the township would like to sell, whether it's to the friends of SIO Township Barn or to other local, probably agricultural uses, I'm guessing, knowing that it can only be used for an agricultural type of use. So, you know, I did check into what the value of the barn is. I've also had discussions with Mr. McCauley from Reinhardt Realtors. It is kind of difficult to place a price on this barn because it's kind of a unique parcel that has a 1.5, 1.6 acre that can only be used for a barn and an agriculture set use. So there's not a lot of comparables around. So we decided maybe $100,000 is a bid, but that's just a starting point. And I think, you know, if we have other additional questions, you know, Mr. McCauley could probably answer more questions for Reinhardt.
Patrick, would you like to add?
Yeah, I think the, as Chris mentioned, the main issue, so if this were just a a vacant lot or a vacant or a lot with a barn on it that had, you know, basically unlimited, you know, residential uses or, you know, you could say you could build one house on it. It perked and all of that, you know, we could pretty easily come up with a value for the township. You know, it would probably be worth somewhere, you know, 175 to 200,000, something like that. But given the restrictions on the, on the property and I, and so I, I also have not been in the barn yet. So I mean, I drove by it the other day and stopped, but I didn't want to trespass without, because I know there's people renting the barn. You know, I don't know about how bad the condition is, so that obviously could affect the value. But, you know, what is a giant barn with limited use worth on the open market? And that's, that's really a tough thing to determine. My estimate, estimate was somewhere probably around 75 to $100,000 because it would just have to be somebody looking for something that had a very limited use like that for storage or agricultural use. Maybe a local farmer's interested in it. I'm not sure. So we can do a little more work on that. I just don't think we're going to find comparable sales that justify a price one way or the other on it.
Are there questions from the members of the board of trustees? Quick flip up.
Yeah, just a couple of things that came up in, in public comment I wanted to respond to. I know over the last year or so, we've looked at potential, because I've also asked, like, is there another use that the township could put this barn to? And I know that for utilities, it was found, you know, not fit to store vehicles or anything. You know, very informal conversation with our former parks director, but it was some months ago about, is there anything to do there? Because I thought it'd be, you know, cool, you know, for some sort of community space. What's tricky is getting off the road there, the driveway. There's no real safe way. Because I go by it every day and I always think, oh, that'd be like, you know, keep farmers market or something, right? But it's just so hard to actually access. So I do agree that there's no real kind of value for the township to use it functionally. I agree with Lee and Chris and everybody that it's a beautiful barn. And we want to keep it a barn. So even if we sell it, and I heard Lee say that the friends may be interested in making a bid. I do think putting it out, public bid, fair, transparent is the way to go. My question about this model motion that you've prepared, Chris, is it says to approve an agreement, subject to review by our attorney, to list for sale with the condition that the barn be used in compliance with the agricultural use restrictions in place when the property came under SIO Township's ownership. And with the understanding that the existing lease will be honored. I want to confirm a couple of things. That the condition that the barn be used in compliance with the agricultural use restrictions in place when the property came under SIO Township's ownership. What are those agricultural use restrictions?
Well, that's conservation easement that definitely was bought by the LTC, I believe, back in, I'm seeing a no, but I know there's, it's surrounded by conservation easements. Am I correct in stating that?
Yes, I think that.
Surrounded by.
Well, it, it was part of a larger parcel that was placed under a conservation easement. And the owners at the time did not want to continue owning and having responsibility for big barn. They offered to give it that parcel and the barn to the township so that they could be sort of free from that responsibility. be sort of free from that responsibility. The township accepted it. And my understanding from our township attorney is in that action, the conservation easement, that portion of the property changed somehow.
So generally, you don't have an easement on your own property. So the easement was the to the the easement on the larger property when it still included the barn was to the benefit of the township. When the township became the owner of that little piece of property, the easement, we sort of, we call it merging. So the easement just became part of the property. So it's not specifically under the restrictions, which is why the language that is in the model motion to me seems appropriate because it's referring back to the restrictions that were on the property when Siyo Township became the owner of the property.
Which at that point was under the conservation.
It was. And it, you know, I suppose we could be more specific to say the restrictions under the conservation easement or something along those lines. But
I just want us all to be clear on what restrictions are on it. So that would include keeping the barn in good upkeep?
I'm not sure that that is that that's part of it.
That's why I asked.
And that's that's a little bit tricky to say to somebody you have to keep this without it being a historic district. I feel like that might be a little.
Right. So this doesn't necessarily keep the barn standing.
Even a historic district doesn't require someone to take the upkeep. It just says if you do make changes or improvements, they have to meet.
Sure. You have to get approval though to remove.
Right, but.
Andrew might know better.
Well, I know the problem with historic properties sometimes is that the owners don't want that and they let it just decay.
Ah, yeah, yeah, I mean.
Will, there is in historic districts, there is a method for a legal action against a property owner for demolition by neglect. So
Okay, all right.
And I I believe that's probably the only real way to protect the barn if that is your goal. To either do a concert, an easement, historic easement through, I think MHPN does those or to make it a historic district.
So I I'm interested in in doing this if we can keep the barn standing. So it sounds like you suggested a couple of ways. We've already been through a historic district process. I don't know if there are any other ways.
If you're asking my opinion, if you want to keep the barn standing, you need to keep the property.
Yeah, but that's the way to keep the barn standing. Okay. I mean, I'm just trying to be clear on what the decision is. We're talking about selling the barn, but are we selling it to keep it?
So I I was just, would we be selling this in V? P simple, absolute? And if we sell it in V, then they get to do with it what they will, right? Unless we encumber it somehow.
Right. So the encumbrance, the proposed encumbrance right now is this previous conservation easement language. But that doesn't protect the barn. And I agree with Patrick, like the way you protect the barn is you have it be a historic district. And the township can do its own historic district. You don't have to go through the county like you did before, but you have to have a commission. It's, you know, it was pretty extensive. Especially for one, for one building on a very small piece of property. That seems like a lot of extra.
I have a question for Patrick. So we'd be selling a barn on a parcel that you have to keep that needs a twenty-four thousand dollar roof that you can't really easily get on and off the property because it's on a quarter. So aren't those are some significant hindrances to the market value, wouldn't you think?
I mean, that is the issue is, you know, there are limited uses for this barn. It's basically just an agricultural building.
Right. With no roof and no power.
Yeah, and if you.
And no floor. It's a dirt floor, no electricity, no water, no parking. You can't get there. So I mean, I guess I'm really not talking it up. But I'm acknowledging some of the yeah, yeah.
And also you should.
The limitations.
We just, I want to correct one thing. The twenty-four thousand dollar bid was found to be sort of inoperable. I mean, it was withdrawn by the the contractor and the, well, yes, the subsequent bids that our utilities director received were significantly higher.
Does this need a CO? Does this property?
The barn is
No, no one's living. Is this where we live in? There's no.
Nineteen thirty?
It's somewhere around there.
And.
Nineteen thirty?
An old historic barn? It doesn't have to be a certain age to become historic? You know, uh, no.
Fifty years or older is my understanding.
Okay.
Well, what I'm what I'm hearing, if and I I I'm mindful of the fact that we still have a long agenda. What I'm hearing is that there's interest among board members for keeping this barn as a barn as a landmark. I think the reason that we started going down this path of selling it was to because we recognized that the cost of replacing the roof was something that was, I guess, difficult for us to justify simply to have a landmark barn. But as Lee pointed out, you know, there is another option available that where if what we want to do is keep the barn intact, we could enter into some kind of an agreement with the group that's been maintaining the barn up to this point and can and continue to own the barn. So we could enter into another long-term lease with the understanding that the the friends of the Siyo barn would shoulder the cost, the full cost of replacing the roof.
Oh, and I want to suggest a third option too, which is because I I don't think there's enough public purpose for the township to continue owning this parcel. I just don't, I I haven't seen it yet. That said, I think it's a nice barn. It'd be good to maintain it. So I would like to see us preserve the barn and sell the property if we can do both, which is and I don't know if that requires the historic, the historic district. It seems like kind of an uphill climb to have that barn be considered a historic district, but seventy-nine, seventy West Liberty was found historic. So.
And then, so.
Can I make one suggestion? So another option would be a preservation easement on the property. There are some costs to that. The Michigan Historic Preservation Network, I believe, would hold the or so they somehow they monitor the property and hold the easement somehow. That that is an option that a lot of owners in Ann Arbor, I think Peter Hayden did that on his properties on West Washington and downtown Ann Arbor. I don't know what the MHPN charges for those. Last time I heard it was like eleven thousand dollars, but that is significantly easier than doing a historic district.
I don't have just an idea here.
No, because I'm going first. I was trying to speak.
Well, when trusted carry first.
Okay, so Patrick or Chris, whomever. So that that corner that is, if the barn isn't there, what could that parcel be used for? It wouldn't be buildable.
Yeah. It's got an underlying zoning. It's PUD. So it was part of a larger project out there until it was, I think, doing a little bit of background research. It was you know, it got developed, I think, to four or five houses back there and this got parceled off. But the underlying zoning is agriculture. So we'd have to look at the the zoning board and say, what's the underlying zoning from the PUD is ag? So it's going to be an ag type of use.
Okay, so if somebody purchased it, let's say they wouldn't necessarily, I mean, it seems like they would take care of the barn because there's nothing else that could be used except for plowing soy or something. They could put a house there. Put a house. Oh, they could.
Yeah.
Then you're going back to the exit entrance is pretty difficult.
It would be a very bad location for a house.
I doubt with setback.
Yeah, with a setback.
Yeah.
So this group has been taking care of this barn for twenty years. Is that right? These were questions. So these and these folks seem to really love this. And we like, as you said, it's a nice thing about Siyo. It looks good. It's kind of represents who we are. It seems to me, I mean, why would we want to cut these poor people short who, like I said, worked on this thing for twenty years? There's got to be some equitable way. And and maybe we do have to put it out in open market, like you said, to keep it transparent. Let the let the bidders win. And part of that could be that maybe we have to put this eleven thousand dollars of that money has to go to this preservation act or something to that effect. But give these folks a chance to get this barn in their hands so that they can take care of it because we shouldn't be in the barn maintenance business. It's not kind of our job.
I agree with you completely, Mark.
And do something like that. That way, everybody kind of wins. The barn folks win, Siyo Township wins. We get the preservation act. Everything's kind of in a jelly.
Would we have to put it on the market?
Maybe we should take some more time and and figure out this preservation issue.
Yeah.
Get some more information about the different options.
That's what I'm thinking. Is that something Chris and Mariah can look into, the preservation easement?
They got to even use Patrick as a little bit of guidance. But yeah, we could look into it.
Thank you.
Patrick, if we had proceeded to put this on the market, then we would be entering into an agreement with you where we would be, where where there would be a sort of a plan for your compensation for your work on this. And I realize that without that, we're sort of calling on you to put effort into this.
Do you live in Siyo?
You just not live in Siyo.
I think that we can probably figure it out with limited stress on.
All right. Well, let us let us know, of course, when you reach the point where the sort of fronting your advice and your counsel sort of crosses a line and you need some kind of compensation.
Realtors do all types of free work, so.
All right. Well, in in that case, I I don't think we need to take any action. We can just sort of delegate to the to the team to come back with a recommendation.
Thanks, Chris.
I really would like to see the people who have taken care of this barn really end up with this barn, whatever way we have to do it appropriately. You can't build a house on it. There's you keep talking value. I think the only value right now would be the acre in whatever of land if you were buying an acre. And what are you going to do with it?
Well, we got it for free anyways, right?
We did.
So they pay a lot of grand profit and they go put the roof on it. They're going to stick in, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars in this thing. And it's a nice icon, as you said, of Siyo Township. Siyo Township, that's that's what's wrong with that.
Right. I mean, we, you know, pay nominal insurance, things like that. It's not, I mean, there's there's reasons to get it back in private hands.
All right. Well, it sounds like we have a plan and we don't even have to take a vote, which is a plus. So let's move on. Thank you very much, Patrick and Chris and friends of Siyo Barn as well for everything that you've done all over the overall this committee here.
Well, thanks.
Well, yeah, I think they will. All right, that moves us along to new business. The first item of new business is the Crossroads Final PUD Site Plan. That's OA number two-two zero zero three dash PUD slash MSP number two-three zero one six slash COA number two-zero-two-four dash zero five. And this is the point at which the board will have an opportunity to ask questions. So assuming that some of those questions might be directed at people on the development team, you're welcome to come back up. But we also have our township planner and engineer available for the full set of account panel.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to talk about few issues tonight. We'll just take them one by one. And no, no particularity. I want I do want to touch on community benefits. I want to talk about REUs and the impact of doing this project on kind of accelerating the ten million dollar project we have in our capital plan that we raised our rates for. So that's something for Matt. And three, I want to talk about air quality. So I'll start with air quality. I want to thank you, Dan. It's been, I know it's been a long road. I just want to recap a little bit. When it, I don't know, was it twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, somewhere around where you came for the commercial development, which I was in support of.
If there's conversations in the audience, if you want to continue, please take them out into the hallway so that we don't have kind of conflicting voices. Please proceed.
Sure, sure. So beautiful design, all all the good things. When it was commercial office and I being very aware, it's across the asphalt plant. I do drive that way every morning and it does smell almost every single morning, except when the Cadillac asphalt. So I just think some of this like does it really smell or doesn't it smell? Like, let's just set that aside. Okay, I smell it every day. Other people smell it. Some people don't. What I'm I was comfortable with that because workers and people who are going to be there aren't there all day long. They have OSHA. They have other regulatory frameworks that actually protect them when they're in a workplace. Regulatory frameworks that don't exist for people when they're sleeping in their homes. So when it came back residential and it was two years ago and we were in this room, Dan and Will, this project had come together. Jim Murdy was here. You were here. Dan Kessler was here. And again, it was like, oh, this is coming back. It's suddenly residential. And I said, hey, what about the air quality? And we had a good conversation in here, Dan, with our planner, Doug Luon. And we talked it through. I think Joe was there too. And Doug Luon came up with a condition that I thought we all had clarity on, which and truly my sincere intention this whole time has been to say let's get enough information, this board, get enough information so that we know it would be safe for the people who are the future residents of that place to live there. Now, we we wrote that condition. Doug was satisfied with it. At the time, we hadn't had our attorney review it. I thought we were all in agreement on what we meant. Clearly, we weren't. We've since gotten a a letter from your attorney. Your attorney has given his opinion that there is no problem. And I get that, but it's been two years since you've been before this board. So I know you've been through a lot of other things, talking to our planner, talking to our planning commission, but I just want to acknowledge and maybe it's a flaw with our process. I think it is. But it has been two years since we've talked about this issue. I supported this preliminary PUD with the understanding that that condition would be met. In that interceding time, there's been back and forth about if it's been met, if it's been met or not or not. What I will say for me is the underlying information that I wanted, I do not yet have. And I am not satisfied that it would be safe for people to be there, living there without more information. I think it very well might be. It may not be, but just to say that it's not a problem and we've clearly noted that we did not test, you did not test for the VOCs and the particulate matter. And, you know, in retrospect, we should have sat down together and had a bunch of group meetings. I naively naively, truly thought it was being handled. It wasn't. You put in some good money to do some testing of what I would maintain were testing the wrong things. The right things. VOCs and particulate matter. My understanding is when it came to the planning commission and this was raised that you said in the planning commission meeting that you were not going to do more testing. I hope that has changed. Perhaps it has not. I would I met a and 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 I and the emails back and forth with the various agencies are not to my satisfaction either. What I would really like to see, because it really is on this board to ensure the health, safety and public welfare of township residents. We're being asked to do something extraordinary to rezone from industrial to residential. When is the last time we've done that? Ever? When is the last time we've put housing across from a major industrial facility? Ever? So I don't want to be that board in forty years that people look back at and say, what were they thinking? And so all we need is a little bit more information. Not opinions, but actual information. And it sounds like you've got a lot of good expertise. So but actual information. And it sounds like you've got a lot of good expertise. So I have a question, um, Per. You said that this housing development is regulated, by Eagle, MDHHS and County Health.
Yeah, like asphalt is, although you could say indirectly, everybody is who has an admissions profile. One of the statements you said before was there's no regulatory framework. And in fact, Rule nine oh one, which I think I cited to in some of my materials, it's a general nuisance, uh, stat, a rule that's enforced by our quality division. And anything disrupting public enjoyment of, you know, health, you know, they'll come out and investigate. They'll assess odors on a scale of one to five. If it's a three or higher, they'll assess you a notice of violation, notice, notice of violation.
Good question. County Health, what regulation do they have over the residential?
So the Department of Health, both at the state, it both, yeah, I know, um, let me finish. This is both the state and the county. I'm going to answer two questions with one. They come out and assess problems when there is a complaint. That's right.
And we're talking about Krista, the County Health Director.
I'm sorry.
Uh, environmental health, county, the county health.
Yep.
Great. Um, so I guess what I want to say is, you know, it's, it's regrettable. Because I remember finding out that y'all had done the testing like three months after it had been done. It had gone to Mark Thompson or Will or something. There's roundabout way. So, and we all acknowledged, and then there was the transition between Doug and Laura. We sat down and it sounds like the planning commission, you know, kicked the can to us to deal with this issue in their minutes. They clearly state, understanding that the board's going to figure out if the air quality testing is done or to people's satisfaction. So I was, a little disappointed, but understand why the planning commission, you know, kicked the can because we're the decision makers. And, and I have to say that I would be, you know, prepared to, you know, give the project a chance with, in partnership with us to just get this information, so that we can then move forward with a decision. Um, and I would have a proposed, um, motion and I'll just read it. Um, a proposed motion, um, to, I'm not making it right now, but I want to be clear just to read it to get the ideas out there. Proposed motion to table it. Um, the proposed rezoning from industrial to PUD residential until the township board, has received the information needed to prepare a report stating its conclusion, the language from our organs. To ensure the health, safety and welfare of future residents of a residential development in this location, the Board of Trustees requires the following information regarding air quality. One, the applicant complete the appropriate air quality testing and monitoring, in multiple locations over the appropriate length of time on the site, prior to the seasonal closing of the adjacent asphalt plant. The testing shall include testing for fine inhalable partic- particles, particulate matter two point five, so the small ones. And asphalt volatile organic chemicals, VOCs. Those VOCs commonly emitted by asphalt plants. Two, the complete results of all air quality testing shall be provided to the township. The township shall have appropriate outside agencies, including the Washtenaw County Health Department, which is the agency that's responsible for ensuring air quality, review the testing results and provide a written opinion or opinions, of the air quality and objectionable odors and its impact on human health of persons living in a residential development in that location. That is the piece we've never gotten, is an, is the right data with an expert in human health evaluating it and giving us that opinion. And last, that the results and written opinions be provided as part of the final PUD, review process and considered as a part of final consideration by the township. And that is, I think, more clear, I would hope, for the applicant to consider. Um, I kept hearing there wasn't clear enough direction. And then, you know, every, person we turned to to find out the littlest bit about it says, well, particulate matter and VOCs is the thing to test for. Is the thing that wasn't tested for is the thing at minimum we should be testing.
I can address some of that if that would be helpful.
Sure.
This, this kind of after the fact criticism that the scope of the study wasn't right. But, and I wasn't around it this time, but I haven't found anything suggesting what, I mean, it's no one, no one said, you know, urban crossroads, we want you to test for particulate and VOCs. It was test for air quality, which was so much nebulous, which I think we agree on.
Sure. And I didn't know we had to be so prescriptive because I thought we kind of understood.
So, so there are no, I mean, you, there are a lot of different pollutants you could monitor for. Uh, I think at the time, odors was one of the main concerns and that would be the reason you test for SO2. Sulfur is often identified with being an odorous, you know, compound, whether it's SO2 or H2S. Sulfur is the stinky one. That's the rotten egg smell you sometimes get. That can be an issue at asphalt plants. Um, because of the odor, you know, I would say, you, you don't, PM two point five is not an odor issue. VOCs can be, maybe not. I mean, there are literally hundreds of VOCs. So just saying, well, you should have tested for VOCs. Well, know which ones. I can tell you, there's a dozen different testing methods and the government can't figure out which one to apply, in any set, set of circumstances. And that's when you're testing at a stack. Not, not an ambient monitor. So, uh, you know, they don't even have monitors for VOCs at the state level. They, they, they look for ozone because VOC is a precursor to ozone. So, it would take a lot to figure out what exactly you need to test for, I suppose. You say appropriate. I don't think you're going to find consensus on what are the VOCs you're testing for, what's the method you're testing for. There's a lot of back and forth on what is the right way to do it. And usually it's when you're measuring it right at a point source of stack. It's not an ambient monitor. Ambient monitoring, you look at ozone, which VOC is a precursor for.
Who, who is it responsible for these things? Am I responsible for this?
Well, that, that is the interesting part. I will say that my time in front of planning commissions is generally when you're trying to build an asphalt plant, bring that there. It's a little bit interesting to have, um, a com, I mean, I can, I can understand the motivation here is you want to protect the citizens of Scioto Township. It isn't just your job to do that though. I mean, the township has police powers, it does have zoning powers. You do have responsibility, obviously. But it is the job, it is the duty of the state Department of Health and the county Department of Health to evaluate health concerns like this. And there have been plenty of examples where this has been done, downtown Detroit, Flint, Kalamazoo. There's plenty of places where you've looked at. They've had the health department leading the study of the issue.
When the, when, sorry, but when the housing already exists and the asphalt plant is being proposed? Does that apply to those scenarios?
Well, those were times where they were looking at a facility and whether that facility was impacting the people nearby. So.
Absolutely. And, and this is unique because we have a facility and this board is being asked to change our zoning, to place.
Well, it's the same principle. You're looking at the air quality nearby. I mean, in this case, we're talking about upwind, right? I think we all understand that we have southwest prevailing winds here. Sure, the wind moves around, but it's southwest prevailing winds. This is actually upwind. Whereas the house is downwind.
Truly, guys, truly, like, there is time, I would have for two years have wanted to, engage about what this should look like. We can do this. This, it, it's not, you know, this like, like arguing, we're done, we're done. I'm being absolutely sincere when I tell you, that I just want to know that the people are going to be safe living there. We don't have the information we need. We can talk. It sounds like you've got a lot of good knowledge and I'm happy to hear it. Certainly, you know, specific VOCs and things, we can work with the health department and come up with exactly what that is. But this like back and forth of like, no, we're done, we're good. I'm telling you, I'm not good. And, and, and it sickens me that we would make a decision when the, county health, DHHS and Eagle have all said, you haven't tested for, VOCs and particulate matter. And it, it seems a pretty, um, simple, straightforward thing to do. And then to have our experts.
I mean, for a term here.
Okay, um, I have a series of questions and most of them are related to the environmental issues, but not all. Um, I just want to make a comment to, um, I live fairly close to the asphalt plant in the Uplands subdivision. I am a prior member at Liberty Athletic Club for more than twenty years. And intermittent asphalt odors are common in that area. They're common at Liberty Athletic Club and they're common in the Uplands area, but it's intermittent. And it is variable depending on the season, the winds, the weather, but they're there some of the time. So here, one of my questions relates to, what is the current standard for state inspection? Is it just a complaint-driven inspection?
No, and so there's, 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 you've got to remember, there's multiple layers here. The, the county health department does inspect it, does get reports. The state of Michigan Health Department isn't going to inspect it without a complaint. Air Quality Division is going to periodically inspect. And I think that's evidenced by you have, I think, four complaints in the last, or four, it's, so four site inspections in the last roughly seven, eight years. So every other year, roughly, they're going to be there no matter what. I will tell you from experience.
Air Quality Division?
Sorry, Air Quality Division. Okay, so that's a subdivision, that's the subdivision of Eagle. And I'm sorry, I live in a world of acronyms, but, uh, Department of Environmental Quality rebranded, uh, to the Department of, uh, Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, which I call Eagle. But the subdivision of Eagle that we're most concerned with here is Air Quality Division. An Air Quality Division will come out there roughly every other year without any complaints. If there are complaints, they will come more frequently. And if there's an odor complaint, they will usually come out and check within a day. Because as, as, as it stands to reason, right, if, if you have an odor complaint, you need to get out there at that time, right? Because the wind's going to change, the operation may shut down, things, you know, you, you can't come out and make that assessment. Where does it fall on the scale between one and five? So, I mean, the fact that there have been no odor complaints, I don't read that to say asphalt doesn't smell because asphalt does have a smell. I mean, asphalt smells. I'm not suggesting that there's an absence of smell. What, what I'm impressed by is the fact that you have so few odor complaints. I heard somebody say, well, that could be a fact that people don't know that it's there. I, I'll allow for that, but I will say that, generally speaking, when you look, when you FOIA a file for an asphalt plant, you find odor complaints and not just one or two, but like, anywhere from dozens to hundreds. So the fact that there aren't any, there was the one in twenty fourteen, that, that is, that's noteworthy.
You did a FOIA research.
Right.
I know, I, I'm trying to get back to you, Trustee. No, I know you have a list of questions. I would like to keep working through that list.
Um, if you were to give specific recommendations for studies, that might be done to deal with the issues of VOCs and particulate matter, what would you recommend? What studies would you recommend in case we want to use those studies here now?
So it's a challenging question because, I mean, I'll, I'll tell you right now, uh, Wayne County is the place that has PM two point five problems. Uh, the standard was just revised, nine micrograms. You know, they've got sites that are like twelve. Washtenaw County, when you factor in, you know, wildfire events and things like that, it's an attainment and it's going to be an attainment. When the state makes its recommendations, I expect it will be attainment. Uh, the only areas in the state that are really suffering from PM two point five right now, Kent County, which might not be, doesn't be, might stay attainment because of exceptional events, the wildfires we all saw last year. Kalamazoo County is going to be designated non-attainment and Wayne County is. In Wayne County, they're talking about that exact same kind of question is how do we evaluate? Not only like the sources, you know, is there an impact on people, but, the reason these standards are so important is they're the national ambient air quality standards. They're set by EPA. They protect human health and the environment, the reasonable adequate margin of safety. And there's a monitoring network, an official one. There's also the unofficial one you can do through, you know, Purple Air and Just Air and the like. Um, but, but the thing is, if you're going to design a study to say, when is the upwind area impacted? Even if you have a monitor out there like twenty-four, seven for a whole year, you may only have those winds lining up there a few times. Um, now, and then, then when you're monitoring it, you know, are you talking about a twenty-four hour average? Are you talking about the annual average? Because the risk assessments depend on what kind of, uh, what kind of exposure you're talking about. You have one hour doses, you have twenty-four hour doses, you have annual doses. There, there are different epidemiological studies linked to those different exposures. So it's a very complicated question and I am way too stupid to tell you how you would actually design that study.
Let me, let me keep going.
Trustee Noel, Trustee Noel has the floor.
Your question.
Trustee Noel has the floor.
I know, it's helpful. Okay. The, the CDC and, and epidemiologists, have answered that question.
Okay.
It's not so much a, a, a legal question.
Well, I didn't think it was a legal question.
Yeah.
Well, it's being litigated, but yes, it.
Okay, um, so with basic environmental studies that are done, at, so let's just say potentially contaminated sites. Environmental assessments are done that include these VOCs all the time.
Usually you're talking about the aqueous phase, though. You're talking about groundwater or saturated soils. VOCs don't tend to, you know, hang in the air, even particulate, right? It's up and then it settles. So, when you see an environmental site assessment, you're generally talking about, uh, conditions under the ground.
I just want to point out the township bought the property to our south. It did an environmental report. They had no problems with it. They were going to put, they have, you have ten acres that you own right now, that you're going to put a fire station on it, right across from this place. Okay? And you don't have any problem doing that. That's acceptable. And people are going to live at the fire station.
Well, we have the Galvin contamination site very, very close.
I'd like to keep this, keep some sort of order to this. Trustee Noel, please work through your questions.
So at the planning commission level, there were conditions attached to their, most recent, um, approval. And it did say that the developer was to address all issues of public health, safety and welfare. And it does sound like we've raised some potential issues of public health, safety and welfare. And I guess I'm trying to figure out, how do we quantitate that? How do we figure out how to do that within a reasonable period of time? When do asphalt plants close in the winter?
Usually like October to March. Depends on the weather. It's obviously warmer longer these days than it used to be.
Okay, okay, um.
Well, I, I don't want to mislead you either. I'm not an epidemiologist. I don't work for a health department, you know. I think, you know, when you're talking about who should we be looking to? I think it is the Wayne County, I'm sorry, I keep saying Wayne. Sorry, I live and deal with Wayne County issues all the time. The Washtenaw County Health Department said, you know, we rely on our state partners for the expertise in these matters. State inspector is the one that said, look, I don't see anything here. So.
But if not, we did our studies and then gave the new data to these state inspectors, who are knowledgeable about this area. They could give us feedback on the new information.
Sure. I mean, you give data to them, they'll, they'll look at it. I mean, I guess.
They said they would.
Sure. Well, they, they, they serve the public, they have to evaluate risks. They're going to look at data. Now, are you going to enlist them at the, at the front end to say, okay, what should I test for? What's my timeframe? What's my budget? You know, I, I think, you know.
See, it sounds like we need to. It sounds like that's where we missed.
Trustee Noel, are you finished with your questions?
I had some, I did have one other question unrelated. Oh, no. It was the contamination and onsite, um, infiltration tanks. So it's really, a question for Matt about these underground collection systems, infiltration beds. Kathleen raised an issue about dog excrement. And, is it, is there anything to that issue?
Um, for that, for citing, I probably would rely on Joe just to explain, but I would assume there's a barrier. A lot of the infiltration beds are, you know, over land flow, but I believe this area in particular is, is piped in and then infiltrated. Um, you know, just like any area or any neighborhood or whatever, um, or any dog area. I mean, I'm, I'm sure there's sanitation and bagging. That needs to happen. I mean, your, your dog goes, you pick it up, um, you know. So I, I guess I'm interested as much as Kathleen was, um, on, on, on the barrier. Um, the detail wasn't in the plans on the precise dog park. And if there was like, an, a mat or some kind of barrier separation, but in terms of just plain old infi- In terms of just plain old infiltration, it's true, the whole site infiltrates, it's the best management practice, it's well designed and thought out, I touch. Shannon did a really nice job on it, but go.
The water going into these holding tanks would then seep into the ground.
Correct.
It doesn't some of it drain out to the university drain system?
U of M drain?
Yeah, U of M drain.
I think, but there's a si- large significant area that's all infiltration, period.
Joe, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I can give you a, a good background of the system here, um, the area where this dog park is, is actually owned by Nye Funeral Home. Um, that infiltration system, which is two feet of sand that is located nine feet below grade. So we've got nine feet of soil above this infiltration bed. It's designed to infiltrate a hundred percent of the rainwater, that actually falls on Nye's property. Uh, so we're actually taking the stormwater from their property and infiltrating it on this parcel of land. It's only going to overflow to the drain that runs through the property. If we were to receive, say, for example, two hundred year back-to-back storm events, system's only designed for a hundred year system. And if you, if you think about it, a, a septic field is actually designed between one and a half to two feet below grade. With two feet of sand and stone, or to filter human waste. So with us having nine feet of soil between where the dogs are gonna be and the infiltration bed, I see no reason that we'd have any type of issues. That dog urine basis going down into the system.
So this is a true retention system, the only thing that's going to the, the drain is overflow, like Joe said, so. With retention, you, with detention, where there's a controlled outlet, you have to can, uh, design for the one hundred year event, with retention, it's back-to-back hundred year events. So this is what we want in Syo, we want, we want to encourage infiltration, we want to encourage retention as much as possible, it's. Best management practice, it's something that Washtenaw County encourages and the Syo Township Engineering Standards encourage.
Just to conclude, um. I will be supporting Jessica's suggestion. That we table this and get more information. And then I'm prepared to fully support it. With adequate information that it's safe. Okay.
Other members of the board of trustees who have not yet spoken.
I have.
Sure.
I live on a limestone road. Bet some of you out there live on them too. In the winter, with everything closed, and we have good storm windows, good storm doors, and I don't leave them open just cause. I can wipe off. And I noticed it um when I was wiping up. The bathroom counter, the back of the toilet, I'm looking at this clock. And I had limestone dust. Now you're talking about. Periodic. Uh, particulate. That is every day twenty-four hours, seven days a week. Where you live. That's right, and it's, it isn't, it doesn't just stay inside a road, it, it'll travel. So I, we're all breathing particulate matter, I'm not saying it's a good thing. But we are.
Well, we are really going in order.
I have, I have questions too, but I.
Sure, do you want to start?
I have a question about the park. So, and like, the density of the housing and uh. Man, I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
Shannon Gerandal.
Shannon, I'm sorry, Shannon, so, um. Is there sufficient parking and the, the density of the housing and the affordable housing, I wanted to talk, talk about. About. So, so. Some thoughts about the parking, whether that's gonna be sufficient, because it's gonna be one point seven five per unit, and are three people gonna be in a unit with three cars, and then what, are they gonna be parking on? You know, where they were.
Asphalt plant.
Yeah, yeah. So, and talk about the parking. Whether, I, I don't know that, maybe that's not you, maybe that's. Joe, you know.
Well, I can give you an overview, the, the idea of this project was connectivity, that's part of the public benefit, is the sidewalk to Ann Arbor. Sidewalk towards uh the north, uh, which connects to the park and U of M Park and the church and. Um, get all the way down to Jackson Ave. Um, we also have a significant amount of bike parking in this project. Uh, we've got, and I forgot how many now.
Twenty, twenty-five at each of the podium buildings that are bike racks.
Biker.
Biker, that's right.
Yeah, secured parking, and then throughout the site.
And then, and then about the, the, I guess. The, the, the homes. The, the homes, the townhomes near Menards are anticipated to be in the mid four hundreds. And the Kensington, which is right next to a freeway, are well over five hundred, and I guess, do you have a. How affordable this housing be, and is there other plans to maybe try to get some of it actually affordable housing, what, what's your thought, what are your thoughts in that regard?
Yeah, these are rentals, so they're not for sale. And they're all rentals, and uh the size is, is what was presented before. Um, we are actually going through a process with the county right now, as far as a, a uh. The governor that last year passed a, a act which has to do with trying to. Directing to what Shannon was talking about, because that there, there's enough supply, so how do you create supply? So they've created a program that would just do that, and one of the parts of that program. It is, allows you to do less than market rate housing. So we are going through that program with the county right now, in fact, it's in one of their subcommittees.
For another project or this one?
This one. This one, and so, but we're not, we're not there yet, well, we won't be there probably for another couple of weeks. With the county saying, yes, this is acceptable, this works, we will prove it, or we will take it to the county. They have some, it's like, it's like the brownfield. It's using the brownfield situation, but it's using it for housing.
So it's a tip supported or law?
Eventually.
And that's, so we're going through that program right now with Nathan Vogt and his group at the county, and it's in their subcommittee at this time. And it should be out of the subcommittee within the next week and a half, two weeks. So. Um, if that comes through, we'll, we'll do. Uh, uh, third, twenty percent of the units will be at, at below market rate, eighty percent AMI, which is, which is, uh. Which is a workforce housing for people.
So, I, I, I. First one off makes a great point about now's the time to get this right with respect to the. I don't know, voters themselves are pretty bad, or the VOCs, or any unsafe components, so. If this comes in, if this gets voted, and then there are problems, and there's all kinds of complaints, and what can the state do to rectify, regulate? Mediate, you know, I, I appreciate that you don't. Regulate or enforce the, the business across the street, but it's gonna be your residents that are gonna be PO'd. About the smells and about the potential health effects to them, so what, I guess, council, what? What does the state do to address those?
So there are examples.
There's probably gonna be complaints.
There could be, I, I don't know, I mean, again, we're talking about upwind, remember too, so.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, while you and while that, whatever, the, the, the condos to the east are more likely to impact this, but, but.
Also, we're also sitting down just for a minute, we're sitting down in a little valley. We're, we're eighty feet below Wagner Road. What was it? No, it's thirty feet, I guess, thirty feet, excuse me, I'm sorry, but there's a, there's a level. And you don't, it, it's, yeah, but anyway, go ahead.
So you, there are plenty of examples where if you started getting odor complaints, the state comes out, documents it. They're gonna require the, they're, they're gonna find you first off, and they're gonna require you to come up with. At a minimum, a nuisance minimization plan for odors, possibly something more robust than what's already there, they will also force a re-permitting. You can have any level of enforcement, whether it's an administrative settlement, court settlement, and they will force there to be controls. One example I can give is downtown Detroit, when there were odors, it took a while, but they finally got a regenerative thermal oxidizer, a control device on the process all the emissions through to try and deal with it, so. State has, it's not just the state, the state has enforcement authority, uh, EPA also has enforcement authority, they generally defer on orders to the state, but if there are odor complaints, and again. We've had one in ten years ago, if you had three or four people complain the same day, I guarantee you that inspector's gonna be out there within twenty-four hours.
Is that Eagle ADQ?
Yes, oh, Eagle, yeah, AQD is the subset of Eagle.
John, could I just point something out, though, that, that troubles me about this framework is not just the complaint based part. That is imperfect, particularly with renters, particularly with um people who have housing that they need, but that the complaints. Go to the state to regulate an asphalt, I mean, we don't have power over Cadillac either, they, they don't either. And we are putting future residents in the position of having to add.
Trustee Reiser has the floor.
No, I, I appreciate, I appreciate your points, um.
Yeah, but there is a police, there's a fining power, they can shut them down if they don't like, I mean, if, if, if they continue to oper- if they operate. And they don't comply with the law, they can be shut down.
What's Purple Air, and what's that monitor?
So there are a number, so Just Air is one, Purple Air is another. What you can do is any of us could pay to have a monitor put somewhere, and then it generates data, there's a maintenance cost with it, you need to cite it correctly. Uh, but it generates data for you, it's not official data from the state standpoint, but they will sometimes rely on it to say, okay, I. I'm seeing Purple Air or Just Air monitor values this high, I'm gonna go out there with an official monitor and take data and see if there's an issue.
Would it be reasonable to require one of those placed in the, in the center of your, of development?
I think that's the kind of thing that, I mean, you've talked about it in the past, I, I know there were some conversations, I don't think putting in a Purple Air monitor or a Just Air monitor is a problem. I mean, I think what you've seen in a lot of cities is they actually will then. Let citizens subscribe to it, I get Purple Air monitors not for where I li- I get them for where I live. And other uh lo- uh locations in Wayne County where I know there's air issues, I kind of track that, because I'm an air dork. But I get the text messages saying your air quality is moderate, it's severe, you know, based on what that is, so. It does give people a little bit more information, almost like an ozone action day. Hey, it's maybe not the best day to go out mow your lawn, it may not be the best day to go out paint, or it may not be the best day to be out running around if you've got asthma, that kind of thing, so it is data in real time.
Or the best day to live there. I'm just saying, the problem with the data is. These, this is a residence of people, and it's, and, and when I, what, what if, what if the data comes back good, what if the data comes back bad? What are we gonna do with it, John? That's my concern about.
States can shut it down, the states can shut it down, if it gets bad, the state can shut it down.
So I, I guess, so I guess, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of torn on this one, because of the, because of the smell and the, 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 the testing, but I also know that. There's housing needed, and I, so, I, I'm more in the middle of this one, I, I, with respect to the Purple Air monitoring, I, I, you know, I. What a Purple Air monitoring with the data shared with, with the residents and the township, and, and, and the, the, and the local help or ADQ, is that some, I mean. I, I, I'm trying to. You know, protect the public, and then to timely alert ADQ that something's wrong, and they need to, to jump on it, so.
So Purple Air and Just Air both are real aggressive on getting out, they, they've actually done it in Dearborn and Wayne County, where they work with that city health departments in those cases. And set up networks, and then citizens can log in and have that real time data, and then make as informed decision as possible.
We, we have a quote from Just Air. For parameter sample, for, for sampling.
Is this monitoring?
Yeah, this is after the fact.
It's one of these monitors, Just Air and Purple Air both.
Twenty-four, seven?
Yeah.
And it, and it's, and it goes into a public, as he said, goes into a public si- system, so that anyone has access to it.
It can be made public, you basically just get the app, and then you're checking the data, you, you could go home right now and look up the air, probably anywhere in the state. You know, you know, south, southern, you'd have more density, but see what the air quality is, and sometimes you'll see monitors where they don't agree, but you'll generally see trends where. Something's going on over there, or it's higher here, you know.
But why not just do the testing now?
I worry that the balls, well, uh, you're not asking me.
I'm asking, I'm, I'm, I'm sincerely asking, because I was, I was, I was surprised at the planning commission to hear that. I mean, I mean, truly, why not test for the VOCs in the particulate matter that the agencies. Who are expert in this and human health, nobody in this room is. Said to test for, so I'm just asking, Dan, like, why?
Let's be fair, they said it wasn't indicative, you can't test for CO and get data for, for particulate, I think that's what they said, is if you wanted to test for VOCs in particulate. You would design a different study.
Great to have a work group come up exactly what it should look like, but this is, what, what I'm saying is, those were emails back and forth to try to find out. You know, what should be tested, now, again, I'm just asking for some cooperation to test for the proper things, had it go to. An expert to determine, and, and the resistance to testing honestly concerns me.
Well, I guess my question to you would be, are you, are you aware of this happening on a prospective basis, I, I see the health departments. County and state focusing on areas where there's a concern. To say, I want you to monitor where there are no complaints, and tell us, design a study where there might be an issue. And now what's your, what's your study gonna look like, is it gonna be five years, be two years, be one year? Are you gonna test for which of the couple hundred VOCs? And you've got a PM two point five monitor nearby, they do look at that, both the unofficial data as well as the official, again. The experts you've consulted have told you, I'm not recommending you do anything, I'll look at what you give me.
And that's, that's not what they said, and again, this chain of emails, this is when I said, when I was naive.
Proposing any additional steps on our side.
Thank you, developer's attorney, I want to say, I was sincere when I said, I was naive two years ago, when I sat down. And thought that we were working this out.
Jessica, let's give other people on the board a turn.
So, so, no, truly, because.
We're hearing the same thing again.
Yeah, but one, one, it's, I just want to say, I want to test right things, just throwing up these barriers that it can't be done, how could we ever figure it out? I don't buy it, we can figure it out, get the right stuff tested, have experts in human health.
This gentleman has gone to the Freedom of Information Act.
Yeah, and I don't care how shiny Cadillac asphalt is, I don't care how perfect.
Something right there.
Asphalt, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm asking for you to work with us. And, and we have narrowed it down to the VOCs and the particulate matter, you don't have to look very far, you don't go past the EPA website, the CDC website to say. That is what asphalt plants emit, those are the things that cause asthma, cause chronic disease, the list goes on.
Trustee Reiser, do you have more questions?
Well, we, not everybody's had a chance.
Well, I'm going back to the person who had the floor.
Thank you, and do not.
All right, Gillian, you may have a turn.
Sorry, I'm, your name. Um, you said that the county health visits the asphalt plant.
Yeah, they, they do something else, though, they don't focus on air, they focus on, I think, uh, water and waste compliance. But there, our FOIA did uncover some files, it didn't relate to air, there were no complaints, so we didn't really give them much, but I can certainly produce them if you'd want to see them.
How often, did you say they visit?
I think there was annual reports, I, I honestly, because it didn't relate to air, I didn't even look at it, we, we, we gave a broad request for any kind of complaints. Related to, uh, you know, air or, or health issues, and what they produced was, here's, here's the back and forth we have with Cadillac asphalt, so.
So with their, um, you don't know what the, you didn't read their reports.
They, they, they don't inspect for air quality or compliance with the air permit issued by the state.
Yes, I understand that, but if there, if there's other red flags there regarding.
Oh, yeah, mismanaging waste or water.
Ever, then that could be an indication that there's.
Sure, sure.
So that's what I was wondering, um. Yeah, so you are aware of the gallon plume. And at one time, DEQ state said, oh, that's okay, and we're dealing with this still to this day, and it's been decades. So we're very hypersensitive about our environment and making sure that our residents are safe, and that is our number one priority. So we're very hypersensitive about our environment and making sure that our residents are safe, and that is our number one priority. So I I am in agreement about this testing, however it happens. Um, I don't want to see another. Long-term issue. There may not be, but we need to make that, make sure that there isn't. Um, and also, I'm thinking about the people that would live there because looking through the plans, it looks like a nice place. Inside and out. And they are going to be paying a lot of money, even though it's for rent, so I'm assuming they're going to be transitional. Probably graduate students or maybe young families that need a bigger place later on, something like that, but. For them to have the burden of if. We don't do our due diligence and let's say there is a problem, but for those young families or those single students or whatever. Have the burden of having to live with that and then complaining, which is going to come back to us. Um, and that's what will happen first. It's going to come to us and then to the other levels of government. We don't need to have another issue. So I I just feel that to be. It's better to take care of this issue now, to look into it than to just push it down the road and then. There may not, again, be issues, but there could be. It's just a safeguard. Another um thing I wanted to, and this is isn't as, um, it's not even close to being as serious as the um. The potential issues with the air quality. There's a pickleball court. And are you aware that there's across the nation, there's lawsuits about pickleball courts because of the noise and the neighbors? So there's. I, yeah, I don't know who whose idea that was, but there again, I don't want to be dealing with that. The dog park, is that enclosed? It is, okay. We have to cover that, of course. And there was other things too, but, oh, yeah, because I have little tabs here, so. Do I get as long as everybody else?
You get to ask, ask your questions.
And they may have been covered, um. Yeah, I noticed there was something about food truck parking, but then those, that's not going to happen. The food truck parking, because I couldn't understand that, but um, how many, how, for a single unit, which is um, a studio? Is that, or the smallest unit is a studio, like five hundred and eighty-five square foot or something? How much do those go for? You know at this point?
We have ranges. I don't have it on me. I just bring it along.
Okay, um. Okay, let's see, um, and how many? So there's so many so studios, then there's the two-story or the two-bedroom, single two-bedroom. And then there's the different units.
Studios, there's one bedrooms, two bedrooms, so that's all.
How many um potential residents?
Well, there's two, there's two hundred and twelve units and you figure the studio would be one, the one bedrooms would be either one or two. The two bedrooms could be as much as two or three.
So the population for that neighborhood?
About four hundred, maybe, three hundred people, three hundred fifty.
Okay, and then the parking, it's only one point seven five per unit.
We broke it down. What's going on in the country right now is trying to get people out of their cars. I mean, Ann Arbor's even gone to not requiring parking. Because they're trying to get people. So what we tried to do is create the pathways. And 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 also busing as well as bikes. But at what, we did the numbers and we, as far as for our marketing people, and that's sufficient. For what we anticipate as far as the car usage. And I could show you the analysis. It was in one of the things we did. I I didn't bring it with me today.
Yeah, I understand about the the national trend. Um, however, that isn't, that's an area they could. Bike up to Kroger a couple of miles away. There's really not the. You know, if there's like on Jackson Road, there's more, and even then, it's sparse. That's what.
Saw Laura's letter.
You have the number, David.
Okay, so then we're going to have on the agenda.
I see, there's, there's a. Seventy-six two bedrooms, under twelve one bedrooms, twenty-four small ones. I don't decipher it very well, sorry. I I didn't bring that with me.
Okay, I think that's it for right now.
All right, so I want, the reason I want to go last, I just want to hear everybody's input, right, on on. I want to hear that I think some of the residents here. So I'm going to do this in. Particular order, I'm going to save the air quality thing to the very, very end, give you my my logic tree on that one. So I, you know, a one-bedroom apartment, I I or a studio, I guess you could argue is a lower-cost. Unit, it does make it more affordable to some people, whether these are expensive, one, one-bedroom units or lower-cost one-bedrooms, we don't know. Uh I'm just going to assume they're probably on the higher end. I guess we could argue whether that's, that's what we're talking about. Somebody mentioned about the height of four stories. I'm assuming that's roughly forty feet. My house is thirty-six feet tall, so I don't know that that height is all that dramatic. I think it's somewhat the same height. You know, when you go to Target and those apartments are there by Target, they look quite nice. I think those are four stories, so I don't think that's a, that's an issue. I heard some about the island. Well, I guess you could argue that every neighborhood is an island. My neighborhood would be an island. I live in Saginaw Hills. Um, one nice thing about this neighborhood is that they're going to build some sidewalks, I believe, that are going to be connective tissue to. To to the large, to Target and to other neighborhoods, so that's, I wish the name, aside, would go the other direction, that'd be, that'd be kind of sweet.
Yeah, more towards Ann Arbor.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Right, yeah, yeah. That's why I wish it went the other direction. It's not, um, you know, they talked about industrial, I mean. Mark Smith's got industrial property. We're all buying industrial property now, so I I, those issues didn't, didn't really. I, you know, come into my calculus. I I think what I'm hearing here is there's concern. For the air quality and that's a legitimate, legitimate concern. However, I think the logic is flawed. On where that concern should be pushed. And let me walk you through what I'm thinking and why I'm thinking that. So kind of to your point, the the winds, the winds are definitely prevail west, right? And I can tell you, because I, you guys know I'm a serious biker, I have to go against those damn winds all the time. So I know what direction they're going. It's very rare and a happy day for me. When they go in the other way. So the the, really, the concern lies really with your neighborhood. Right? I mean, I'm just going to be, you know, and you're right, I've I've smelled it when I've been over, I've been like you, I've been a resident of of Liberty Athletic Club. Thirty years, I have smelled that. What I do smell on occasion on my neighbor is the cows. Which poor Mr. Dries must suffer really bad. I know you guys feel terrible about that. Uh, must really suffer from those, from those, the cow smell. Uh, so that, that's where I think the, it 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 falls. It's not so much about. The air quality and and impact in this neighborhood. I think that's going to be a rarity. As he said, it's probably two or three days a year. It's pretty rare when those winds go the other way. It's really the impact of those to your neighborhood or all the people that are downwind of 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 that, and they've been living it for a long time, and I don't mean to. I mean, to stretch out. But I mean, that, that's, I think the real, the question mark. So should some, some, should air monitoring quality be done for the um. Plant? Sure, absolutely, but I think it should be done in the, I don't think it's so much. German to this particular subdivision. I think it's german to all the subdivisions that are, that are downwind of that subdivision. Yes, yeah, hundred percent. Um. That's kind of how I see this. I mean, kind of your point too, the fire, the fire station's going to have to live with it too, but. Again, I think it's, it's, it's a pretty rare occurrence when, I've never smelled that, that, that plant ever in my. And I've been living there for thirty-some years ever. Cows I do every now and then.
You're not across the street from the asphalt plant. You're way down the road and behind the.
Yes, but I'm about as far a distance as she is, I think.
And there's hills, there's lots of hills too, and then your neighborhood's behind the hills.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I go down. That's the hill goes up and comes back down. So you look at the way the wind would travel, wind would travel around that, go, go up that hill and go right down into me. I'm kind of down at the bottom of the routine, of the routine. But the point I make is the wind never goes that direction to begin with. It goes.
I've smelled it.
Three hundred, I'm not saying the plant doesn't smell. I'm not disagreeing with that at all. Like I said, I think the concern that you have is hundred percent warranted. I I, but I think the, where the liability or the, the the impact to residents lies is downwind. Not so much upwind. That's the part we should be concerned about. I just, we're focused on the wrong area of concern. It's not this subdivision. It should be all the subdivisions downwind, but then we should really.
Don't have any data on that so much.
Can I speak to that? I think that's not true.
I mean, on that, on that, what, what you're.
There's, there's over a hundred asphalt plants in the state of Michigan that have an air permit, over a hundred, and there are thousands.
I hear from Kurt, I I guess, I'll switch my team. I just know how the wind flows. I'm just describing, I I know, I I know for. Mike can only choose the direction of that damn wind, man, because I hate it. So that, that I can speak to for sure. And that, that's the point I make is I don't think it's. The impact of what's going to happen to this particular, the group of folks that would reside potentially in this um. This neighborhood, but it would be more impactful and maybe a study should be done, if one hasn't already been done, for the folks in your neighborhood and. What other neighborhoods are in that.
Well, there are some purple monitors that are mentioned in the materials in the other direction.
In at least getting some of the baseline information.
I can speak to that. Let's, let's let Mark finish, then hear Kurt, your, your answer, and then I would like a turn.
Yeah, okay, we got to keep it.
I guess I'm managing the board, the discussion, that's my job. So please, Mark, go finish your.
I I will finish it. Again, I guess, and I think the concern is legitimate. I think that the logic is flawed in terms of having these folks do something I think is frankly unnecessary. Because it's, it's not, if if there's, if there's a challenge there, the challenge is way more impactful, like by a factor of a two hundred to one. Because the winds, the direction of the winds, two hundred to one, on the down, the downward neighborhoods versus this neighborhood. So therefore, I don't think it's, 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 it's. It's a moment.
Better be safe than sorry.
Well, you can say that about everything. You can, you can make that argument about literally every single thing we do.
So Kurt, Kurt, I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear what you're responsible for.
That will be responsible at thirty years down the road, if there is an issue.
I I think one thing to appreciate is this is not an unknown quantity. At, there are over a hundred permitted asphalt plants in Michigan. And there are well over, there's thousands across the country, and it makes sense, right? You don't want to drive hot asphalt long distances. It's just inefficient. It loses its heat. It's hard to, I mean, there's certain inefficiencies. So this is not some sort of unicorn-type. Ethylene oxide sterilizing facility where there's like five of them in the country. This is something that is ubiquitous. You have asphalt plants everywhere. EPA has standards based on the asphalt industry. What they do is they seek information, they go out to testing. At dozens, if not hundreds of these facilities, they compile the data and that's how they create their asphalt facility emission standards. Those are the standards that are the, basically the skeleton of the air permit. So to the extent that we're worried about, well, we have no idea what's coming out of this plant. I would, I would suggest that actually there are very good emission factors based on lots of stack testing data for similar facilities. You don't have a ton of variation between asphalt facilities. You basically set it up, you heat it up, you know, you pour it into a truck and then you go pave. Um, this is a pretty well-understood industry and there's a ton of data, so. Could you say that there's something very unusual at this facility? I mean, I guess it's always possible, but when you're looking at the EPA records, you know, you're looking at the the state inspections. There's nothing here to suggest that it's anything out of the ordinary and it's not like it's something that's unusual. This is pretty ubiquitous. If you're thinking about ubiquitous facilities around the country, there's asphalt plants everywhere, just out of necessity.
What I want to say to that point, though, is that what is so unprecedented. Is this township board deciding at our discretion to put housing right across the street from an asphalt facility. That is what is extraordinary and that is our decision to do that. It is not by rights. It is an industrial zone. Um, rezoning to PUD residential. Their resistance to doing the basic testing of VOCs and PM two point five is concerning me. I was hoping that we would have this resolved at this meeting. I don't understand that the resistance concerns me. I, I've said what I need to say about the air testing and I've not been persuaded by Mark's logic tree or by. Um, the monitoring after the fact when people are living there. That is a canary in a coal mine that you are trapped in. That doesn't work. I want to touch base on the, on one other issue. Um, there's two other issues I mentioned. I'd like to ask Matt and Brandon about this. The current REUs thirty-eight are approved, required is one seventy-seven total. My question, because we've had some conversations about this, I'd like your kind of opinion, if you're able to give it, Brandon or Matt. Um, we went through a capital planning process. There's a big ten million dollar line item in it for utilities. That drove the thirty-eight percent rate increase that we put in place for utility customers this year and the five percent. Each year. So my question is, an approval of this project up to a hundred and seventy-seven. What is the impact on kind of making that ten million dollar project more necessary or necessary sooner? And we have Brandon here in the room and Matt on screen. Um. Brandon, first.
Uh, I would probably defer to Matt with how much capacity we have left at our actual pump station. Um, I think Matt spoke. Uh, about what we're at in our capacity with Ann Arbor and it's come to light that we actually have more capacity than we thought. Um, but I think what is, is more important is uh what capacity we have left on our pump station and Matt definitely has that information better than I do.
Yeah, we did a, a basic calculation on remaining REUs. We actually factored the site into it just because it was past the planning commission. Um, but essentially, just going to answer your question, I mean, we've been through the, the capital expenditure plan and. It's a multi-phase, multi-tier uh expenditure line item that really is an unknown right now. It could be capital expenses in the city of Ann Arbor if you agree to negotiate extra capacity. It could be pump upgrades. It could be a myriad of things. Um, so I don't really know how to answer that question. It's a, it's a loaded one. Um, but the, the, to answer your question, I mean, really round, round numbers, um, you know. When and if, if this got moved forward and, you know, whether it's this use residential or some other use that used equivalent amount of REUs. Um, Syo Township's got somewhere between, you know, nine hundred to thirteen hundred REUs, give or take in there. In order to figure out and really narrow down that number, remetering is necessary. Um, that's also in the CIP. Um, that's something that the Syo Township's going to have to consider doing. But I would recommend doing that on the tail end of some of the sewer cleaning and televising and fixing that Brandon's undertaking. So there's a lot of work to be done in the next couple of years and. Honestly, I mean, if you really want to think about REUs in a nutshell, I mean, at the pace that Syo's going, even with all the development. Um, there's like a three to five-year window if you were to continue moving on and approving things as you have been. Until you're really going to be at a really firm pinch point. But that's, that's if you get more wood views, more trail woods, more. You know, this, the site's a hundred and seventy-seven, so it's not nothing. It's no, no drop in the bucket. It's a significant uh expenditure on your. REUs and you can see the impact that residential has. Um, I'm not saying it's not a necessary need for Syo Township. But obviously more ownerless on your sewer system than commercial. So for what it's worth, um, hopefully that helps answer some of your questions.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Brandon.
All right, I'd like to take a turn. I haven't had a turn yet. I really heard Shannon, um, the point that she made, and I think that is the point that is getting kind of lost in all of this discussion about. Potential health threats of asphalt odors or particulates of one kind or another. And that is that, um, there is a desperate need for more housing in this country. In Michigan in particular, there was an article in the New York Times about, that used Michigan as an example. Of a part of the country that doesn't have enough housing supply. The country has not really rebounded from the recession back in two thousand eight. And um, this is a project that um. Was done in large part, I think, in response to um our planning commission communicating to developers. That it was more open to dense development of residential. Uh, projects, and this is kind of an unusual one for Syo Township, but I think, um, if you step back from it. Put aside the arguments about, you know, what testing has been done and what testing may need to be done. Um, this project is a unique opportunity. Um, this project is a unique opportunity to create a lot of housing units for people of, uh, varying needs. And potentially even workforce housing if the TIF program, uh, is approved. But even without it, I think as, as trustee Brizow was pointing out, the mix of, of different unit types. Offers an opportunity for, uh, housing stock in SiO Township that we don't have. And can, and there's a, a thoughtfulness to it as well in terms of the connection, the pedestrian connection. To, towards Ann Arbor, towards, um, other people's neighborhoods so that there's more community. Towards, um, the woods, um, on the other side of the road where there's, uh, walking paths. Towards a daycare center which is coming up soon, um, on that same block. Um, and an indoor play area. There's a school, uh, just up Liberty that, um, families could reach, um, without having to get in their car. Um, there's a lot, uh, there's a park with, uh, walking trails around, um, the lakes. Right across there. So it's, it's a great location in many ways for putting, uh, this kind of dense residential development. Um, this project has been making its way through our system, meeting our requirements for years. And, uh, we gave it preliminary approval. Um, we put on it a condition that we wanted to have testing, and I do remember that conversation and the focus at that time was on odors.
No, it wasn't.
Well, that was my recollection and there was a lot of talk about the, the smell of asphalt and, um, this, you know, the kinds of. Um, well, I know there were other health issues that were raised, but they weren't raised specifically. The requirement that was placed on it was for air quality testing. They met that requirement. That data was shared with the experts as it was, as we would have asked, and it was, it was, it's shared with.
And then experts said they tested the wrong thing.
Look, just hold it for a second.
Go on, your bit.
Let me finish. You had plenty of time to talk. The, the experts reviewed it. I think there's, um, an effort to represent what, or, and I think, you know. In, in a way that sort of favors particular arguments, there's an effort to represent what those experts said. I agree. What they said is there's no concern on their part at this time. And there's, you know, we could do other kinds of testing of air quality if we wanted to, but what they're saying is at this time. Based on this data, they don't see a need for it. Now, we can argue that SiO Township should be the, you know, the more aggressive protector of future residents of SiO Township.
Yes.
And that we should put ourselves into a position of enforcing air quality, but that is not a role for the township. It is not. The township has its duties, it has its responsibilities, it has its authority. But for us to keep moving further and further into this area of, you know, uh, carving out a new role for ourselves as. You know, air quality, you know, experts is a mistake. It's a mistake.
How much have we spent on Gilman legal fees?
Well, it's a mis, it's a mistake for the township to get into the, the role of sort of supplanting the Environmental Protection Agency. There's supplanting Eagle, and I am opposed to it. And I wanna move us along because we have, we have a lot of other stuff on the agenda. We have people waiting for other agenda items. I would like to make the motion.
I have another comment.
I know you would like to interrupt, but I have the floor. I am making the model motion.
Yeah.
To approve P U D slash F S P number two, three, zero, one, six, the crossroads final P U D site plan. Based on the planning commission recommendation of approval, including any conditions listed by the planning commission. And authorize the clerk and supervisor to execute the development agreement and any other documents required. And I would like to add to it with the condition that the developer install purple real-time, purple air real-time. Mon, air monitoring quality system for that site. And, um, two, to adopt Z O A number two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, five for the crossroads. Uh, O A number two, two, zero, zero, three. Is there a second?
Give it.
So, so, all right, so it's moved by Hathaway, supported by Palmer. We have a motion.
I have a friendly amendment.
Okay, what's your?
With respect to your purple air, I would like it to say instead. That prior to construction, the developer install onsite. An air quality monitor such as purple air to continuously monitor the air quality for particulate matter.
PM two point five?
Two point five and volatile organic chemicals and provide that data upon request and without compensation to. Crossroads residents, SiO Township, Eagle Air Quality Division, Washnau County Health Department, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Cadillac Asphalt and the United States Environmental Protection Agency.
Well, I accept that. Do you accept that as?
Yes.
All right, so that's a friendly amendment to the motion.
Yeah. In other words, they gotta do it now. They can't wait till the apartments are built. We gotta, they gotta do it prior to construction and whoever wants it can get it.
And the idea is that that system would be maintained after.
It, 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 it's continuously monitor the air quality for particulate matter at, at point, two point five and volatile organic chemicals. And provide that data upon request without compensation, uh, to a, a number of parties, including the township.
Would this indefinitely monitor?
Continue, and, and, until, until that somehow there's a need to not do it anymore. But thi, this is, this is an indefinite monitoring as, as I proposed this.
This would be part of the. Requirement for anybody who ever owns this P U D then?
Yeah, we travel.
Just trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah, as long, I guess, I guess, we can, I, I would think we could revisit this if the asphalt plant gets shut down or if they go. Years and years and years without a, a, a complaint and it's not a problem, but you know, I, I, I guess I could say until further notice or until mutually agreed upon to, to cease it, but.
Development?
Pardon?
All right, I see, I see what you're trying to do. I think.
I'm trying to catch it now.
Yeah, I think, and, and I appreciate that, John. I, I think the. So I guess one question is just kinda operationally, how we can put something, an indefinite monitoring like that in place, but that's a detail. Um, I think that once we have that information. It's sort of like Gilman, right? Like we get so much information. We're required to get the reports and we get the reports from Eagle and we get copies of them and I have biodors full of them. Full of them. What are we, what is the action we can take and, and?
Let the regulators know about it.
And, and I, it, it will be like the relationship we have with priority ways on steroids. There is no role for the township to be the intermediary. With, between residents and the regulatory agency over an asphalt plant, and they're there only because of what we decide here tonight. And so, so.
Other people are there though. It's the same reason why, why it's SiO. So if it's impacting those residents, it's impacting all the residents in the Downwind as well.
I'm not saying it is or isn't.
You're right, it's under our jurisdiction to, to, it's under the.
That, that I disagree, and I think that's inaccurate because this jurisdiction is, they are asking us to take our discretion, change our zoning ordinance. From industrial to be P U D residential. We have asked them for two years for information to assure the safety. It is simple testing. I doubt this would take, I know you threw out four years. I was thinking this would take like three months. Like, I mean, this is a pretty simple thing to do and the continuous monitoring, what are you gonna do with the data? After the fact, then you would really put the township in between the asphalt facility.
The beauty of what, uh, trustee Riser has proposed is that, uh, data is shared widely. And the residents would have that data, the township would have that data.
No effect, though.
Well, now you're, you're predicting.
Unfortunately, I think that's the model of it, John.
But it empowers everyone involved to, to have the data.
This would be aside from the formal complaint process that, that, that the, uh, A D Q has to, has to do. This is. This is data. There, there's also complaint process that can do this, uh, uh, so. Uh, and, and that's, that's.
No, I'm just trying to play this out.
There's no reason that the residents can do that at Downwind, but today anyways. It's the same exact thing.
But, but you're talking about the past and I'm talking about, about now. I'm not arguing about, about that. I'm just saying. What I wanna do is assure the health of the people. We are deciding to have live across the street.
We are.
And, and I know that. I know that. What I'm saying is that this is a simple test. Of VOCs and PM two point five. That's all it is, and then have experts in human health, those agencies look at this. That has not happened. I just wanna be clear for the record. If we go forward tonight. You are going forward without data, without information that. Gives us reasonable certainty that this would be safe for humans that we are building the housing for.
Right, but my, my amendment would, uh, states prior to construction. Um, that's gotta be part and parcel. That's gotta be a priority. But it's gotta be there.
I want people in until we get the test back.
There's no, there's, there's no reason to hold this up for some kind of, uh, test that we could keep pushing that down, down the road.
We're not going to.
Well, we can. We, we, we asked for a test, we asked for a test.
Three months would not even capture asphalt emissions. Asphalt plant's gonna shut down in a month and not get up till spring.
Two, two years ago, this board asked for this. I, I don't.
Exactly what was asked for.
Yeah, and we can, we can, and I, and I regret that we didn't have our attorney go head to head with yours from day one, Dan. Cause if I knew you were gonna be like this, we would have.
Attorney about it. Ask her what she thinks about it.
And so all I wanna say is water under the bridge, totally unfortunate. John, I appreciate where you're going. I understand. I just think from a policy point of view, it's, it's not gonna have the effect of protecting.
I think we've all had a turn. We've all had a, no, we've all, we've all, yes, that's true. Some have had a long, long turn. And I, in multiple times, multiple times, so.
How much they paying you, Will? Hey, Will, how much they paying you to keep these people from talking, asshole?
I wanna clarify something that John said and Jessica said. So Jessica. What more do you want exactly than what John's motion is offering?
I would like that testing and monitoring that he describes and that I described. To be completed and provided to the expert agencies so that they can provide their written opinions. On the air quality, not just kinda ongoing data, but their written opinions, what I wrote. Um, about it and its impact on human health and that we would consider that prior to approving this. And I, and I, I understand John doesn't wanna do that prior to approving, I, if I'm understanding it, but.
You understand correctly.
But the, but the second part of that is that we would get a written opinion from the agencies. And that's what we've, we've never given the right data to the right experts in human health for a written opinion. That's what I.
Testing cover the VOCs and the particulate matter?
Yes, well, not my testing, but the monitoring by purple air to continue, it says prior to construction. The developer, uh, install onsite. An air quality monitor such as purple air to continuously monitor the air quality for particulate matter at point. Two point five and volatile organic chemicals and provide that data upon request and without compensation to. Crossroads residents, SiO Township, Eagle Air Quality Division, Washnau County Health Department, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Cadillac Asphalt. And environmental, the US Environmental Protection Agency.
With a request for them to do what?
You gotta put something that says it's, that, that it's gonna be there forever. You said upon construction, it doesn't take.
No, 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 prior, prior to construction.
I understand that.
Continuously, continuously monitor.
Okay, but you're on the, so you, before construction and it comes back that.
I'm sorry?
You monitor, you have this monitor before construction, it comes back whatever this purple thing is, and I don't know how accurate it is. Cause it, anyway, then it comes back that there's issues, so then.
Then they shut the plant down. Then, then, then the D E Q come in, then, then, then the regulators do their job.
Test it first and then put it on.
Because we're trying to test for something that hasn't been a problem and we need housing sooner rather than later. And by, I, 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 based on the complaints.
Call the roll, please.
There are no neighbors there yet though, John. That's the.
But there, but there's Walnut, Walnut View, and there's Walnut, Walnut View, there's Walnut, uh, Glen. There, those, those apartments and those condos are, every bit is close and they're downwind.
Can we call the roll, please, on this vote so we can settle this?
There's hundreds, hundreds of residents already downwind of this.
I think we, we, we've all beat this up.
Yeah, I think we've all had our say. Can we please call the roll on this motion?
Would you please reread your motion, Will?
Sure. Sure, I, I, I printed it out and.
Why don't, why don't you read the whole motion since your, your amendment is a good chunk of it?
Well.
I just wanna make sure we get this right.
Well, your motion, Will, was to approve the P U D, uh, final site plan number two, three, zero, one, six, the crossroads final site plan. Based on the planning commission recommendation of approval, including any conditions listed by the planning commission and authorize the clerk and supervisor to execute the development agreement. And any other documents required. And as amended, and that prior to construction, the developer install onsite an air quality monitor such as purple air. To continuously monitor the air quality for particulate matter at two point five. I don't know if I need to say milligrams, milliliters, picogram.
Five is the term.
Okay, uh, and volatile organic chemicals and provide that data upon request and without compensation to. Crossroads residents, SiO Township, Eagle Air Quality Division, Washnau County Health Department, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Cadillac Asphalt and the United States Environmental Protection Agency. And two, and two, to adopt the, uh, Z O A, uh, number two, oh, two, four, dash, oh, five for the crossroads. O A number two, two, zero, zero, three. It was your motion. It was her seconding. I, I only had the amendment.
That's right, but that's a very good reading of the.
And I have written it out.
Thank you.
As neat as I can.
Thank you. So motion by Hathaway, second by Palmer. Thank you, John.
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Brizo?
Yes.
Terry?
No.
Noel?
No.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
No.
Motion passes four to three. And there will be. In fifty-five days.
All right, shall we take a little break?
I think we should keep going. We have a long agenda.
I know we have a long agenda, but I would like to take a little break.
Well, now we know why Brazzo showed up.
You go, please.
I thought we were, everything was. Yeah, it was. Something changed.
That goes away.
Look, if they aren't.
Yeah, we had a good, we went there.
Thank you for your logic. Get that monitor up there. Good to meet you.
Oh, good to meet you.
Did you take donations from anybody?
Uh, yeah. You're the one that's getting two hundred. This is fiscal responsibility.
Oh, well then, you know what? Maybe somebody should get false data to us when we brought the sheriff.
Uh, I, 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 I read the, uh.
Really? So bye.
I just said that.
You're right.
She was asking a question.
Are we back?
We are.
I love your.
Let's, let's call the meeting back to order. If, if you're, if you're, if you're back in the seats, if you could take a seat, you need to finish a conversation, please take it out in the hallway. All right, we're back, we're back in order. Uh, the next item on the agenda is uh creating sustainable landscapes. Um, Brandon, this is your item.
Yeah, so uh, a few months ago, we got this uh work approved by Colorasi to redo the flower beds. Um, that fell through. Uh, since then, uh, this has been one of my primary things, uh, get the flower beds taken care of. Um, it's, it's been long overdue. Um, and uh recently, I got in touch with uh Allison at Creative, Creating Sustainable Landscaping. And she gave a quote, and I think it better aligns with our, our environmental sustainability goals that we have in mind. And with that, I will lead, uh, let Allison give you her presentation and talk to you about uh what's gonna happen, if you guys approve it.
Happy to lighten things up and talk about plants around here. Um, like Brandon said, my name's Allison, I'm a designer at Creating Sustainable Landscapes. We are a design building firm, just about fifteen minutes down the road, corner of Manchester and Arbor, Insane Water Works. And um, what's unique about us is we use exclusively native plants, and we grow all our own stock and do all our own signs and installs. Um, so it really, you know, takes your environmental goals and starts them here. Um, so, really quickly, why native plants, why around here, um, reduces inputs. You know, don't need the fertilizer, don't need the, you know, the carbon emissions that come from the lawn mowers. Really quickly, water quality, look, those super deep roots in native plants compared to non-native plants, you know, we're talking about reducing runoff, infiltration, all these things. And I'm sure you guys are well aware of, you know, the spawning pollinators and things like that species, so. Making that a priority around here, uh, a little hard to see on this picture, but we walked around the building and we kind of analyzed these beds here highlighted in green all the way around, leaving a spot for the generator, cause I know some construction's gonna be happening there. Um, expanding the beds a little around the entrance, you know, bringing some, um, you know, as you walk up, really making that the focal point. Um, and then as you come around back, you know, kind of just, you know, taking the beds that are already existing there, sprucing them up a bit, um, really adding a lot of native plants. So, really, our project proposal, first step, would be a design review. Um, I would do that, you know, within the next couple of weeks, we would go over it, we'd go over species, um. And we'd have, you know, specific bed layouts, size, sizes, plant species, plant counts. Um, then we'd start with, you know, the whole process would take probably about a week to do. Um, you know, the invasives you have aren't hardly hard to get rid of. Um, so we remove those, remove any unwanted vegetation. I know there's a ton of boxwoods and other irises and things in there that people might have interest in taking that we would like to remove, so we would, you know, pull those aside and anyone that wants to take them and reuse them, especially anyone that works here and has any attachment to them, they can do so. Um, mulch and edge, all the beds, you know, the river rock, there's a small section around the exterior of the building. Um, that's still in pretty good shape, so we would just, you know, really refresh that, add a small layer on top. Um, doesn't need to be removed, um, it's serving its purpose. And then, the big difference here would be planting between one thousand eight hundred and one thousand nine hundred plugs of native flowers, sedges and grasses. That's one plug per every eighteen inches, um, so we're really going for a very dense, very full look. So you do have some great species of shrubs actually here, when we went around and did kind of a plant ID. Um, so we would wanna keep these, we're gonna keep all the trees on all these shrubs that I'm showing here. Um, we would wanna just trim up, clean up, you know, make them look better, make them look healthier, anything that's completely dead and not gonna survive, we will obviously remove. But you guys do have some great, you know, native species here that can really, you know, add to the landscape that we wanna incorporate, um, as much as possible. So these are just some quick renderings of some ideas of, you know, what could. Let me reshare really quick and see if it helps. Yeah, I keep getting kicked off your wifi, I'm sorry about that. Anyway, um, I'll kinda continue and I'd be happy to send everyone these, these renderings that I did and some example photos. Think very like cottage garden, a lot of color. Um, you know, not any, doing anything too tall to block your view out the windows, but also, you know, give you some thinking sides lawn to look at, you know, when you're in your office all day. Um, the great thing about these landscapes is, you know, once installed, maintenance goes down significantly. We recommend about three maintenance sessions a year, um, you know, versus traditional beds that, you know, to look really good, need like bi-weekly maintenance. Um, so you know, you're getting the benefit of supporting all these species and all the great benefits of native plants. It's going to look significantly better, and it's also gonna be an example, you know, of, of what residents can do in the town, you know, in their own yards to um help sustainability, which I know is a priority for SiO, so. Um, sorry, this dropped service here, but I'm happy to send you guys like examples of work that we've done.
Purple, you know, what, what specific names do you have?
Oh, we were gonna, like, we grow over three hundred species, and you know, after doing soil testing here and looking at, you know, the water you have and the sun and shade mix, this is, there are over I wouldn't say all three hundred, but there's probably two hundred or so species that we grow that would work, you know, significantly well. Here are some common ones you might know would be like purple cone flower, black eyed susan, some little blue stem grass, some wild petunia, um. Tons of species, um, and you know, I would do a full drawing um to scale, and then, you know, everyone can look over it, approve it, and we could, you know, we grow a ton of species that would work well, happy to make adjustments and swap things out.
When will this um commence?
We can do this season, you know, depending on how quickly we can.
So you'd be taking out turf grass, or killing turf grass?
We would, we would be killing the turf grass, you know, the little swath that's between the existing beds and the sidewalks. We would be getting rid of that turf grass, um, mulching over it and expanding the beds, cause really, that turf grass isn't serving a purpose. You know, it's not big enough to walk on, sit on, it's just something to mow.
How big are the, how, how big are the plugs, you know, depending on the species?
Yeah, depending on the species, and now, right, their, like, their roots are five inches by two inch holes, they come in trays of thirty-eight, so right now, um. Depending on the species, they probably have about a foot of growth above the roots. Um, so it's definitely one of those things, you know, especially this time of year, you put it in, and it's not as instant gratification as in putting in a big arborvitae or something like that, you're not gonna get that. Really, it's going to look small this season until next season, you're gonna start getting flowering next season, but it's, it's, it's a process, you know, cause you're putting in small plants. Um, so, it's really next summer, you're gonna start seeing any flowers, and then the summer after that, you should really be at full growth.
Um, yeah, thank you so much for this proposal. I think this looks great, much more in line with what we're looking for. I wanna thank Murphy and Brandon for collaborating together, cause that's, I think, really helped. Forward. Um, and I just wanna note, this is much more money than we've um ever spent on this before. I think it's worth it, but it is a lot more money, it's eighteen thousand five hundred. Um, but then, it looks like the maintenance of three to four times a season. Where that's what, like twenty-eight hundred or so a year-ish, is that right? Okay, yeah.
And that's three hours again, you know, if we determine it only needs two hours, depending on the time of year, then it only needs two hours.
Great, thank you.
Here to make the model motion. Okay, motion by Palmer to approve creating sustainable landscapes to perform quoted work in the amount not to exceed eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. And in addition, approve four rounds of maintenance at up to seven hundred dollars per visit to be paid from Fund one oh one, two, six, five, dash, nine, three, two, ground maintenance.
Support?
Support from Flintopft.
Brizzo? Cherry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintopft?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Could you email your packet maybe to Brandon, and Brandon could get it for us, or to Christie, so would you?
Absolutely.
Something in our packet, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to um item L three. This is the Western Wasna Area, Area Value Express, WAVE, funding gap for services in current fiscal year. Um, and I know we have some folks who patiently waited for this agenda item. Marie, and uh, are you speaking, or is Kim coming up to you, or?
Um, that's up to her. I'm, I prepared to speak with you all today. Thank you so much for having me. Um, I would like to start with a little bit of background, because I think it helps with um this line issue. And then the next one that you have with the um Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority, Interests of Service Agreement. Um, so going back just a little bit, WAVE has been providing services to SiO since at least two thousand eight. At the time, we were doing the Community Connector, which is a fixed route that goes from Chelsea to Dexter to SiO, and then back. Um, we were also doing a door-to-door service. Um, I found some paperwork between WAVE and the township, and then WAVE and the DDA. And so, we've just had a long relationship together. When you all had your transportation millage come in twenty fourteen, that opened up an awesome opportunity for you to expand with WAVE and with Ann Arbor, um, I'm gonna call them ADA or Triple ATA. Um, so you had this opportunity to expand, right? In addition, when you work with, as a, so you're considered a urbanized area. And when you work with a transit authority like ADA, you get a discount on your transportation services. So for a hundred dollars of cost for transportation services, the state will pay twenty-nine dollars. And then you just have to pay the seventy-one, so you get a discount on transportation. And so that was an awesome arrangement that you could enter into because of your millage. Um, it was decided at the time, so now ten years ago, different administration for all three organizations. That instead of WAVE contracting directly with the township, it made more sense because of this discount to have WAVE be a pass-through recipient from AATA, from ADA. So you make your purchase of service agreement with them, and they agree to pass through a portion to us to provide the services that um, you choose. And so at the time, it was the Community Connector, Jackson Road Connector started at that point, which is a portion of the um Community Connector that's just in SiO, and then the door-to-door service. Um, everyone following me so far, sooner. Um. So, our predecessors, that all three of our agencies, didn't do a good job with documentation. Um, when you look at the purchase of service agreement between SiO Township and ADA, it only lists out ADA's expenses, it only lists out ADA's services. WAVE has not been represented in those. And while the intent originally was that their numbers were including WAVE, that got lost over this decade of turnover, um, again, at all three agencies. Um, in addition to this turnover and the lack of clarity, I started at WAVE in November um, as the full-time executive director. Um, I've pretty quickly found that there was this reconciliation spreadsheet between WAVE and ADA that was um missed, there was lots of errors in it, that went undetected by um both parties. So in February, in the Transportation Advisory Council, the TAC, um, we were asked to help project budgets, right? Like, we're gonna talk about another millage, we wanna know what the costs are, what the projects are, and that kinda thing. Um, I had identified the shortfall back in February, and I communicated it with the TAC. But the purpose at that point was to determine future focus things. And so, really, the discussion item at that time was are WAVE's costs being covered by ADA like they should be? Is ADA putting WAVE's expenses in when they give you their numbers? Um, we found out later that they had not been. Um. So then, um, when the TAC presented to you all in April, you all discovered during that meeting that there was a surplus in your transportation funds beyond the fund balance that you wanted to keep. Um, about five hundred thousand that were not spent. The vast majority, we are pretty sure, came from decline in service during COVID, right? So you didn't have to expend those dollars. And since WAVE had found that we have um been underpaid for services provided to your township, I asked at that point, hey, we're providing transportation services to your township, you have dollars for transportation in your township. Can we do an increase this year? Can we do an increase this year? Um, TAC was tasked to review capital items to spend that money down. And so WAVE's um operations were not part of those discussions in TAC. Um, they were asked to look at capital items, and so that is what they focused on. So in August, I was like, hey, Joyce Parker, is there any chance that I could get the board to consider this request? To be aware of this request, aware of some of the things we're trying to work on on the future purchase of service agreements, but as well as this request for this need this year, because we are providing three robust services to your township, can this be considered? And she recommended at the time that I write the letter that you all received um in your last board packet. Um, and I hope you got a chance to read that. I hope you got a chance to read some of the extra stories on the case for support in the following pages. Some of those stories came from your SIO residents. Um, so that brings me to the the chart that I have on that letter. I want to make sure that what I put in that chart makes sense um to each of you. So in that chart, I have the Community Connector fixed route. And so again, that's the one that goes from Chelsea to Dexter to SIO, meets up with the Ann Arbor um uh transfer point at Meyer, and then it goes back through the community. Um, in SIO in particular, we have uh we stop and in SIO, at SIO stops, over thirty thousand times. We're in SIO for about four thousand seven hundred hours every year. At the time I wrote the letter, we had had four thousand six hundred rides provided. Um, as of yesterday, it's five thousand one hundred and forty-one pickups on the Community Connector. For the Jackson Road Connector, um, that is a a route that goes just along your Jackson Road corridor. All but one stop is in SIO Township, the only one outside of that is Thornton Farms, who is contributing to the service. Um, forty-nine thousand stops in SIO on that route, forty-two thousand hours, forty-two hundred hours. At the time of the letter, three thousand seven hundred rides, and now we're up to, as of yesterday, four thousand ninety-one pickups on that. Um, the door-to-door demand responsive service, just in case no one is familiar with door-to-door service, we um can go up to someone's home, make sure that they get into the vehicle and then walk them up to the door. Not everybody needs that, but it is something that we offer for any individuals who would benefit for that from that. Um, those numbers are now updated to, um, we've had, we've picked up six thousand six hundred and sixty-one people in SIO Township. And we've brought six thousand two hundred and twenty-six people to SIO Township, dropping them off in in your township. All of these rides together is over sixteen thousand rides this year. Um, so when I say robust service, you guys are using our service the second most out of, out of our fifteen communities. Um, your residents are really taking advantages of of, taking advantage of the services that we're providing here. Um, the next line on that chart was the expense to SIO. Um, these services, uh, Community Connector, Jackson Road Connector, cost WAVE over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There are other communities that contribute to this, there are state funds that contribute to this. There are um fairs and grants, because WAVE is a five oh one C three nonprofit, we can receive grants from um foundations. So there are other entities paying into these services. And so the expenses for SIO, when it comes to the Community Connector for this fiscal year, we estimate to be about fifty thousand. The Jackson Road Connector, a hundred and thirty-three thousand. And then for the door-to-door service was thirty thousand, um, is what we estimated this year. The payment received is the payment that AATA has passed on to us from your millage. Um, they have paid us that amount, that's what is on our pass-through agreement from them. Um, and so that amount is the payment received on that, on that line. So the outstanding request that we have for you is a hundred thousand dollars to help support these services. Um, going forward, these things have been addressed. When you look at your, the purchase of service agreement on, in the next agenda item, you'll see that WAVE services are outlined in the expenses. WAVE services are in the appendix with our maps and our brochures and fairs, all of that is listed in there. Um, so you have more awareness, there's more documentation from all three of us about the services that your people are getting and what their millage is paying for. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Did you have a question?
No, I I just, structural, this is a one-off then, we think?
This request is a one-off for this year. And then future years, it's been adjusted, so we are, our expenses are being covered appropriately.
I anticipate it to be a one, a one-time?
Yes, this is one time, yeah.
This, this vote is.
I, I, well, trust me, I see the next one.
Okay.
It's kind of the balance due, it's what it looks like to me.
Correct, yes.
Nothing further.
Yeah, thank you, Marie, that was, that was really clear, um. And I appreciate you meeting with me and kind of explaining all of this. I also appreciate AAA TA, it sounds like both agencies are committed to having a better process in place. And when we get to the next item, I'll suggest some things that Township can do to help facilitate that. Um, but I just want to be clear, um, on this uh request, two things, one, is your board fully behind you on this?
Yes.
Great. And second of all, um, what, ha- have you um been in touch with your auditor about this issue, this reconciliation spreadsheet and how to kind of improve practice going forward?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Wonderful, uh, and they're being helpful.
Yeah.
Yep.
Great, thank you so much.
Just saying, you have at least one board member literally right behind you.
Yeah, for the past, what, five hours? Yeah.
If, if there are no further questions, is someone prepared to move the model motion?
I, I'd move a slightly different motion.
Okay.
Um, I'd move to authorize a one-time payment of a hundred thousand to Western Wasna area value, value express wave from Public Transit Fund two thirty comma as payment for the services outlined in the letter of August twenty eight, twenty twenty-four.
Support?
And move by Flintoff. Support by Riser, please call the roll.
Brzeo?
Yep.
Terry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Please welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to stay for the next agenda.
I was gonna ask, do you want me to say?
Yeah, yeah.
AAA TA here online?
Boris was gonna come, I don't know if he's managed to last this.
Is anybody from AAA TA online here? Don't recognize some of the names.
We may, we may have lost him along the way.
Oh.
But I'm sure we could arrange to have them come to another meeting and yeah, answer questions, because I think there are some long-term questions.
Yeah, short-term and long-term.
Short-term and long-term.
Yeah. So, but we can proceed.
Sure, why don't I, why don't I present this? I, I put this together, this is um a regular occurrence for SIO Township, we have what they call a POZA, purchase of service agreement with the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority, AAA TA. Um, and uh this uh contract, uh, we enter into, uh, and it is to cover primarily the services along the Jackson Corridor, uh, but um it sort of includes by association these other routes. Um, they don't, they say they don't include them in the costs for the POZA, but the fact that we have the fixed route service sort of makes us eligible, I believe, to have additional services. Um, the um the POZA this uh, this time around has been modified so that it does speak to more explicitly the cost of WAVE services, uh, which I think is a huge improvement. Um, and hopefully, that in and of itself will help to avoid some of the confusion that uh existed in the past. Um, the uh I don't know if there's anything else to really to add to that. Um, the, the POZA is structured in such a way that it is uh an annual um agreement that is key to the fiscal year for Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority. Um, but it uh, it sort of rolls over into the second year. So uh, this is a one-year agreement that will, you know, can expect to be sort of renewed uh when it comes up in uh twenty twenty-five. Are there any other questions for that I can try and answer? Or Flintoff?
Um, I just handed out this projection, it's in your packet, but this is just bigger, it's still not quite big enough, so.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to talk through a couple of things. I want to thank um Brian for um coming up with this projection and we went back and forth with Will and AAA TA and WAVE and made sure we had all the right inputs. So um this is a projection, it's got a couple of years of actuals, the balance as of the end of the last fiscal year, current budget, and then projected for twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-five. Um, it's the bus fund, we're now calling it the Public Transit Fund. Um, and expenditures, you look down there, you see it says bus service AAA TA and bus service WAVE. We used to, just like the contract, have one GL number where we just said bus service. And we get one bill from AAA TA and a question I'll be asking them is, is to ask AAA TA to detail their monthly invoice to us a little more um than they do. We're now going to track the costs separately for AAA TA and WAVE so that we can be a better kind of check to make sure that our millage dollars are being passed through in proper proportions to AAA TA and WAVE. Um, a couple of things I want to note, that top line AAA TA where it says combined for the first few years, that's the total number. So if you look at the first column, like three thirty-one, twenty-two, our total cost of bus service went from three hundred and seventeen thousand to the fiscal year end twenty-three to four fifty-seven. That's an increase of a hundred and forty thousand dollars in one year.
Just, I'm trying to follow you.
Yeah, I apologize, it's column one and column two.
Okay, thank you.
Under expenditure, bus service, AAA TA, that's actually for both services. It went up a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The next year, it went up maybe another twenty thousand. The next year, fifty thousand-ish, and then it breaks out. So projected for three thirty-one, twenty-six, it's going to go up to the sum of five eighty-two and one eighty-four, so it's going to go to seven sixty-six. So we're going to go from five thirty-eight to seven sixty-six. So a question, and then, and then from there, the increases are more modest and normal. But we've had a couple really big increases, they've been driven in large part by AAA TA. And so I did want to ask them to talk a little bit about what was driving those increases. They're, they're unfortunately.
Do we postpone this? Do we need to do this tonight?
We have to do this tonight because it has, we have to uh have this agreement in place.
That's why I wanted time for this item. But, so, so I think there's kind of, but we can break it into two. Um, I, I want to say I've got questions about the past, I've got questions about what AAA TA is proposing in here. Um, the four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, I'm more clear on the WAVE um services. But I also want to point out something important here is that, you know, hopefully in yellow to draw your attention.
Orange on the red.
Yeah, by about twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, we need a supplemental source of revenue for our bus service, or we need to cut service.
Or, or cut service or renegotiate or something, something has to give.
Yeah, and that'll come up pretty quickly, and it's probably in the order of like two or three hundred thousand dollars, it's not insignificant here. So I would just suggest, you know, we, we need to have the Permanent Transit Committee established. We need to look at this in our budget process. I'd also ask the DDA if they could start looking at this, if they might be able to, you know, consider some regular funding for, for it. But there, there's simply not going to be enough money to support this, and that's based on the millage we just passed. So. Yeah, I'm sorry, I have a bunch of questions for AAA TA, but.
Well, well, we'll make sure to have them come to if you can.
Yeah.
So, is someone prepared to make the model motion? To authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign the attached twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five purchase of service agreement, POZA, for the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority, AAA TA, and authorize the expenditure of up to six hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars from Public Transit Fund two thirty.
I would so move.
Move by Riser, sorry. Support by Brzeo, please call the roll.
Brzeo?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Thank you, Marie, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the first of the items that we moved from consent. This is um agenda H seven, uh, natural playground installation Eagle Scout project for Township Hall Park. And I believe we have some folks who hung out for this item. Hey, Murphy, this is your agenda item.
Yeah. Okay, so as you all heard already, the beginning of the meeting, Eagle Scout, prospective Eagle Scout, Brandon is proposing, well, I'm proposing on his behalf, the implementation of a natural play space in Township Hall Park. Um, we're seeking approval for the funds to uh to work with Michigan Recreational Construction. And he will be advising Brandon on um project itself to be sure that everything is ADA, ninety-five, um, ASTM compliant for safety. And um Michigan Recreational Construction will also be involved in the excavation of the uh site itself.
I have a question. Where's this located and will it impact negative with the flyers?
Um, it is located, uh, if you know where the.
Yeah, I've been walked by, where the big log aisles are?
Yes, it's pretty much right there, um, in the, in the area that's still.
Kind of closer to Township Hall than it is the field.
Correct.
Shielded by woods and do you anticipate any conflict between?
There won't be any conflict with the flyers, that's one thing that we've been really uh careful about and we've consulted with them. If and when um people are in the parks using the play structures, if there were to be flyers in the park, they have what's called a spotting person, so that if, if people get too close to the field itself, they will uh, they will move, yeah. They take safety really seriously, and they have their own guidelines in place.
Um, thanks, Murphy and Chris, for showing me where this was, I have the exact same question, and I'm so bad with space, I need you to like walk me out and point to it, so thank you. That made more sense to me. Um, I have a question about the bid. The um motion says up to, uh, slight change to the model motion, not up, but up to twelve seven. But when I look at the proposal, it says four thousand fifty with an alternative twenty-seven hundred. Okay, then I see deduct.
Okay, yeah.
I'll see through this.
So it is a bit confusing the way it's worded, so what we're doing is we are going with the first, the first option, which is the forty fifty. And we're opting out of option two. And we're opting out of almost all of option one. So for example, we don't, we don't need mulch and for the area to be reseeded, that's that's something that that area just isn't going to need for some time, if ever, in terms of seeding. We're not worried about.
The alternate one is off.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
They're going to be remediating any like. They're gonna be remediating any like ruts that are put in during the excavation and the actual construction process. But in terms of that price you're seeing there, it's gonna be minimal. And then we're adding alternate three, which is where a bulk of the cost is coming from, that you're getting that twelve seven, that twelve thousand seven hundred. Because they're gonna be furnishing the boulders and the sanded treated logs that are gonna be surrounding the sand space to give it. Both a more finished feel and to contain the sand better itself.
And I can't just say that we actually have some boulders that it's possible that we can just move some of our boulders and that will save us some money.
Right.
So up to twelve seven is enough. And and generally speaking, how will we measure like the need or the use of this? I mean, as we start to. Develop Township Hall Park, particularly like a play structure, like I mean, I know my kids have played back there, you know, when they need to, you know, when I'm here. But how will we? Like measure use of the playground or how do you do it for other parks?
I'm not sure how how other parks do it. I've been interested in implementing something that Anna's done in the past, which is QR codes. That people can use their phone to get to a survey to. Express when they're using the park and what they're using the park for, and that would also give us a timestamp for that. And there's also the option of doing paper surveys. Ultimately, though. Having exact numbers for how many people use the space isn't gonna be totally relevant, but also even even being at Township Hall Park now and then. I've probably spoken with a dozen people just in passing that are using the park for walking their dog and going for a walk or taking a picnic break. So. There'll be a combination of hopefully people participating in the surveys and just incidental encounters.
And Dan did say at the PPP, wear and tear, like when the when the sand will get. Transported, kids take the sand in their shoes or whatever, and and things kind of wear out over time. Which he said that's what you want to have happen, cause then, you know, the.
Right.
I mean, it's not quantifiable, but that's, he did say that.
Yeah, indication. I I'm supportive of that. I I have kind of a broader question about the, I know we've asked, you know. And Murphy, I think you're doing a great job. Chris, Rita, thank you for all your work. We're kind of like what the, this is coming in kind of pieces and we heard kind of a presentation about. The soccer fields and different things, kind of just wondering like the overall vision. For Township Hall Park, when we were walking today, I asked, why aren't we using the road? Like, why is the road gonna stay here or this or that? And there seems to be like a presumption that the flyers will be there and, you know, that's something, I remember when we were. Renegotiating when Erwin was on the board with us, we were openly talking, you know, like, yeah, you know, someday we'll make that a park and your lease will be done. You know, and I thought, and and it's not to say they shouldn't be there or should be there. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it sounds like there's been a lot of ideas thrown around and. I'm just wondering if you could kind of describe the overall idea for Township Hall Park.
So. There has been a lot of discussion about different ways that the park could be used because we're at a point where we could go in a lot of different directions. Overall, the purpose and function of the park should be to serve the communities that are, and serve the community and give them. Some of the things that they've been explicitly asking for. One of those things being a playground. A lot of people in the surveys that I have from the pros plan have said specifically, add a cool playground. We'd love to have a playground. Something that allows our kids to recreate outside without having to walk on a trail. So that's part of the vision for this park. Because it's the most accessible, we can add things that people are asking for in terms of outdoor recreation. And then we also have the pathway itself that goes around the park that already accommodates walkers, dog walkers, exercise walkers. And then there's a vision to formalize that trail. And in terms of the the playground itself, there is. There is a vision or goal to have. The park itself be done in three phases, the playground structure done in three phases, so that it's not just this one section of. Three. Three components. It'll be two more sections and that's something that, you know, it's not gonna happen overnight and it's not gonna happen even fully next year. But that is the overall vision is to create a larger park that accommodates more, accommodates more. People of differing abilities, people of differing ages, and so that's the whole vision for the playground. And it comes to the flyers. There is no intention, I definitely can't totally speak for the the committee, but. As far as I see, the the goal and the vision of the park in the future is the the silo flyers are a part of my vision for that park. Because, for example, one of my upcoming programs, they've agreed to collaborate so that. The the kids, once we have our program about clouds, the flyers have volunteered to be there with their buddy boxes and their planes so that the kids can. Participate in model flying. That's something that's, it is, it's rare. It's not something that every community has the opportunity to participate in. And I feel strongly about, it doesn't mean that we're gonna be able to accommodate every single request forever, but I think that. As it stands now, there's no reason that we can't accommodate the flyers. And and the long-term vision, it will involve flexibility on both sides. But I would like to see the flyers be a semi-permanent part of that park.
And I and I throw it out there too, you know, we had the Friends of the Barn. It was a similar situation. A group that, you know, has been using a public space for free for many years. So it's worth just kind of examining what the public gain is. I hear. You know, what you mean, especially if we're integrating them into park programming. But I just wanna be careful about not. You know, about making sure that we're not, you know, just letting certain private groups use public space for no money.
I definitely agree with that, and I think that there's a a pretty, pretty clear distinction between what's going on with the. The barn renters and and what the flyers have to offer the community.
Well, there's another similarity to both, in both cases, the the groups have put in sweat equity to. That is of value to the township, either maintaining the barn, you know, or. Maintaining the the field in the in the area out there.
And and confirm for me, silo flyers, they're they're an organized five oh one C three, right?
And I could not tell.
I'll check.
But they they maintain the the trail that goes around.
Right.
They also have that gate, which is actually kinda nice because we've had vandalism in some of the other parts.
Right.
So they do that to protect their field.
Well, I thought that was our gate.
That's their gate.
Okay, we just have keys.
Everyone thinks that that's their. Park. Until now.
But I think the gate's installed because there actually was vandalism. At some point, someone drove a truck out there and did, you know. Donuts out there and tore up the field.
So anyway, I think that they're, I think they're a good partnership for now, and I think it's the, sorry, am I speaking out of turn? I think that it's the township. Parts grows. We have to take kind of baby steps, what we can manage, and you know, I think. I think that someday we may have some kind of playing fields out there, but right now, do we have everything in place to manage that? No. So I think that this is a nice little hand-in-hand thing. It opens it up and and people are really begging for somewhere for silo to have something for their kids.
So is someone prepared to make the model motion?
I wanted to ask. So. An ongoing maintenance plan, we would have the funds.
Yes.
To.
Yes, and I've already, both in speaking with Brandon and Dan and taking a look at what is expected. What we, what we're probably gonna have left over from this fiscal year, what we're anticipated to have in the budget for the next fiscal year, maintenance for this. Easily, easily under ten thousand, easily under eight thousand.
Okay, I'm just thinking of as we add on, we always have to make sure that we have the money to maintain it or else it's gonna be an overbrow.
Yes, and I and I feel particularly strongly about. Maintenance when it comes to. Things that children are gonna be playing on. It is gonna be important to. To be keeping a close eye on those things, but the nice thing about. The natural play structures is that a lot of the materials are inexpensive. And they they can, some of this can even be replaced with no expense to the township because we have, you know, we have. Walnut everywhere, not everywhere, but we have, we have options and I, that's what I love about these play structures is that it gives us the flexibility financially. And then when we are talking more in the future about a pathway, that's another thing, you know, that's again, more maintenance and something we have to be prepared for. But I think that. The way that I'm proposing, not to get ahead of myself, but proposing some of these things now are gonna make maintenance costs extremely manageable in the future.
I just wanna remind the board that the CIP we adopted, including the the maintenance for parks that was built in.
So I heard you say that that you would like to modify the model motion to say up to twelve thousand seven hundred?
Yes.
Are you prepared to make the model motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
So to approve Michigan Recreational Construction Inc.'s proposal of up to twelve thousand seven hundred. To implement the design for the natural playground in Township Hall Park created by Brandon Brulette and Dan Perle. With payment from fund two zero eight dash seven five one nine seven four, motion by Flintoff.
Support.
By Riser. Please call the roll.
Brzeo?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Slimchop?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Okay, the next item also related to Township Hall Park is also prepared by.
So the next motion or the next item has to do with the. Requesting approval for a proposal from A three C collaborative architecture for nine thousand two hundred dollars for documents. Construction documents and construction administration for one bathroom located on the exterior side of, am I on the right one?
Yes.
A minute, okay, a minute, yes. On the exterior side of Township Hall Park or Township Hall period. The long-term plan for Township Hall Park does. Imply an increase in need for something like a public facility if we're gonna be having children or and and adults. Bringing their children. It. Makes logical sense to have a facility available for them to utilize while they're there, especially if we're going to be having. Potentially, you know, people staying and using the the grass for picnics. So long-term, it just makes the most sense to have a facility that is both ADA accessible. And available for the public during daylight hours. So that is the. We're, this is not a proposal for the implementation of the fixtures themselves. This is just a motion about. Getting approval for them to redo designs that have now expired, that were originally drawn up during the addition of the utilities addition.
Well, this is for plant, is this for, this is for plans, not construction.
Correct. Or a roughed-in bathroom.
Bathroom, no. What does it mean by roughed in?
It's already there, the roughed in there.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, the the structure exists, the fixtures, the.
Pictures just need to be put into place, yes.
So why don't we spend nine thousand dollars on pictures?
Because we, the proper.
How many options do we have of where to put a toilet?
The proper permits have to be pulled and there has to be a stamp of approval, an official. Yes, which is, which we had up until, I believe it expired earlier this year. But but we had those things in place up until recently.
That's over twenty seventeen construction.
Yeah, I'm not trying to bust your chops. It's like, you know.
No, I I know. It's just.
We move more quickly, we could have used the prior stamped plans, but they expired.
Yes.
It cost nine thousand dollars.
Can't, can't you just get a renewal of that? That permit process, basically.
Not as far as I understand, and as it's in. Not to the county. We've spoken with with Noah Heiser from A three C. And when we approached the subject of moving forward with implementing fixtures in the bathroom, this is what he came back with and said. Your your things have expired and to stay in compliance, this is what we have to do now.
Is Matt, is Matt still on?
I asked him about that.
I I asked you this question too. I mean, is this, is this really something that's required and and I'll let you speak to it.
Yeah, I I'm not sure what's all involved in this scope, but like. If 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 we had drawings that were several years old, we would probably, A, need to check. Code, make sure they're still relevant. We'd have to still go get a new building permit. And I assume, I I can only assume that this is to package that back up and bid it out to contractors, like a GC or plumbing contractor. Come back in and open bids and make a recommendation. I don't know if it covers like oversight of the construction, but it may. So I, you know, but if if it did, if it was to repackage everything up and pull permits, to rebid it. And then oversee it, the the price that Murphy's saying for A three C to do that seems more than reasonable. If it's, if it's only a portion of that, just to get plans back and doesn't include bidding and all that, then. You know, I would understand some of the concern, but I I I can't, I don't know, cause we're not involved in it, but just coming from a firm that does architecture. Work, I mean, nine thousand dollars to put together a set of plumbing plans, pull permit, bid and and administer seems more than reasonable.
Can I ask a question, Matt? If we wanted to do both, do two bathrooms, would it be smart to do them together so that we wouldn't have to, does the cost? Is it incurred more, is it more if you're doing them separately, if we just did two bathrooms?
Yeah, there is, there's, there would be an economy of scale for the designer for sure to do two and bid it one time, but. That depends on the township budget, so.
And.
Did you wanna add something?
The the way that the proposal is drafted right now automatically includes both bathrooms and we asked about. Scaling it down to one single bathroom and we were told the price is not gonna change. So ultimately, whether or not we do one bathroom or two bathrooms, these plans will be effective. Until that time, that clock runs out again in the same way that it did with the initial plans.
So we're, with this action, we would be buying the ability to go forward with a a bathroom as you propose a single bathroom. But we would have the option, the township would have the option at some point within the timeframe of the plans to go forward with the second one, if if it so chose.
Except we're not really going through with one bathroom. We're going through a plan for both and then we gotta decide if we wanna fund one or both.
And this is, I just wanna say, this is the first time this board has talked about. The idea of the township providing public bathrooms, and I'm glad we're finally talking about it. I know I've shared my concerns with you all. But I just wanna rewind a little bit. Donna and Kathy were the only ones on the board when the renovation was done. And I was, I was deputy clerk and I was kind of observing, you know, the the addition and things and and it was done. Sole source architect, sole source bidder to A three C and. Phoenix contractors. I didn't observe much, if any, conversation at the board for the design of that space, the whole utility addition. So I don't know. What conversation there was, but I will say the bathrooms got roughed in and then there was. A floating idea and it's good that we're talking about it now in twenty twenty-four, finally, to.
You know what, back in, I don't know what year this is, but the bathrooms have been talked about. It's just not with this board, probably.
Exactly.
We're talking.
They've definitely been talked about.
Definitely been talked about. They're they're on about the old plants.
They're def, they've definitely been talked about. The first time that this board has has talked about them. And and Murphy, I wanna thank you for. The thoughtfulness. You're putting into the ideas around security and security cameras and cleaning and the costs. And, you know, the stewards cleaning the bathrooms. I think that as, I'll say, you know, I'm I'm here a lot in evenings and weekends and things. I think that as, I'll say, you know, I'm, I'm here a lot, um, in evenings and weekends and things, so. One, I just don't know that we've demonstrated that there's a need for an outdoor public bathroom. Um, particularly if I'm hearing that it's gonna be open during the day, um, so I wanna care about that, but two, I, my biggest concern. Is really security and safety, I feel like.
Here's the plan, when you don't have a bathroom for people to use.
Yeah.
Okay, they have to go to McDonald's. So I.
They would come in here. During open hours, I mean. But, no, no.
A lot of people just go to McDonald's.
So let me, let me finish, is, is that, that with a public bathroom, I think that you've got. You know, certainly and with a park as well, I mean, I'm concerned about things like illicit activities. Um, drug use, you know, I mean, there could be overdose, certainly when I've talked to other staff here. Um, you know, I just think I'd really wanna understand. The plan, because if they're just gonna be open during the day, as you mentioned. We're open during the day, you know, and on occasion, somebody's walking their dog, they're like, hey, do you mind if you use restroom, sure, you know? And so I'm just concerned about, you know, the, having more and more people go back there. Toward our utility garage, backfire equipment, I'm hounding people all the time to shut the utility doors, right, we just shut those. That goes right to the room with the secure election equipment, so. I just think that we've attracting more people to come to the building without a good plan, it sounds like a high cost. For very low use and I, I just. I just don't think we have, I mean, we're barely maintaining our flower beds and our own internal bathrooms. I don't see how we have the capacity to handle a public bathroom.
Mark, let's, let's, Murphy respond.
So I, I definitely understand where your concerns are coming from, I think that. If we're talking, well, I'll do two things, I'll start with this, so I think that if we're gonna talk in terms of. Security and safety. We could talk in circles about what makes certain people feel safe and unsafe all day. But I think that there are solid things that we can put in place that ensure. Detering vandalism, having cameras deters vandalism. Just because you know you're gonna be on camera, whether it's daytime or nighttime, if we have cameras in place, it will deter vandalism on top of the fact that. Part of the security going into the bathroom itself is a door that will lock. Um, along with the same types of security that we have on our doors now. So we can program those to lock at whatever time we want, and what I meant during the daytime hours, I didn't necessarily mean eight to four. Um, especially considering the playground being there. We're gonna have people that are coming here after four, bringing their kids after school, bringing them on the weekends and in the mornings when, when. These doors aren't typically open to begin with, so we have, we have a plan in place for addressing that specific issue. In terms of. In terms of the long-term plan for the bathroom, we do have, um. So that's the two things of the security. Okay, sorry, I got, I lost my train of thought. Does that, does that address your concerns at all?
Yeah, it does, and I think it's, I think it's really like, also like the comfort of the people who work here in the building, I think.
Yeah, sorry, I wanted to say something about that.
Get a vibe of people who work here about, you know, having the public there.
Yes, so we are inevitably, we are increasing the number of people that are going to be. Be visiting this area, that's just an inevitability because this park exists and has existed. And now we're going to be making these improvements on it, we're, the purpose is to attract more people and just because at the moment. We don't have those numbers, doesn't mean that. They're not gonna happen and I'd rather predict that. Though that is gonna become a need because people have to go to the bathroom, that is just a fact, this need is going to become. Not dire, but it is be, going to become an issue and. It's better to address it now when we have the chance before we start advertise, before we implement a playground, before we implement a new pathway. We have the infrastructure in place to support the number of visitors that we wanna have. That's why we're putting all this money into improving the parks so that, so that we have more visitors, like this is gonna be. This has the potential to be a real gem in the township and it has the potential to have a high. Not just a high use, but high variety of the type of uses that, that could, a high use. High variety of usages, so I just think that now is the time to think ahead. And implement these kinds of, this kind of infrastructure.
I'll just say, I really think it'd be good to get a vibe of like the people who work here and what would make people feel. Feel comfortable, that's all, I mean, swear I see it.
But, uh, may I ask though, I'm not trying to be combative, but, but. Is it less, is it more or less uncomfortable to have a visitor come in? And ask to use a facility than to have a visitor who doesn't have to come into the building, who can just use the bathroom outside?
It is, the former is more comfortable for me, because then I'm not wondering, has someone overdosed in the bathroom? What are we gonna, who, what, what's gonna happen, what kind of a mess, the cost, I mean, I worry about kind of the worst case scenarios. That are pretty common, I mean, and so when I think about managing kind of a, a public bathroom. And a public bathroom that's by all of our new vehicles. By our garage doors, which we're in the bad habit of not always keeping closed. I mean, these are, these are real things, I mean, you two work right back there, go, go in and out, and so I feel like we're attracting members of the public. To come to areas where we have a lot of our equipment and things and until, and, and it's an entry into the office space.
Can I, I'm gonna give you an argument both directions, I'm not gonna take either side, I'll just give you two thoughts to think about, you're absolutely right, you could be attracting. You know, uh.
Unseverable.
Uh, yeah, I, I think there's, there's a point to be made there, however, I can make the argument, I'm gonna argue this both ways, then obviously we have parks, all kinds of parks today that have. You know, restrooms that are there.
This would be the first one.
No, I'm not about like parks, general, general metro parks, but, but in your, back to your defense, those parks are closed at a certain time, they make sure everybody's out. Right, you gotta, you gotta leave, right, you can't be parked there at ten o'clock at night in a park, they're gonna toss out, where. I guess in theory, you could park in our parking lot at ten o'clock at night, but I assume that we'd have these. Bathrooms locked or something, right, there's a key or some kind of.
Or we would check them each day.
What we do is have, um, the, the same type of locks that are on all of our doors for security, those would be the same, that way we can implement. A time that they lock and unlock.
But then, and then like kind of a check, like even our indoor bathrooms as security, we check our indoor bathrooms before we go each day.
Okay, so for years, we've talked about having a park, we have a park, it's been there for thirty-five years. So we, we have this park and it's available to our community, but um, if people come here. And we're, we're now, we're gonna bring in people with small children and they may have more than one or two or three children with them. And somebody's gotta go to the bathroom, now if you were that parent, you might expect that if, in a sophisticated area like this. That there would be a usable bathroom and if people wanted to come in to use this bathroom, that door is locked. Most of the time, so they would have to come into the front door, negotiate with whoever's behind the desk to use the restroom.
Yes.
So what I'm saying is, I want you to think about. How logical this is, if you're gonna invite the public to come here, you, that you, we already know that we wanna park, it's here. The pros plan says, yeah, we wanna have parks, we wanna have something for our kids. So how inconvenient do you wanna make it that they have to work this hard to use a restroom? I, I, I'm, I can't follow the logic, I think that. There's probably more people gonna just use the restroom than there are, gonna go in there and shoot up or whatever it is you're afraid of, I'm sorry.
Back off of that, um, I think that if we're going to talk about the importance of ADA, we need to also recognize that. Not all disabilities are visible and the fact is, if we're gonna create a park that is ADA compliant, that we are trying to attract. Varying levels of abilities, a bathroom is just a must, it just is. And if we're gonna advertise it, then we need to follow through and if we're going to say that. Accessibility to our parks and nature and recreation is important, then we need to show that as a fact. And we need to have a restroom available for people of differing abilities who need it.
And, and I, I, I agree, I'm thinking of the parks in Anaragel and Almendinger and Argo and, and, and parks in other. Municipalities, to have a, 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 a bathroom so close to a Township Hall Park. Um. That, that, that's been plumbed for, for these fixtures, I mean, we've frankly, we could be doing two bathrooms there. And if they lock at a certain time, I mean, there are a lot of reasons, there are a lot of things that. Could go wrong, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't anticipate those and try to deal with them, this is the right thing to do, we're gonna have kids. I, and, and, and the alternative is to urinate in the woods and we don't want that either, uh. After the township is closed or on Saturday and, and on Sundays, we should have a. Bathroom that's open to the public during reasonable hours that accommodates the visitors that we want to. Ha, ha, have, have used this park and, uh, you know, I, I, I don't like the price of the engineering and maybe the answer is like, let's get another stamp. Uh, or the archi- the, the architecture, whatever, and let's get, but I think this is something we should do. It would benefit the people who use the park, whether that's silo flyers or whether that's the kids or whether that's the walkers or the people who walk their dogs. And, 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 and I, and I don't wanna be unappreciative of the comfort level of those who work here. But a, a, a. A bathroom that's been plumbed for it, adjacent to a gem of a park is something that I think should, should, we should allocate money for. The PPP unanimously wanted this to happen, I think they wanted both of them to happen, I think we should heed the counsel. The advice, the urging of the PPP to do this, um, so I would be in favor of spending up. To this money for this firm or another firm to, to get this. It developed as a restroom as soon as we can.
And we have a village, that's, we have money for parks that can cover this.
And I, and I think, I mean, and I would support this if, if, if we really flushed out the plan around comfort, security. Cleaning, I'm just worried about the.
You got some time, I mean, those are all legitimate, but you got time on that.
So, I do think that I have done a, a decent job at, at addressing those, those exact, um, those exact concerns and I think that.
I was just gonna say, there's a lot of that is addressed in the agenda items.
In terms of security, we really have a lot of options, in terms of cleaning, we have a lot of options, it doesn't have to be, um. Doesn't, and I, and I would even be willing to take on more of those roles, I just don't know if I'm allowed to. Because for example, what, why, the way I'm envisioning. Daily maintenance, weekly maintenance is, we have stewards for nine months of the year. It would be on a rotating schedule where each, you know, steward each day checks the bathrooms, make sure it's clean, if it's not, they clean it. The way that these bathrooms are set up is, it's actually ideal because we have a hose right, right in the garage, so if there is a mess, all we have to do. Is get cleaning solution and hose it down and it goes down the drain, it's the perfect, it's the perfect situation to keep things extremely sanitary. And keeping this rotation means that everything is being checked and maintained daily. And then on the off-season when the stewards aren't here, we have the option potentially, when we have someone in the role that, that Kevin rec- recently vacated. Brandon and I have talked about that as a possibility, I didn't put it in their proposal because at the time, you know, we don't have anybody in that position, so I'm not gonna count on it. But I've um, consulted with a cleaning company who said, once a week, a hundred dollars, if it's really bad, one fifty to two hundred. And when they say really bad, they mean, you know, really bad, so. These are all things that are being accounted for and I, I do, I do feel strongly that there is, that we have a really solid plan in place.
Okay, um, can you talk about the doors automatically locking?
They would not lock from the inside, under no circumstance that that happened, it would just be that, um. At the exterior door at, let's just say an arbitrary time, seven P M. Those doors would automatically lock so that people couldn't get in.
Okay, then how would that happen?
It's part of, it's part of the system, that you're able to set periods of time.
Hours do, hours lock and.
Exterior doors to this building.
They do when people are leaving the building, yeah, it's set to a time, so this would be presumably the bathroom's empty and it locks at seven. Okay.
I mean, I get you to prop a door open or something like that, but I mean.
That's what the cameras.
Well, that's true, well, you could probably, you could probably have a sensor.
Okay.
You could probably set it up with a sensor inside the bathroom so it wouldn't lock somebody, if somebody was in there.
In the same way, emotion sensing light works, yes.
But aren't those details, I know we had to think about it, isn't the bigger picture, do we wanna have a bathroom to accommodate park users? And where we have plumbed a bathroom, I think that's the bigger picture, do we want, do we wanna have a bathroom there? I, I'm a strong proponent that we do, maybe not two, but first, I think we certainly need one to, to accommodate. The, the more, you know, we.
It's kinda like having a restaurant with no bathroom, I mean, you can't really have the park and not kinda have a bathroom.
They don't belong to us, they don't, they don't belong to us, that's the flyers, maintain.
And so those won't be there anymore if we have a bathroom.
Well, they may.
Hard to say, those are theirs, that's for the flood, the flyers have them.
The flyers would probably welcome having a better bathroom.
But in the same way, in the same way that the uh, friends of Sio Barn maintain the barn, that's, you know. They're maintaining those bathrooms, they belong to them.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of questions about that, um, with the lease and whatnot, anyway, um.
Anyway, it's not money out of.
And have you talked to Chris or, well, our, our I T department about the security cameras?
Yes.
We don't have those yet.
Yeah, no, and I've also consulted.
Already installed.
Wiring is installed, I've also consulted with an outside company who is able to give me a quote in case. Um, Chris's plan either doesn't happen within the timeframe that we would like it to, to have those, um. By the time the bathrooms happen, if Chris isn't well on his way to implementing those cameras, I've also received a quote from a separate company. Uh, for installation of, of cameras using the infrastructure that exists.
Triumph, and if, if it does turn into a problem, like you said, there is some kind of problem, and then you can shut, just shut it down, I mean, it's simple as that.
No, I, I don't think that's realistic, I mean, I, I think, I, I really think, like, if we just got a, worked out. These logistics a little more about the security and really the, the walkway, you know. With people, you know, going, where they're gonna be going to those bathrooms, through the equipment, to the park and back.
Well, we do have that flushed out, um, which, which is part of the, um, which is part of the other agenda item.
But isn't this a public building, couldn't people walk laps around it if they wanted to?
They, so some people do.
Actually, yeah, so just, you're saying, we worked those things out, you're cool with it.
Yeah, so you guys know exactly where people will be walking, past the equipment and the open doors and. And, and one of the bathrooms, and I don't know if this is current information, I know we're gonna have our H VAC presentation. I thought that one of the bathrooms might have to be dedicated, you're nodding, to geothermal. Okay, is, so that's why the proposal is for one and not two, but also probably just need, it could just be a.
We would prefer to have two, I mean, it just makes sense, I just.
Okay.
Future, if you wanted to have like a festival here or something, we have lots of parking. We have the big field, we could have a festival here, if you're gonna invite your friends in, you're gonna need more rooms, it's just. Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah, let's do it.
Front counter though, Jessica. That, that would not bother me having people around the building, I mean, it, I'm, I'm completely used to it. Okay, and as long as there's a plan for like at night, it'd be checked. Before we go. By somebody, doesn't have, I'm not saying it has to be.
We had to bring the sheriff into bot meetings, I can make, we have trouble this right here, let alone the bathroom.
I guess I move to approve the A three C collaborative architectures proposal. Of nine thousand two hundred dollars for construction documents and construction administration for. Two bathrooms located on the west side of Township Hall to be paid from one two oh eight dash seven five one dash eight two three.
Well, wait a minute, I thought we could only have one because the other one's for geothermal. There's a.
It's just the design work.
This is just the design.
The, the construction.
The construction.
It's a separate i- item.
Then you have to pay that much for one or two, so you might as well.
And, and why are we paying this much, just for the late person that I am?
Well, he just ran through it before.
Okay, so.
It's for the, uh, it's design, construction, oversight. It's for the, it's design, construction, oversight, management. He thought that was a reasonable price. Man on the screen.
The man patiently waiting on the screen, the next agenda item.
So I guess so.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second? Okay, move by riser, support by Brzeo. Please call a roll.
Brzeo?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? I'm gonna vote no. I'm coming along, but I'm gonna vote no because I would like more info, but it passes six, one.
Okay, that brings us to agenda item H nine. Um, and this again is Murphy's agenda item and we have with us, uh, Matt Hart's patiently waiting to talk about this as well.
Yes, so, uh, we are proposing to upgrade the existing loop around Township Hall Park. Uh, upgrading means, um. Grading the existing pathway to be ADA accessible. If you've walked out in the pathway at any point, you know, uh, that it is at quite an angle. And therefore, if we were to just put down limestone as is, it would not be ADA accessible. And if we're going to, again, I know I'm harping on it, but if we're gonna advertise it, then we need to deliver. And that means that we need to move forward with a proposal with, um, O H M. To design the inspection package for the ADA compliant gravel loop. That's, uh, let's see, what else do I have to say about it?
The attached proposal.
Oh, yes, of course. I have like a ton of information. So, to start. Sorry, it's late. It's been a long day. So. To start, we have the funds available for this project in full. We have more than we need. Because, um, as, as it was put in the budget for this year, um. Let's see, can we find the number? So originally, the budget was, um, two hundred sixty-six thousand five hundred just for the gravel loop itself. Uh, what we are proposing with, um, O H M is to expand that concept. So it would be an ADA, uh, compliant gravel loop. And then, uh, the external, uh, outside of the park. A paved pathway would be implemented where Township Hall Park sidewalk ends. It would go, uh, on the outer side of the parking lot. And where, where the field starts now on the outside of the parking lot on, uh, what side is that? The west side? Uh, would be a paved path that leads into Township Hall Park. And would join to what is the proposed slash current loop. And, uh, part of the implementation of the paved pathway would be. A second portion that leads to the bathrooms themselves, which would also be ADA compliant. So that if anyone was in a wheelchair, they'd be able to, um, access the bathroom still using the sidewalk. I mean, it's just, it's, this has been an ongoing project. Uh, it's been approved in many different spots. I can find it in the capital improvements project, in the pros plan, in the, um, in the budget. So, we have everything we need to go forward with it and I, I feel really strongly that, that we, that we do. This is a great project and, and it's gonna, gonna make a positive impact.
One of the things that really was pleasing to me before I was in this role, I was serving on the Parks Advisory Board and, and. We put in the path by just sort of walking the perimeter, marking it and then mowing it. And almost as soon as we did that, people flocked to that rudimentary path and started using it. So it, it was gratifying to see that, you know, we were creating something that people immediately sort of seized on as something they wanted. And started using it. And I know from, uh, personal experience, how making something ADA compliant. To, uh, how that, um, has immediate impacts and, as well. And, uh, my father had a stroke, um, you know, in ninety-one. He lived for another ten years, but those ten years, uh, with his mobility, um, limited. I experienced by, you know, pushing a wheelchair with him in it or taking him places. The challenges that people face when they have, uh, that kind of mobility limitation. And I know that that pathway, once it's level. Um, and somebody can do the full circuit, um, that it will just open up possibilities for people. So I'm really excited to see this moving forward.
About the way O H M is proposing the loop is that the way it's gonna be implemented, it'll be. Um, a total, it'll be a total of ten feet wide, which is exactly the width that is needed if we were to later convert it into a paved path. Which is great. I mean, we, right now, we're really focused on keeping it as natural as possible. But in the future, in five years and ten years, if we want to pave the path, it will, it will be ready for that. Which is part of the, the, um, the engineering that's going into it.
Would it just be a hardened dirt path?
No, it's going to be, um, it's.
It's a twenty-two, twenty-two A gravel path with a limestone dust, uh, cap. Which is basically compactable and you can roll it out so it's wheelchair accessible. It's still considered a gravel surface, but it's not loose gravel. It's, it's compactable. It basically will lead minor maintenance, um, you know. Probably biannually, maybe, maybe if you're lucky every year, um, just because it will rot. And, and if you're, and really the idea is to keep vehicles off of it. I think we'll separate the path from the existing. Uh, car path that the flyers use. And we've, I, Sally, Stacy and I met with, uh, Chris and Murphy and walked it and got a really good idea. Of, um, you know, what the plans are and what, what needs to be laid out. And after walking it with them and looking at, um, a, a sketch that they had that they, you know, developed with PPP. And kind of what we thought was possible. We came basically the same derivation of how to lay it out and where to route it. The only real reason you even need engineering is A, to get competitive contractor quotes. B, to ensure ADA compliance. And then there is some. Challenges with the, with the, with the hard surface path coming in from the sidewalk and making sure that's all ADA compliant. And then also the steep grades where it's tipped. So if you walk into the park and you stay along the eastern side. And then the northern side, it's pretty sloopy. Um, I know O H M worked in the past with Anna to dilinate some wetlands back there and figure out, you know, where that's all at. But that's the only work we've ever done on that property. Um, once you get to the west side and the south side, it's very flat. And probably won't even require any topo survey. Um, but definitely if you wanna do it right and you wanna build it to last, we're recommending that you put together some engineering drawings. And then bid it out. Same as, well, not the same, but same, similar to what A three C is doing. That would cover the design and then bidding it out. We could also include, uh, construction oversight if that's what you wanna do. But we usually break that out and would come back to you as separate. So to answer your question, we didn't provide a full-blown scoped proposal yet, but I did give Murphy a range of cost. Um, I was kinda waiting to see how the bathroom thing played out and if that were to be included or not. So.
What's the length of it?
It's about what, Murphy, half a mile?
Point five miles. It's what's there now with the, with modification in that where the road is. It's gonna be, um, thirty feet, I think is what we discussed, thirty feet apart from the road. So as to provide a barrier between any traffic, even though it's extremely minimal. Um, a barrier both between the road and the playground. And that's where, where it is right now, the pathway, uh, how do I wanna describe this? There is, the continuation of the pathway around the loop involves walking on the road. Whereas this would create a separate walking area so that there's no conflict between pedestrians and traffic. And it would also act as a, a buffer zone between the playground and the road. Again, people on those, on the road, one, it's very, very minimal, two, the speeds are also very minimal. So, that's, it's just an extra precaution more than anything, so that no one has to cross the road.
What about in the winter, what do you do?
To maintain it in the winter, we won't do anything. I don't, I'm, and Matt would probably be able to answer this better, but I, one, I don't think, you know, we're not supposed to drive vehicles on it. To maintain its integrity for as long as possible, but also I think trying to plow something, you know, to plow limestone. I, I think we just rip it up.
Yeah, you'll damage it. You'll damage it and I, I think it's pretty common to have these types of pathways. You know, in parks and you'll see them in state parks, national parks. Um, they just get, people will still walk on it and it'll be fine. But yeah, I would not recommend plowing it unless you wanna spend more money on maintenance, um, in the spring.
Glad to see this. I know we talked about this in the capital improvement plan and Roy laid out kind of the limestone and what that was gonna look like. My question is, and I mentioned this to Murphy earlier, is we don't have a, a proposal, Matt. We have a, uh, to, unless I missed it, it says to approve a payment of up to twenty-five thousand to O H M. For the design proposal and inspection package. I don't think we've ever approved a, a motion like this without kind of a little more description, if not, we've always had a proposal from you. So, I'm just wondering what, what to do at this point. That, that we don't have a proposal, how we can make it.
What, what if we modify?
Specific enough.
What if we modified this so that it was to approve the creation of a proposal? To, that would come back to the board for approval.
Perfect. If we could just, I mean, I'm supportive of this idea. I just, I'm just wondering, why, why do we need to approve? A payment tonight without a proposal?
You, you don't, you don't.
Time is, what's the time pressure?
Would it be just approve up to? Get rid of the payment?
That's fine. I'm just, I'm saying the proposal, we, we always have a proposal. I guess I'm just wondering what we're referencing.
How about to approve the creation of, of, of proposal by O H M? And the rest of the details and leave the money out of it. And then they will come back as a proposal that we could then approve. The board could then approve. Could have it at the next meeting, probably.
That's fine, but it sounded like there was some pressure to get it approved tonight for some time sensitivity.
More that there's still a potential in this construction season to get it on someone's radar. So we, we had talked with Matt about getting it done late this year. As, as the construction companies kind of wind down, they're gonna be looking for easy projects. So it'll be pretty easy from what I'm understanding to get bids on it. The sooner we're able to move forward with it. The faster we'll be able to get, uh, more competitive bids. If, if we, you know, if we put it off, that's fine too. We can also, um, you know, schedule it for. Late, would be, yeah, like late spring, early summer.
What about, what about changing the model motion to, to request that O H M. Prepare a design proposal and inspection package for an ADA compliant gravel loop and pedestrian connection at Township Hall Park. And then we can leave off the to be paid part two. And just have them bring back the proposal and then at that time we will have the proposal and we can approve it as we normally do.
Yeah, and, and I don't know if Murphy and Matt, you two can work together, just get it together. We'll just put on consent and move it through.
I like that. And honestly.
Okay, I'd be more comfortable if we had a proposal.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. The dialogue denied has helped. Just listen to it. I mean, I, I appreciated walking around the site with Murphy. But I feel better bringing a scope and proposal back to you and yeah, put it on consent or bring it off if you have questions for me. But I'm, I'm comfortable with that and honestly, um, we do so much work with SIO, like. We can start thinking about our plan of attack, you know, over the next two weeks and so we can start immediately. I, I really wanna position this township to be able to seek bids and give contractors the option to maybe start late this, this winter. But more than likely, we'll give them a flexible schedule so we can attract more bidders. So if they can't fit it in this winter, we'll also allow contractors to be able to do this in the spring. And that should open it up to much more contractors and give you more of a competitive bidding environment. So that's kinda where my head's at right now.
So is someone prepared to make the model motion? As I articulated it, to request that O H M does, uh, prepare. A design proposal and inspection package for an ADA compliant gravel loop and pedestrian connection at Township Ball Park. Okay, so by Hathaway, support by Flintoff. Um, there's no money involved, so, um, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it is approved.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I, I, I can announce. So at this time, um, if I can have everyone's attention, please. We have one more agenda item. It's a little tricky, uh, because it is to go into closed session. Um, to discuss a, uh, po- potential land purchase, uh, which is one of the reasons that we.
And actually, what I suggest, Will, is, is if we could, logistically, what might make most sense is for us, we the board, to just pick up. Go into the other room to go into closed session and come back here for, um, public comment.
Good evening. Murphy and Chris were hanging around for five and a half hours to do their items, please.
Yes, thank you, Murphy, Chris, Rita, thank you. So I, I'm gonna make the motion, um, that the boards enter closed session. For the purpose of considering the purchase or lease of real property up to the time an option. Um, for that real property is obtained as authorized by M C L fifteen, two, six, eight, one, D.
Our second motion. Oh, sorry. I think we need to do a roll.
Brzeo?
Yes.
Gary? Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
We are in closed session. Um, we will be returning. Thank you. Yep, for closed session.
Oh, oh, oh.
Okay, 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 okay.
Oh, yeah.
I'll be right back. From the wisdom.
So Matt Hart, so for those of you that aren't aware, this is still being reported. Um, I was yelling at Matt Hart, I wish he'd be morning at twelve, one A M. Uh, and Matt Hart said he had a Sunday meeting. Looks like a no buy, so it's probably only twenty, twenty-five minutes, but still. We have to make sure to get up at six, so you have to take a shower and throw on clothes.
Lived in northeast Anarch. I'm just really glad I have my brings and a cup of coffee every morning while I'm still in bed. It was in the wedding box. No, it's no joke. It is. Did you return it early, Colonel? I made sure I got in the box. Oh, yeah. The hotel staff, no, because he's down there. And he's getting me coffee till when I wake up. Did I do good?
Oh, yes.
Did good? Presidential, you're down two hundred. You could probably get a lease, no doubt. You could probably get a lease. No, but it's been a long time since.
Yes.
I was, I was feeling good about like.
Cause I think we started the public here at like eight thirty. Nine, nine o'clock, about nine o'clock, we were. Oh, it'll be like thirty, forty-five minutes, but we'll get through that pretty fast. Like, it'll be, it'll just be long, I'm just thinking other things, but it's ten minutes apiece and then we'll be done in ten minutes.
And then when I asked, I I know she didn't know. They said, no. And this
I get, I get the point.
No, we will decide what we want first.
It doesn't bother me. I actually look at it. I look at it from the liability. Some other people, some other people made uh, you know, the same comment, you know. To 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 start kind of argument, look at
Oh, that's the same.
Well, you know, I Because that point is how it's kind of came, it came right from that all where they are. Sure. Open outlets is level one charters. And he told she was
Come in the front door anyways.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we're like, one lady locked her, one of the collector keys in the car. I was like, come on, they follow me. And then another lady, I couldn't have it. Oh, she was like yeah, walk, she was walking. Then I saw one, no. She stepped dropped off and I said, I'm home.
Unless you live across the street, even then, that's not a great idea.
No, I, I, you know. I appreciate you both, you know. I know nothing of
All this.
Yeah.
This is gonna be
Yeah, so she's that's who we're coming back at.
So that's where she Remind me, we'll talk about this some other day. Remind me, I'll talk to you about where we do, where we think everybody should physically be located in something.
I have just I don't know how this works. Um, the discussion.
True. I I know, but this is now becoming a timely discussion. Because if we have to order furniture or we should probably, it should probably come up on a soon to come up agenda because get here.
Yeah. Yeah, it takes a minute. Well.
You know, never, never trust.
I must say that call every company before this.
You're gonna go a little man about to well, the
I'm gonna make this pretty quick.
Okay.
They sure really will and
So you'll get out here in about half to
I'll tell you guys, because I'm gonna say nice things. I mean, I I told trying to see it on Zoom, we don't but anyways. And I said, I said if you got that email, like I thought I want to I want the response that you get, because I haven't checked my emails. Third financial to us, the third, not, yeah, three different times. Doesn't even count the property damage that was
Yes, yeah.
Yes, I mean, this is
They didn't even tell me that your last name. He was an under undercover boss once. He owns a bunch of timeshare things. And he had somebody walk up and of course it was on TV, so it was probably like all for TV.
Yeah.
Like they're like, they're all, and that was all gone, like all of this wasn't discounted, all of this wasn't like, by the way, we're free. Say, what are you here for? They're like, or somebody, they're like, I just paid for it. Like the terrible It's on TV, it's uh
You know, no, I want, I'm a television record. No, it's important. I I'm all about giving credit where credit is due and thanking
Are you getting tripled by?
Well, this is how they see it. They have done it under G F L and now they're doing it under private. We don't have we have no account. We have no service.
How should he?
You wanna know how they did that when they did the property damage? They had to generate an account number in order to re, to reimburse us for the damage.
Did they ever do that?
Yes, they did. But we had no idea that was how they did it. And then all of a sudden, the G F L sends a bill for service. We're like, we don't have service. And so took clearing that up and then uh here we are, two months later. Priority. It's not even Priority hasn't done damage. No, they're well, they're, you know what? Both I and David, we talked to, we have a tear, it's we're not set up to have these big trucks come down these small carpet lanes. And they can barely get around. Well, and so anyways, the guys have been and we talked to them and said, look. So we got the neighbors, we've told them, do the cans this way, the way you want them. You can swing wide, you know, that kind of thing. But they've been pretty good.
What Tom said, Tom Tom was loquacious as to use Hathaway's word they used to a while ago. He means that he likes to talk a lot. Tom is nice, but Tom is not the person that we should negotiate, tell me why I will trash contract. I use security, but that's a B that, that's what you should be doing.
Said tonight, I'm kind of done with this and I don't yeah, I mean, it's acceptable. I mean I don't like but I mean, that's
It's really like law and order for like for zoning. Uh, it's like well, you know, because they actually swear people like this stuff. I I've never gone to a C E B where I
but I I didn't, I was never as good as Cheryl. Even I lived yeah, in the front, so I yeah, it's where we
Yeah, no, it was it was an experience. I, well, I know somebody who got into zoning experience last year, but we totally understand, like, watch the year on YouTube.
Yeah.
And then with the garage zoning thing. Oh, actually, I'm really happy about this. Uh, yeah, it's a whole thing.
Have never run out during the meetings because they and then
And that was for elections, I did this.
No.
No, like
Um, I think a lot of
They probably
They don't share.
Right, nine thirty.
Yeah, Jessica's the one like it's the
Oh, yeah.
You're up here, you're up here like I don't know if you left that, um, she left that.
That was the first election I did in Florida. That's probably so
Okay.
Okay. But I did tell her I was gonna work the general, just because after we saw that Oh.
I was surprised. I asked her. Yesterday. It sounded like there's a lot.
Oh.
I was just
let her come earlier.
Now, those are starting up the Saturday before the absentee ballots. It makes sense if there's gonna be thousands more than hundreds of thousands of
Yeah. But she doesn't start her county board until like ten or ten o'clock sometime, you know, on a smaller election like so people don't even that's exactly right.
Yeah, I just don't know.
But
Two thirds bus
Because
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I know, I was still here with, and you know, I had to be over sixty. For our vacation.
Everybody
And everybody lied.
Everybody's like, I'm on vacation all of the time.
Exactly. Well.
And it's gonna be on going because you're gonna have to fix this.
That's an experience.
I don't know.
He thought they they heard Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean
But then also
Well, well, we talked to you so that way could make the motion. You'll probably find out about this soon enough. Uh, I read some of the record, um, of email between Jeff and myself, Brandon, Julian and People sort of talking like three years ago. I'll be out here just gonna actually
Yeah.
There's this number, that number, the other number, it came up again tonight. Like, it's a constant conversation that's never really had like high numbers assigned to it. It's not numbers, but like the numbers change or they stay the same. When you go up, they go down, they sort of move around all the time. Nobody he go, Matt gave us
You know what? I get
Some small amount of money. We have an official record of whatever.
Yeah.
Instead of having this like serial number out here where it's like, maybe it's this. Oh, well, he said it might be that, so maybe that's it.
It took me about five minutes. Oh, kind of, she's
Which, I mean, seems like a long time, but that's two years to negotiate the city. Starts sometime next But I
Maybe once a year.
Brodie and Celine and But Brodie and Celine, somebody else, I think my are all miniature, which is now called four years.
They've been kept into Jenson. I mean, I just I would like, you know, what? Email filter today. I'm not going to Oh, you're so far.
Um Got it? Got everybody back?
Thank you. Anyway, oh, we'll get it. Oh, that was official. I was like, okay.
I'd like to um I don't make a motion to return. We're back in open session.
We we like we have to make a motion to come back in.
Thank you.
Yes.
To make a motion to return to open session.
Motion by Flintoff, support by Riser. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we're back in session.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to ask our township attorney to negotiate authorize, to authorize, to authorize, thank you, Mariah, to authorize to to authorize our township attorney to negotiate.
As discussed.
Yeah, the potential purchase agreement on the property as discussed in closed session.
Support by Riser. So support, uh, move by Flintoff, support by Riser. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Supposed. All right, that motion carries. And now we can move to public comment, I I believe. Um, this is uh time for people um to speak um about anything under the per view of the board of trustees for up to three minutes. Uh trustee Riser?
Hi, Rob.
You're getting surly.
I am, so.
Well, I'm extremely disappointed that trustee Brizzo could not bear to uh join the rest of the trustees for the last five minutes. Uh, trustee Brizzo, with the opening public comments, I noted that once again, you were missing from the board meeting. I formally asked the board to remove you as a trustee because you refused to attend and you refused to resign. You haven't been in a board meeting for over two months. Your absentee rate over the past couple of years is both unprofessional and unethical. I again calling this board to remove you. We need a trustee who is interested in helping SIO Township. And there are multiple trustee elect candidates who are extremely capable of filling your seat. I also had a question for him, but he unfortunately is not here to answer. That question is during the break, trustee Brizzo, you said that you read the Sheriff Gate forensic report. How is it you had access to that forensic report? That report was not included in our, in the FOIA our township attorney filed with the prosecutor. How did you get it? Unfortunately, he's not here to answer that. Did you ever get the fore, the forensic report? No, no, to uh attorney think.
No, but I have not filed an appeal to the FOIA or a second FOIA.
Apparently trustee Brizzo had access to that report. I would like to know how he has access to that report when you don't.
But I mean, he may have filed it another time, so. He did.
Tonight's discussion showed that this board needs advice from a professional who is not paid by the developer. This township needs the advice of a David Rowley type for science. Turns out, we'll never know what an unbiased professional would have advised. I don't like the game this played by this developer. We asked for appropriate tests two years ago. They test, they tested for something the professionals tell us has nothing to do with what we asked for. They're playing games with the township and that is not a professional way to address the questions asked of them. Yes, they want to get their project passed, but not by cheating the board. Turns out cheating works when you have pals on the board. Supervisor Hathaway. When you shut down the clerk while she's talking about her concerns for residents, it makes you look like you are here to support the developer. We need represent representatives biased in favor of residents' health, not developers' profits. What you call managing the discussion looks a lot like shutting down discussion that isn't to the advantage of the developer. The old days of board members colluding before meetings came back in force. Looks like you really, really didn't like getting outvoted at the last meeting. I am extremely disappointed in your vote on crossroads tonight and the way you handled it. Thank you.
Good morning. Um, Renee Klubek, SIO resident. You know, I had a business call at nine thirty and I made the decision upon coming to this meeting that this township, this board and the people that live here were more important. I would like to highly recommend that someone send the message to the man that left this meeting that came in early that I support Rob's suggestion that he be removed from the board. If I can give you this time, someone who is elected as a trustee or appointed, whichever should be here. With that said, I'd like to I'd like to um welcome Christie Aiken as our temporary coordinator and I'd like to congratulate her. Today, I arrived at the township and Jessica was helpful to me in directing my issue to Christie. Christie resolved the opening of that and the tra- direction for it to go in two hours. We had a response back from her. I would like to say supervisor Hathaway, if you could look at me that I have been to this meeting and three times have had significant problem with the waste management company of the time, who I understand you are the only one that can cover and negotiate with as you were, are appointed to be the person watching over that. You've never responded to any time I've been here to talk about the billing that's been done incorrectly to us. We are not clients. Any of that. In thirty days from the last time I was here, you did not address me or reach out. You're in charge of this. I think this board needs to realize if he is appointed in the next six weeks to be in charge of this, you might better put Christie in charge of it. With that said, I think that we will move forward and she will be extremely helpful and I want to thank her for that. Um, lastly, I would like to say I was disappointed to see Sean has left. I'm not sure what the issue was. I know there was a suggestion by the missing trustee that the code enforcement position be diversified and split perhaps between another township or such. I want to let you know that in SIO Township, there are many residents who have issues, who don't know who to talk to here. We come into this building, we need help. We pay our taxes to treasurer Palmer. We we do what we're responsibly supposed to do and we don't know who to speak to. Sean was a wonderful welcoming person. I don't care if it's the beat up car that's in somebody's yard that's your centerpiece to look at every day when you drive by, or it's something of an infringement or as we had a problem that we had nowhere to turn to since no one responded to it, that's in charge of the trucks and the waste management program, whether G F L or priority. So I would like to just give you an opinion as a resident that So, I would like to just give you an opinion as a resident, that I think you guys are so overtaxed. And a township manager, I'm sorry, Joyce has left, but in six months of all sorts of problems with GFL slash priority waste now, that has the problem. She never reached out to me either, perhaps that she's overtaxed, but what I'm saying is, if you want to start dividing up. We might want to reconsider the toilets outside and pay people to work in the building, so there's a fair share to answer questions for residents. Um, lastly, when it comes to the contract, if I heard correctly from our attorney of record, um, I was not familiar with the, um, Warmout group. And I think I heard that you can be a member, but not take the contract. This was a whole new world for me, so I apologize if I'm not clear on it, but I think I heard that correctly. And I would like to say, after what I saw this evening, and the things being pushed through without taking a breath and reevaluating, is, do me a favor. Do not sink us again, like we were synced the last time, is it five years ago with the contract?
Four, mostly sad, okay.
Do not sink the residents of Scioto Township again, in haste of people that are not willing on this board to take a breath, do their homework. I know it's a lot of work, I appreciate all of you, I really do, those that respond and listen to residents. But I would like to say, it's like an automobile service, you've got some time, if I understand, to go in on it, do some homework. We have consistent problems with this issue. Lastly, I'm looking, I know I'm done, I just want you to know, July eleventh, there was an article in the M Live, the headline. Developer hopes to transform valueless office project into dense housing near Ann Arbor. More than twice as dense as what is allowable under the highest density residential zoning category in the township, according to planning documents. But developers hope officials are gonna bite on the chance, guess what, tonight you took the bait. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Lina.
Lovely Grant, I was so disappointed in this board action on Crossroads. Um, all you had to do was push back and say, do some testing, all the agencies reinforced that. Um, I would like to know from this board, who took phone calls from Dan Kettler before this meeting? John Riser, did you talk to Dan before this meeting?
He called me, I spoke to him briefly, I, Rick told him he should reach out to others on the board.
Oh, really?
Yes.
I think we need to, uh, institute an ethics policy. Um, in purchasing, you do not take those calls, because they want to influence your vote. Donna, did you talk to, thank you, Will, you must have talked to Dan Kettler. No, anybody else?
He didn't even contact me, and I wasn't going to speak.
Right. He must have, he probably talked to Brazzo, Mr. Brazzo missed nine weeks, and he showed up today. Wonder why he showed up today? Um, so, this board, some of these board members did a very poor job representing residents. And to say that we need housing, and to say that we have to have housing on that corner, that's the place it has to be. Is the most ridiculous ludicrous argument I have ever heard. So anybody that wants to pitch housing and say it's gotta be on this parcel is disingenuous. Disingenuous, and to have a developer stage his people to say all of the reasons you need to do this, I was on the planning commission. And it, housing is, is so needed. That was ridiculous, all you had to do was pause and say, do some testing. Mr. Kettler is known in Ann Arbor for starting projects, rental projects, as soon as they're done, he bails. He's only there to get his money. He is not a good developer for Scioto Township. So it's a shame that you fell for it. Will, you always, always, always advocate for the developers, you never, ever advocate for what residents want. You never ask them, you never, we tell you, people tell you all the time, and you always, always pitch for the developer. And now we have Mr. Riser doing the exact same thing. The new Mr. Hathaway on the board, pitch for the developers, not, not a good look.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Let's turn to the remote participants.
Oh, no, it ain't so, trustee Brzeo, you left, how could you? Jonathan went to bed, so I had to add in a little bit of humor. So, yeah, you could have ordered them to do the test. It wouldn't have taken too long, they put it off, it's on them. And I'm really disappointed, because the rest, the future residents of Scioto Township deserve to be protected, thank you. And it is one o'clock. Eight AM.
Any other interested public? I seen, um, Will.
Motion for adjourned. By Carrie, support by, support by Noel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, adjourned at one o'clock.
Thank you, everybody.
I came down here in person to say what I had to say, and, uh.